Let's get started. Everybody have anything, you know, coffee and I think their sandwiches coming at some point. Morning Chris.
Twelve o'clock, twelve fifteen.
What's that?
Twelve o'clock, twelve fifteen.
Okay, great. You ready? A call to order.
Call to order, well, thanks for coming here on a Sunday morning. I was thinking about Benita's request each year to do the retreat somewhere else than the library.
But here we are, here I am.
Here we are in the library, and you know, eventually, maybe we will be somewhere else and then the retreat and, you know, going over all that stuff. But, I mean, the meeting in itself, it is an opportunity for us to have a longer conversation. Hopefully, more opportunity for you guys to spend time talking and getting to know each other than me talking. But it is more of a strategy meeting, right? There's some, there's some big milestones, right? We just finished with the big twenty five, twenty eighteen plan is almost complete or at least completely underway. All the things, all the components are there. And then we're walking into a whole new thing where there are a lot of different stuff that we're gonna consider. Not least of which is a flat economy and, and some significant library needs and some significant changes that are gonna be coming up. And so, it's a great opportunity for us. I realize it's not like, we don't have somebody in here giving you a vision talk from outside the organization. But I, but it is an opportunity to talk about today about where we see the library going, I think. And to that extent, it is a retreat. And as you'll hear today along the way, we are in a really good spot. We are in a, we're not only in a good spot, and it may not look that way from some of the memos. Financially, it's a little bit sketchy, you know, building wise, there's a lot of things that we have to worry about. But the bottom line really, and we'll get to that some this afternoon, is the, the level of use, the level of support we have in this community is borderline unparalleled. I don't, I was running some numbers this last week and I'm looking at it, I'm just thinking like, I've never worked in a library at this volume and this level of saturation. And I've never even heard about it, honestly. It would probably have to be Ann Arbor, which is a great public library system. Just, it's just not, it's just not normal. So, with that said, we'll get started. The first part is, you know, kind of like a presentation, I'm hoping mostly discussion. The first part is the strategic priorities, and I hope you've had a chance to read through all the documents that you put together. The strategic priorities, I mean, you, you have a chance to look at these each year. This is the outline of the twenty five and twenty six ones. They don't really change dramatically. I think some of the highlights really are the programs and services. Obviously, we have a lot of things that we started up during the transition to the district. Most of those are all still under some level, a high level of scrutiny in the sense in which we either call it a pilot or it's a brand new program. And so, we're examining all of those things, but a lot of different stuff coming forward. And we are, as an organization, really beginning to expand upon how it is we use data, right? So, data is a critical component of Jennifer and my job. What we've come to realize, you know, really since the district is that, surprise, not, a lot of libraries are just not very adept at how they work with data. And so, if you think of a lot of the new programs we started, we are looking for ways in twenty twenty six to, twenty five and twenty six to better understand those programs. So, we need to understand how they're doing, if they're not working, if they are working. But you can, you can, you can come up with whatever solution you have. It's like the Digital Navigator Program, which was a grant-funded pilot program. It stopped this, just this last month. It was a program that was very successful in a, in a, in the sense that we were not paying any money for it really, or a minimal amount of money for it. But the total number of people that it actually hit in terms of appointments in a year was four hundred. And probably, if when you drill it down to repeat users, it was maybe a hundred. So, even at any kind of cost, do we keep that program alive? Or is there another way for us to do this program within the context of some other service or program that we provide? And the answer to that question was yes. Boulder Rights is a program that just started in the last few weeks. It's, it's again, a foundation-funded program. It could be really interesting to see how that goes. It's been completely booked for the next three months. We'll see what kind of capacity we have. The theater is another one. The pilot is nearing its end. You know, I think what's been interesting is we, we were testing a number of ideas. One is, is there interest in the community for a free space? You know, yes, there is. Can, can those community members fill a, fill a auditorium? Uh, some can, some can. Is the program scalable? Maybe not. You know, there are, there are positives and negatives to having that space. The Makerspace is-
What's scalable mean, sorry?
Meaning like, yeah, everybody thinks like, it's a great problem. It's great to have, like, we opened, for me, it's like, oh shit. We opened up the new slots for the next six months. All of the prime spots filled in under two hours. All of the prime spots filled for the next six months in under two hours.
Yeah, I figured that.
And it was fewer than, you know, there, you know, a lot of different groups participated, but the bulk of all of those slots were filled by seventeen different organizations. And so, seventeen organizations, that, that's not, that's not, that's, are we providing a service for seventeen organizations or is the program scalable? Because the goal was to have it for the public, right?
Right.
So, it's, and then how do we increase the number of prime spots? That's something we have to deal with.
Yeah.
You know, it's, we're constantly looking at that. And, you know, the numbers for butts in seats has been modest at this stage.
Usually, it's like fifty, sixty people.
Yeah.
Probably during the day is ten, you know?
Yeah, the Makerspace is, is the exact opposite of that program. Great question, is, is it scalable? You know, we have programs constantly, every program is filled. Some of them have two hundred and fifty people on the waiting list for a single program on printmaking. That's not a great problem to have, it is, you know, I, we, we can't talk about it today, but how scalable is that program? We need to probably do more. But, it's a very different cost equation. Moving a book, going to a program which is predominantly entertainment and having a collaborative learning environment are two different things from a cost perspective. You know, would a hundred people sign up for a class if they were not gonna get one-on-one training with the technician? I think not, right? Like, they, people sign up because it's fifteen people in the class, you get the attention of either the person next to you, it's a very intimate environment. Everybody's kind of taking responsibility for each other. These are the kind of things we're looking at. How, how, that program is one of them, it's so obvious to me that it's been a goldmine. And we have to be, figure out some ways to expand it in the next five years, in the next plan. How? It's not without complication because it is, like Boulder Reads, like Outreach, there are some programs that are far more labor-intensive than circulating book. Where the Carnegie Book, the History Area. There are programs of type that are labor-intensive, each transaction will take an hour. There are others that, like, in, it can put a book on hold on business reserve, like, it takes no time. It takes the time to have bought the book. So, that, that's a balance we have to look at. Workplace culture, community connections, the, I feel like the-
Pretty good to that.
Yeah.
Do we want to have any more discussion on program stuff now, or?
We can, you, I tell you what you guys want, I, I'm, our book will run to the end and then just open it up.
Okay.
And we can do it, that's fine. So, the Outreach Program is up to an intuitive basis. We've had some remarkable success doing some good work. We're not planning on expanding the program in the next year or even the year following. We have to see how it's gonna go. Right now, we had a half-time person ten years ago, now we basically have two and a half people who are dedicated to that service. I think they're making good strides into, predominantly, it's the Boulder House and Partner Sites and the Manufactured Home Community. And I think we will have to, we have to kind of keep monitoring how that group is going. But then further, the community connections, I mean, there's several things on your agenda today around community engagement, around partnerships, which is something that we've discussed internally. We don't really have, aside from what we're having partners, we don't have a, anything near remotely resembling a partnership. The, the, the eight and a pound rule is Sundance, right? We, we have to figure out, if Sundance is coming down, we have to figure out something, what we're gonna do. And if we're doing it for Sundance, an outside organization that's just come to town for a ten-year lease, maybe they're gonna stay forever. But shouldn't we consider offering partnerships to other organizations within the community? And so, will we bring it forward, something like policy, policy change around partnerships and the four inch issue? The facilities is basic, we're gonna be talking about all day. So, I won't belabor that point, but as you all know, we don't own the thing, all of our buildings are old. And they take a lot of time and money to keep them appeared and clean and the roofs not leaking. So, I'll start off in there, we can have some discussion about if we think that the strategic priorities are in the right space, if there's more refinement needed. Just any thoughts and ideas you may have, program.
Want to start with programs? Go ahead, Benita.
So, I just wanted to go back and ask a question about the Digital Navigator. Just remind us, where did that funding come from?
It was, yeah, American.
Okay, and then-
That's totally fine.
Yeah, Boulder Rights?
Boulder Rights is a program that began this year in conjunction with Boulder Reads, it was a proposal that came up through the grant last cycle. And the foundation elected to fund it at about ninety thousand a year for two years. We hired a coordinator and that program just began this last month.
And say more about the program Boulder Rights, what's the-
Well, you know, we, we, we had imagined it being a lot of things and we had several target audiences that would be beneficiary, that that was kind of ancillary. We thought that the bulk of the program would be, in the same way Boulder Reads helps people with reading, helping people with writing skills, and-
Oh, so not rights like rights? Okay, rights, okay, got it, okay.
R I, it's a writing.
There's a writing, there's a problem involved, that was why I-
Okay, okay, I'm with you there.
I know your rights, but write it down.
Yes, yes, because I was saying like Boulder Rights, I was like, ooh, that's simple, I guess, got it.
So, it's been everything so far from a college, the first student was a college entrance exam.
Okay, I'm like, I-
Been some resume, a lot of people are asking for help with fiction and nonfiction. There was one person who I think was finalizing a article for The Atlantic at PNA, and came in for proof.
Yeah, no, I remember reading about that right. I just, I was thinking something else, so I'm with you. And then my third question had to do with Makerspace activities and the programming. Could we consider doing an evaluation of participants? Because I know I've participated in some and they have been great programs and that kind of thing, but there's no evaluation component at the end. You know, that gives us feedback on what could make it better or, you know, beyond the, over, you know, the incredible interest in certain programs. It's just, you know, just taking public suggestions on what could be improved and that kind of thing. I just wondered about that.
Are pretty much all of our Makerspace programs oversubscribed? I said, are all of our Makerspace programs oversubscribed? So, the trick of making it better is, we already don't have space from what they are.
Yeah, but just to give people some opportunities, like feedback, they had suggestions or, you know.
Like-
Or to just even rate them, I mean, I think they're all, they've been pretty incredible, but just to document, right?
I mean, okay, I guess I have a couple of, I guess, how do we go about deciding which programs? So, I mean, we could look at the Makerspace program, all the, I mean, it could be, maybe it'd be interesting to look at all the programs as opposed as, as a first, you know, what do they cost? You know what I mean? I guess, how do we make a decision or how does staff make a decision about what programs we're gonna run? What, what are we gonna sponsor, not sponsor?
There's a program summit, so that all of the staff involved in the programming get together once a year. You probably don't notice because we bring stuff to for the day. And so, the programs, all the programs, there's like thirty-five, forty of them. They meet centrally and they discuss the programs that are gonna be planned for the next year. And so, it is a little, especially now with the district and the, the foundation is no longer directly involved in funding half of them or ninety percent of them. It is a little bit of a free-for-all and we are looking at ways to improve that process. So, it's been an ongoing thing, the summit happens, I think the summit is extremely useful. One of the things that we're talking about is centralizing the funding. And so, there will be a slight, it's a device in some ways.
What's that mean?
Well, right now, the branch, the budget line, if you, if you look at the expanded budget, like each branch, each-
Oh, it's coming out of different areas.
Each have a line for budget. Well, that's what we did when, when the foundation was granting money, we kind of carried it over into the district. We're looking, we are rolling some of that up into twenty twenty-six budget, the plan that we've talked about right now is that in twenty twenty-seven, that funding will all go through the program. At events, director, manager, whatever her title is, and then, so then, it is more of a, I don't wanna say it's more of a shark tank, but the program summit will be, have a lot more at stake because there will be people there to say, maybe it's a great idea, but we don't have the money. Maybe they will say, it's a great idea, but you need to be able to pull it off for half the funding. And so, in order to make it all work, there has to be, I think, a decentralized funding that may actually help with it. You know, I've, I've been doing libraries for almost thirty-five years now and I'm embarrassed to say, and the staff don't know this, so I'm not letting you see the time. I don't have a good metric for program success. The programs are so diverse. Storytime, we know that Storytime is the program that costs the less and least and has the most bang for the buck across the district, right? Like, it's more than sixty percent of all the attendees to all the programs is Storytime. And it's just happening as we go, every summit group, desired on the public service floor of the branches, they almost all do Storytime. Here at the library, it's a more of a professional group, but Storytime is the biggest bang for the buck. And everything else kind of falls on the scale front, right? And some programs are expensive. Some programs cost a lot of money and don't have major impact, some of them maybe do. The argument that the staff would make is that it doesn't matter how many people come to my program, at least three people's lives were changed forever. And I'm like, well, tell me exactly how those three people's lives were changed forever. Because right now, the only metric that I have is, what's the total number of programs we do? What's the total number of people that come in? And I've never had a better data point. And it is a challenge for us in the next year, I've been asking for, but I've been asking for a decade. Give me, give me a program metric that I can believe in, that's a valid data, that we can say like, this is what makes a successful program.
The summit for programs in twenty-six that's taking place, or?
No, it's, it's September or October, yeah.
So, could trustees have someone there to observe it? Which might give us more of a sense of whether all this variety and all these things, so it's not all on you to kind of be, oh, we're gonna centralize because we, we have to start making choices because we don't have data. You get another set of eyes or a couple sets of eyes to the process.
Tom, I'm open to the idea, I don't think this year. What we have, you know, what I did in the last library, because I didn't feel like it was working, right? And so, I, we, we did turn it into a shark tank and it was, the morning was the staff pitches all morning long. But we had a committee of volunteers, like twelve members of the community. When the staff left for lunch, in the afternoon, we asked the volunteers like, which sticks, which doesn't? And, and, and getting the community input in terms of the planning phase was a critical component. I'm not saying that that was highly successful, you know, there was a lot of hurt feelings. And it was not, and the public input was not transparent to the staff who were presenting it. So, I mean, I think in a shark tank, like, you're all on television and they give you nasty feedback, right, in the plays, right? And the public was not really comfortable with that, rather, they had the, they had the conversation behind closed doors, we're not willing to do that either, right? Like, the staff deserve the right to be able to publicly, to publicly present, I think, an idea for a program. Right now, the way we do it unfortunately is, they present the program and then we see if it works, right? And in some cases, there, there has to be better effort into the planning. Now, to the program team's credit, they are super, there are a bunch of them who are super interested in refining that planning process. I think they're well, they are happy to put the money at stake and make this a, you know, a viable competition. I, I, you know, I, it, I think probably every programmer thinks like, all my programs are great and yours sucks. And, but it's like, you know, there's not very many people, but we're looking at a lot of different metrics, right? So, it's like, one manager is tracking volunteer participation in programs, not just how many people show up, but is it a gateway to bringing volunteers into the organization? Some events that we do, like Jive for Literature Festival, I mean, I would argue, it's a great festival, but its primary purpose for the library has been almost, is a gateway drug for volunteers, like, we recruit a lot of volunteers.
Sylvia, Sylvia?
Yeah, thanks, and I, I, I think both of you just kind of hit on what I was about to say. So, I think one good way for us as a board to kind of observe and understand how programs work is to actually volunteer at the events. So, like, for example, JLF, when I first got on the commission, I volunteered two years in a row to be at JLF because I wanted to understand that program and that really made a big difference. There was, like, I think Meadows has a practice of like, once a month, they have film for kids. And I volunteered at that a couple of times and that was a lot of fun, just kind of seeing the community kids come in and watch a film and have some pizza. So, I think that that's, to me, that has helped me understand some of our programs much better than, you know, just seeing something on paper. So, just something else to think about when you're trying to understand all of the things that, that the library does.
I, go ahead, Amy.
So, I guess my question to you then, David, following up on Tom and Sylvia's point as well there, would be, what input are you looking for from us on programming in general? Like, how do you see us influencing this? Is it, you want to give us a set of programming categories and we help with budget allocations there? Is it, you want us to-
Hey, the budget, obviously, when we get to the budget discussion, which is next, right? Like, that, that is, you know, probably not, it's not lost on you, it's not lost on me, that the program and events budget line is the, way behind public service and books and that kind of stuff. But it's, it is the largest budget line, okay? We may have to look at ways in the future.
I have a maybe dumb question, but, so, for example, like the Makerspace programs where there's costs beyond staff? Are those, those are all, like, if someone comes to Makerspace and there's like materials, we don't, like, we pay for that, they, they, people don't bring them or pay for them?
We do pay for program-related stuff. For a public who's just coming in and doing their own thing, if they want materials, they have to-
But like, you're talking about like a printmaking class or whatever, like, we would provide all the-
We provide all the materials. If somebody came in and they wanted to print t-shirts, they, they don't pay for the yank.
So, that's the primary cost for us, additional staff is the, is materials.
But I have one, Sylvia? I want, I want to go back to Tom's comment, like, I think, in view, in my view, Tom, I think it would be, it would probably be disruptive for us to be at a staff meeting where they're, you know, because they're, you know, they're just gonna change their behavior based on what, what we do. But I do think, like, this is just my personal opinion, I think that one of the things maybe we could think of as a board if we're talking about programs and certain materials is, what's the, maybe we could ask them to come up with a scoring metrics or a guidelines that we, and that could be something that, like, I would like, I think, I think it'd be, you know, A, what's the scoring metrics? And I'd like the board to have input on that, if you guys come up with one. Like, here's how we're gonna, here's how we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have fifty programs, we gotta draw the line at either a dollar amount, we gotta draw the lines on money. So, the, the scoring metrics or the criteria that you guys are going to use to self-evaluate, I think as a board, we probably could have input on, because we might say, numbers is the most important thing. Or, we, I think that's a good discussion for us to have, like, or maybe it's life enrichment, I don't know, you judge that, but like-
Well, like, like Benita, I mean, whenever I go to a thing, I feel like I always get a survey and an email after, right? That's like, tell us what you're doing.
Yeah, that could be.
It's just like, something like that, after programs wouldn't be, doesn't feel like it'd be a super heavy lift, I don't, I'm not a-
It shouldn't be.
But it doesn't feel like that would be a super heavy lift and that could give, like, some qualitative and quantitative metrics to start to look at.
I get a survey when I sign up to speak at city council and they send me like, how was your experience? Kind of like, I take it as-
I can have better public meetings.
I take it as-
That was so impressive.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think, what, as a board, what do we think about that? I think we could probably give them, or do you want to make comment about it?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I think, you hit on a few things, right? Like, so the main thing you can do, Andy, your answer to your question, is close accountable for better planning and improved evaluation. I mean, I think that's the thing, is close accountable for better planning and evaluation, like, whether you, I, I, you don't want to be in the business picking programs.
No, I know.
I don't want to be in the business picking programs. It is, it's, it's fraught with peril, I can assure you. I'm not involved with picking programs, but I need to, for the staff, I need to know that the effort is going into the planning of them, the coordinated planning of them. And that we are doing serious evaluation and that there is a data point that I can come back to and say, this program is available. That, that, that has to happen, we, we can't keep doing it as we are doing it because otherwise, staff will spend a lot of time planning.
So, so, would it be fair for the board to say, as a goal, to set up an evaluation metrics and present it to the board?
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay.
And I think it would also be useful just for us to see some data on the existing programs in terms of, I mean, not every medical program, but I'm sure we could bucket them some way and say, here's roughly how much money we're spending on this set of programs and here's roughly the attendance or, yeah. However else you want to slice it.
We, we, we are, we, that is in the works, we are, you know, I, I think the initial question came at the theater, we wanted to do some data on the theater. Yeah, it's hard to do the survey. We, we only this year, and it's, there's pushback, right? So, we've only really this year begun requiring registration for almost, for the majority of our programs. Most of our programs do not require registration. I am gonna resist requiring registration for Storytime. Requiring registration for some programs is probably not a great idea. We don't want to capture the data that we have, that's would be going against some of our basic principles around. Privacy, um-
But I mean, I think that-
That it's hard to do a survey if you don't know who's there.
The Storytime people could be like, you could put a QR code for people to submit a survey, but also the, the lady could be like, or the man, the person doing Storytime could do, like, say, just get roughly twenty-five people came or thirty people came, you know, like-
Yeah, I mean, I think our best, we're assuming people go with their feet to some degree, right? So, the quality of the program is to some degree reflected by the number of people attending.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not perfect and it would be interesting to have some additional data, but-
I don't want to discount the three people's lives were changed by this metric either, I really don't. So, and I just, I, I, I'm, I'm sitting here, you don't look on that, I have no idea how you calculate that.
Well, that, that's why I said, it's, it's, you know, I think that-
Like, if we, but if we only prioritize the busiest programs and maybe, and then to the detriment of maybe the more impactful ones?
Right, well, I think that's why-
Like, I, I don't know how to balance that, you know?
That's why we, I think, put it back to the staff, to say, come up with a metric that you, and it could be, you know, enrichment or whatever, like, because I think it's not just feet.
So, I mean, where this started, and I, you were talking about, well, maybe we're gonna have to create a, basically, we're gonna centralize it. We're gonna have to have a pot of money, we're accountable for the money, like, we're accountable for our responsibility, it's how we're spending things. We're headed into an era where the budget's gonna get tougher. There'll be pressure on finding easy things to get rid of. And those three people, I think, easy thing to get rid of.
That's what I mean, like, I don't want to do that.
Right? So, I think, you know, not only saying, is there an evaluation thing, but like, maybe coming back to us, like, this is the centralized plan of this. So that, this is the pot of money, this is how it got spread across to X number of programs. And then, staff feedback within those programs, that one is a quantity and the other is a quality, right? And so, then we've got those stories of those three lives, which help us from when the public says to us, well, why are you keeping this? Well, here's the story of what this program made a difference in the community. To me, like, one, you know, like, we spent a big money, a bunch of money on a party in North Hope, right? But that manufactured home community became part of Boulder that day. When you walked around the space, the intergenerational conversations are going on, right? I mean, like, that's a huge success, it costs a lot of money.
I just want a comment about the Makerspace evaluation, I just, just want to hold this point for myself, but I think it'd be important to track why people are showing up to these sessions. Like, some of these things are repairs, like, you know, you, you wanted like, be able to learn how to use a tool to repair your, you know, plumbing issue, whatever it is. But another could be, you know, just for pleasure and expression and that kind of thing. But there are some people who are using their talents to build their skills to create a creative product, right? And they've, they've been able to blossom that into a small business. And I think that economic side of it is really important, that tells a story that no other program area touches. And so, I just think that's a leverage for the community and it's sort of small business development in a sense, right? And nurturing the creative industries of Boulder, which, you know, is a big piece of-
Yeah, same. When Andy and I took the tour of I remember you saying in the maker space, there was X number of patents in kind of our project with them.
Yeah, we've lost count. I mean, in the first twelve months, it was, I think, ten patents. Six of them, six of them were from one company. But, but from one group that was a startup, right? But it was, you know, yeah, it's a, we don't really, I, I think
That's that call
Yeah.
In the first, yeah, the first couple of years.
And then we have the story to dump.
Yeah.
Now, the maker space is a hard one to explain. And how many people are going to the gala? So you want to impact, like David, uh, what's his name's last name?
Hall's House.
David Hall's House, you know, spokespersons on video, you'll, you'll see impact.
I, I
There's somebody who's been in a program for fifteen years.
I think there, there's a role at the foundation here in getting some of this feedback. I know you guys used to fund all the programming or most of it, so I, I just wanna, I don't know how that is, but I wanna, I, I, I also want to be conscious of time because
Yeah.
Um, I think, I think we, I think we have a good action item for this thing. Um, the other thing is, um, workplace culture. Are we starting the evaluation process this year?
We, well, we did, we will have a survey in twenty twenty-six. You know, we did a, we did a benefit survey this year. We did a survey last year.
Performance evaluation?
Yeah, well, I thought we were doing, they were, they were putting out, you know, performance evaluations.
Oh, we did do
Yeah, okay. Okay.
We did do performance evaluations this year. The performance evaluations are untied to mine.
Okay.
It is a coaching tool.
No, I get it. That's how mine is too.
Yeah, so it is, uh, yeah, so that process, I think, is done.
It is.
All mine are done. But I think, uh, yeah, I know there's still some, you know, not everybody hit a home run. Like, it's performance evaluations, any organization's ever been in, it's always a little fraught with, uh, but I think we have a good form. We, we simplified it for um, I don't think they've gone well. We did it in the, in June, July almost.
And are we, you know, having events for staff to get together socially, you know, within, I don't know, like, it is some traditions, I don't know. Um, you know, that would be, I think, nice as an organization.
Staff day's a big one.
And to recognize.
Yeah, staff day's a big one.
Okay, is that in September or?
It is, uh, you know, I think we do invite forward, uh,
He did last year.
You're welcome to come for a part of it if you like, if you think, that's entirely staff run. Uh, they have their program for the day, there's an outside speaker. There's a talent contest, um, there's a lot of stuff. They do a lot of stuff.
Well, we should enter that.
It's predominantly educational. You guys, I have the context and details if you want to be on the talent contest. The last thing I want, the last thing I want to mention to you, this totally like program evaluation and data, I don't want you to lose sight of how circulation is. Circulation, when you ask the question in the public, what's the library do? It's still well over half the people see the library's primary purpose as books and, and community is more, you know, books and community. And, and actually, it's probably seventy-five percent of the survey. And so the, the, the changing nature of this is profound. Uh, it is, uh, you know, it's been a twenty-year slog, but the acceleration that occurred during the pandemic was, was profound. Right? So now we are nearly forty percent of all of our circulation is digital. Uh, of the print circulation, forty percent of that is children's, children's, right? So, um, that leaves, uh, that small section there for adult print. And if you think of all of our buildings, the way in which our buildings are arranged are predominantly around have move and, uh, move and bring these books back into location. I mean, that's probably how library buildings are arranged. No is a little less so than the others. That's with intention. I think as we move forward with other libraries, you're gonna find that increasingly it becomes a concern because it's difficult. Like, we're like the post office in some ways, right? Like, there's a shit ton of stuff. It all goes out to people's house. They keep it for three weeks and they bring it back. We gotta put it back in the right place on the shelf. But it's becoming increasingly, um, you know, youth services is not changing. It's, you know, that, that number, forty percent of the entire print collection has stayed steady. Print has been flat for five years, right? We've had the same print circulation for five years. Uh, digital just keeps growing. So our certain numbers are roughly where they were in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, before the pandemic. Uh, digital has managed to make that so, right? So just keep in mind, we all know, I think you all know, um, buying a digital book, uh, initially is significantly higher cost for the library. Uh, long-term, especially now that we're seeing the volume that we have, we don't have to have somebody go shell it. We don't need to hold space or on the shelf. It's, in all likelihood, the majority of the things through digital are now less expensive to circulate than having a physical copy. So just keep that in mind. It's something that we monitor, I'm monitoring all the time. We're looking at a lot of the data metrics, the end of this year, I think fourth or maybe first quarter of next year. We're renovating the second floor. Uh, you'll see the print, footprint will shrink by half. Uh, that is with intention, probably the circulation will actually go up. Uh, that's an unintuitive, non-intuitive result of doing. That's what people, that collection will shrink in half. But, you know, I think a lot of people, you know, our reputation on the next door, right? Is at stake, um, whatever that means. People like, so people say like, I love that you have this huge nonfiction collection. And I'm like, oh, I love it too. The reality is, is that nonfiction print collection, I can't put my finger in precise sale number, but it's probably that second floor accounts for less than, it's definitely less than ten percent of the entire circulation in the district. It's probably closer to five. All of those books. So when you factor digital, you factor youth, when you factor them, we have, soon we're gonna have five locations. Uh, what does that, what, what does having every William Carlos Williams book get you? It gets you a long section of a lot of different books now. People stop coming to the library for books on how to fix your refrigerator. That, that happened years ago. We don't need books on how to fix your refrigerator. We don't, we provide fewer medical books, we need fewer computer books. When I started in libraries, you could find every card manual that you could imagine, right? Like, so things change, right? It's not like this is new, but it is, the second floor will be uh, 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 an adjustment, um, for public, the daily cameras, I can call and get about it. That was the story you read a couple of weeks ago in the paper about all the great things and they made it up, gun barrel, but that was an hour and a half conversation to turn away from
Yeah.
being concerned about the fact that I see fewer books on the shelf.
I, I
Oops, go ahead again.
In the adult print section, I just wondered about large print for people who
We do have large print.
So how, how, what percentage?
You can see I have large, I have large print.
What, so what percentage of adult print do we?
Uh, large, yeah, large print is, is it's small in terms of usage. So I, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but it's, it's still, it's under like one percent of the adult stuff, this is larger books. Circulation, we, you know, we buy a lot of books in Spanish as well. They, they, the more, the money we spend, we, we're still, it's still an investment, right? But the return is worse than buying a brand new book of fiction, right? Like, so they, they, the, the metrics on all of these things, large print, books in Spanish, books in French, whatever, like, they, they have a low volume. And I don't know if there's a point at which you arrive at capacity where then everybody thinks like, I'm gonna go to the library for my Spanish language books. I don't know that that's, um, I don't know if that'll ever happen.
Okay.
I do, we do watch those, not for sure.
This is my personal thing, but this is how I engage. Uh, I mean, one of the beauties of digital readers is that you can make the font as big as you want, but
Yeah.
Uh, the, uh, the, um, I mean, I look at it as books are on demand. Like, I'm, I don't think, like, I'll find a book and it'll be like, it's on the shelves at Reynolds. Well, I'm not driving all the way to Reynolds. I'm just gonna request a hold to name. And so I'm like, I'd like to see it more like, eventually, I think, you know, like, we have the really popular titles out, like in the staff picks and stuff that people and like, and we have recommendations by librarians and readers or whatever. And that, and that can get pulled, but like, you know, um, storing a ton of books, I, I'd like to see that, like, almost like a central repository where we can just shoot them out to, you know, like an Amazon type thing to the, to the branches when people put a hold.
Can we strike that from the meat, that word Amazon?
Yeah.
Strike that from the
Well, like, like it, so, yeah.
I don't understand what is different. What are you saying we need more of?
I think we need less of shelves holding books and, and we can reconstitute that space and, and more is my personal thing. It's just more, I think, if people are gonna browse, they want to browse the popular things, like, you know, it's a big commitment to pick up a book and read it, so they want to know that they're gonna get some, like, like recommended. Like, when you go to a Boulder bookstore or where you go to like, not that we are a bookstore, but like, when you go there, it's like staff picks and, and we have that here too. And I think that
We do. I, I, the merchandising is fairly good. We think, I think it improves probably over the next couple of years. We'll see it changes. The hold system is the most costly service, one of the most costly services.
Well, yeah, and how do we bring that cost down?
Man, I don't know that we can. I mean, other than having robots now, I have no idea, but like the, um, that is a costly service, but it is, again, um, in the overall, the question between like, do people browse or do they put a book on hold on their computer? That is something that has also profoundly changed. I mean, we held it fifteen to twenty percent for a decade and it's now, I'll have to look, but it's like a third. A third of all the circulation goes to the old, kids use it, my kids use it.
Yeah, my kids, then they like to like, you know, my one daughter likes, like, teen books about World War Two. You know, and so then you can, there's a whole genre of like teen books of, on World War Two, you know? And, and so, you know, she'll just put them all on hold.
You know, there's something nice and sustainable about that though, right? I mean, besides the cost, I mean, but it's, you know, reusing, repurposing and all that stuff, right? And saving an unnecessary trip to one, or at least where, you know.
Maybe this speaks more to the partnership piece, but I was gonna say like with BPSD and the holds and the books, like, my kiddo had a list. It was actually me and Andy and it was all the books that he could read before going to first grade. And we didn't have, we, we had maybe fifty percent of them and then most of them weren't here. And there was, I think there were twenty books and there was one I walked away with. And so I don't know if there's like more like, we can talk about like partnerships with BPSD, but it feels like there should have been, um, like every kid in first grade had that list and there weren't, like, we didn't even have some of those books.
The, the library at the school have those books?
I don't have access to the library during the summer.
Yeah.
Oh.
There is a, there is a shelf that like Boulder bookstore downstairs, it's like school reads and it has like all the books, like, because all the freshmen at Boulder High have to read the same book coming in.
So is it part of the normal, where they send it to them?
Yeah, yeah.
Does it change every year?
I don't know, but this is like first graders, right? And so it's like first grade jitters and just like cute little things. And like, that was the one book I walked away with.
And it's because they weren't, like, this library doesn't have them at all or they just were out of, like, they were, okay.
Like, some of them, the library did not have it all. Some of them, they were like at all the different branches and I was like, I'm not doing that. Um, and so I was surprised and I was like, I had told Andy because we had done coffee. I was like, wash, I'm gonna walk away with none and I got one. Uh, so it's interesting. I think that just speaks to like the partnership and the hold and like, you know what you want.
Well, I, I, sorry, I just want to say though, that like I, not about that, but you were talking about before. I, I like, I understand like the way that this is all trending and I understand the idea of libraries becoming almost just like a, you know, holding facility for books, but like, I, I have like this weird thing about like losing that like shelves and people being able to just, because sometimes, sometimes it's, you know, not, sometimes you wind up reading something that's not a bestseller or it was a bestseller forty years ago, right? Because like you just see it. And so like, I, I don't, I don't know how to, there's no way I quantify that. There's no way to like strategic plan for that, but I, I, I understand like the logic of just being like a warehouse and a whole system, but that means that so much
It goes, I mean, it
Everything is just, would just go away. Because people don't, don't discover it because it's not a current bestseller.
You and your mom.
Yeah.
You and your mom and my wife.
I was saying, I'm like channeling a liar.
I like the last of the true blue who come in and like browse the shelves for a good read, right? And so you don't know. We tried to get that question to the survey this year is like, how many, how many come to the library to browse? Because we know the numbers are but it's, it's still, it's still not clear to me, uh, what that is. I, the, the fact is, and you know, I, I'm, I don't send you all the articles I read, like, I, I have a alert for reading trends, like there's a study that comes out every month, almost, right? Reading trends are frightening. Like, there was some hope in during the pandemic where there were signs that young people, it seemed like young people were reading at a higher level and reading actually physical books at a higher level than any other demographic group. Um, but all of those recent studies are deeply troubling. Um, the most recent one, uh, came out from, from like, uh, forty-six percent of uh, the American public did not read a book. That is twenty points down from twenty years ago. Forty-six percent of the American public did not read a book. Uh, if you're, I, I mean, I've been quoting for two decades, if you're a male over fifty, you have a fifty percent likelihood of reading one book in the rest of your life, right? Like, so the data that you see on reading is, is significant. It is insane. Uh, the most recent study that I saw out of England, that was a deep study, innocent decline, a dramatic decline among reading for pleasure across all ages, like traumatic like where you're looking at people under the age of eighteen, only less than fifteen percent have read for pleasure. Uh, those are, those are sobering numbers about reading. And we're not talking about it today, but you'll see the fourth quarter, uh, you know, we're, we're holding out a promotional campaign around reading. Right. It's like, it wasn't intended to be like, whatever it was, LeVar Burton or whatever, read, but it, but it is, right? That's the, that's kind of what we went for. We went for a promotional campaign around trying to push reading back and making a prominent space for the library around, let's read books.
So I would be interested, um, I'll have a, like, he was sort of putting in the room here, so our biggest program users are people who go to the store. Uh, half our collection is youth children. Yet we've got gaps in what that collection is. Seems to me we ought to spend some, uh, some resources to see how can we better resource parents with younger children to have the love of reading, we have Boulder Reads, we have all this stuff. That's the one place that we can we have a demographic that we can have a lot of control around what we present to them. And that gets to Spanish language and other things. And, and maybe over time, probably after I'm on this board, but we may end up in that warehouse model for all that nonfiction. And the, the shelving space is that fiction world is where you, you've read the mystery novel that you really like and now you want to get that off there again. So you want to find it yourself, that kind of around.
Well, I don't know what you think. You'll, you'll see next month, uh, like one of the half handful of items that got funding next year is a program that we've been doing for a number of years, it's called Thousand Books for Kindergarten. And so it is a, it's a great program. It does not reflect necessarily BPSD less than it. Really, we're talking about starting at two and go running to kindergarten and it's thousand books for kindergarten. When we first started the program, I remember the first kid that completed it, we invited the fire chief to come out and shake his hand and give him a certificate and a hat and everything else like that. It's a great program. Um, it is a, you know, trying to instill in parents predominantly the value around reading for kids. Kids love to read anyway. And so that program, you'll see in the budget line for twenty twenty-six, next month, that, that program.
So is there an action item on, on circulation or anything?
No.
Okay. I just
No, I'm happy to go talk about money, but all, but
Well, we, we have to move to the next subject. I don't mean to be
No, I mean, I, I, I appreciate feedback. I honestly, this is as much as you're talking about the stuff that we have to talk about every day as you're gonna get. And so I, I know that there's a desire among the board to talk about some of these things, programming and circulation of books, all that stuff. That is what we do. Right. This is what we do. I need your best brains thinking about some of this stuff. We are spending, I spend an inordinate amount of time thinking about all this stuff all the time and everything. I'm not
Maybe, maybe
I've got all the right answers.
Maybe the only thing is we'll have a certain person come in and, and just present on books and trends and at some point, that'd be at one meeting, maybe at the next
Yeah, and I would encourage you to read. I mean, ping it on your news feed. Look at trends of reading. They are so great. You ready to talk about money?
Can you send us some highlights when you see me, sure, if you have interest to us?
Send me a TikTok video, hit it up to the
Hey, Doug, can I, can I share a positive anecdote about the second floor, just very briefly?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, Parker, you have a saki writes for the Colorado Sun. If you subscribe to their newsletter in the morning, it's called The Sunrise. Parker works here in the second floor of the main library. And, and, and starts the, the missive this week saying, good morning, sunrise readers, readers. I spend a lot of time working from the library downtown Boulder. It has great lighting thanks to massive two-story windows, plenty of seating. And when I need to get up and stretch, I can do so while browsing the nonfiction stacks near my favorite working note. A couple of weeks ago, I wandered into the six forty-one point five aisle, the cookbooks. An entire book dedicated to pesto? Sure, I've got a handful of wilting basil staring me down in the kitchen as I type this. Yes, I want to know what Dolly Parton cooks. I don't really need Benny Blanco teaching me how to make French toast, but I'm absolutely interested in what Matty Matheson of the Bear fame chomps on. Maybe Mary Berry can help me finally get a grasp on baking. Or maybe I'll dig into a book about Mexico City or Italian street food or creative uses Or maybe I'll dig into a book about Mexico City or Italian street food or creative uses of chili crisp depth. I've checked out a different book each week and love trying out recipes from the bent and scattered pages that show me someone else attempted this homemade pizza dough too. Unlike the cookbooks on my home shelf that languish after a solid week with them, these recipes have to be returned. And as a journalist, if there's one more, if there's one thing I rely on even more than the library, it's a deadline. So your cookbooks are a hit, we hear that, and I'm looking forward to the revamp on the second floor as well, just more curation. By the way, I reached out to that reporter and they got interested, what could I write about, and they might be, you know, looking into Boulder Ranks in the future for their statewide.
Chris, will you share the link to that?
Oh, sure, it's, it's on the top of a newsletter, I'm happy to share it.
Oh, yeah, I want to share that.
For the newsletter, you know?
Collects them all.
So let's talk about money, um.
Oh, sorry, Sylvia, go ahead.
Oh, no, sorry, I, I didn't wanna stop us from moving on to the next, uh, topic, but I really like that, uh, Chris wrote that, I feel like, um. Like we sometimes get lost in all the many things that we do, but at the end of the day, you know, this is a library. And so the idea about the, you know, the books and like, I, I kind of got nervous, I'm with Cara. When we were talking about the scaling back of the books or the changing the books, like if we don't have that, then we don't actually exist anymore, so just throwing my two cents in there.
I'm not advocating. Efficiency, that's it.
And there's changes coming, there's changes, there are changes that have happened. We're catching up, you'll see some of those, don't be scared.
Back on the, there are a bunch of TikTok influencer literary teens.
Book talk.
And my kids do pick up a ton of titles from us, just so you know. And so, I mean, that's where they get a ton of titles. And that does influence them more than me. For teens. What about money?
Money. So, um, you have a memo, I'm, I'm tempted to just say.
Read the memo?
Do you wanna talk about it? Because, like, so the, 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 the great news is, like, we went from sixteen million to twenty-two million. And we, took this two years, but basically we figured it out. And now we're still, we're gonna be at twenty-two million for another two years with no guarantees that in twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-thirty. We aren't still at twenty-two then, alright, so, uh, something's gotta give. We, we do have some, uh, adjustments that we're recommending for the twenty twenty-six budget. But, um, the primary concern that I have right now, um, is that. We don't have a lot of money for capital needs, and we have a lot of capital needs, right? That, that's the big thing, right? So, um, we are not cutting back on the amount of money we spend on books. And, and, and the staff know this about me, but you should know this about me as well, like, it's my sacred cow, right? I do not, I am not about when, especially under duress, it's the easiest thing for you to cut. It's the easiest thing for you to just say, like, well, let's spend, start spending two million dollars, let's spend one point eight million dollars on books and stuff. It, it is a self-fulfilling prophecy, we buy fewer new books, our circulation will continue to go down, or our circulation will begin to show signs of decline again. And then you're gonna say like, well, the numbers aren't there, so let's spend less money on books, well, then that will result in fewer books, fewer books going out. It is, it is my sacred cow, I'm not really willing to touch it at this point, I think everything else is somewhat in play. I think one of the things we have to be hyper concerned about is staffing, right? So staffing, I feel like it is also a sacred cow, fine, we have to be able to keep good people. In order to keep good people, you have to have good benefits, and you have to be able to give raises. At a flat budget, as Andy pointed out a couple days ago, flat is negative, because staff salaries are going to grow. Healthcare costs are going to grow. And so how do we keep doing all of this stuff when I'm a can for the next two years? But how positioned do you wanna be in twenty twenty-eight? If the increase is only one percent, if it's back to five, six, seven percent, well, I'll say, oh, great, we didn't have to worry about it. And, or David, you were wrong, but in my mind, I, I want us to be thinking about twenty twenty-eight. We can make it to the next two years, right? We certainly can make it to the next two years with raises, good benefits. How positioned do you want to be in twenty twenty-eight? Cause we have a lot of capital needs, uh, we are hitting them heavy. Like that is one of the things that the board made clear from the outset, we're, and we internally, we are addressing a lot of problems. But I, 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 I'll open it up there, I mean, did everybody have a chance to read the memo? It is sobering, I mean, it's not, there's no other way to look at it, but sobering, we have a bunch of old buildings. Even with no BOLI, average age fifty-two, we're adding a fifty-year-old building in Gun barrel, that has an HVAC that's from nineteen eighty-four. You know, there are costs associated with having a bunch of old buildings. In some ways. If we had the capital funding, we'd be in here talking about like, how can we close all these old buildings and build new ones? Cause there'll be less money to operate, but we don't have the money, so is it, what, what is your disposition? This is a big part of, uh. Big part of your job, like we, you know, if we, if we make, if we make reductions to the budget. You're not doing it to win friends and influence people, you're doing it because we're trying to think of how to make this thing work, right? So, um. Open it up to comments, you can see what we're recommending, we're, we're recommending some adjustments to the service contracts. In my mind, you know, the, the service contracts and the staffing are inter, they're relating, like, one of those has to come down. Initial impulse is to reduce contract services or get them to a level that we can tolerate. You know, one of the things that you'll see in the budget, we're, we're testing that idea either, I think this afternoon, I don't know, soon. You know, what do you think about, um, rescoping security contracts? That's a major one, we spend a million dollars, we spend more than a million dollars, I believe you can add to it with cameras, storage, data storage. Guards everywhere and makes everybody feel better, yes, I don't, but, but, are we, what are we getting?
So with the capital set at zero point three percent twenty twenty-six budget, that effectively means we're not setting aside any money for future capital.
We're spending, like, so we, you'll see when we do the twenty twenty-six budget, we have, what, half million, more than half million, I think, dollars going into, in a, in a balanced budget.
But none of this is paying to our reserve for future capital.
We are, we do not see at the end of twenty twenty-six putting extra money into it.
They're not doing, um, capital maintenance next year. The capital that's in the budget next year is enhancing the children's area and the website refresh, that's the bulk.
Yeah, so, I mean, my overall read on this for the rest of us is. We're putting parts with little money into capital to be sustainable, I mean, we can maybe get away with it for a year or two, but like, this is not. A sustainable situation to be in, and it's certainly not a situation that lets us get a new Meadows building in three to five years. And we're gonna figure out where to make the cuts, if we wanna change that.
Just a clarity here. As this government entity that we are, can we issue a bond?
We can, we can also, certificates of participation.
So.
Do you have murderers or bond?
No.
So I'm curious to think about where Meadows goes in solving some of the other problems in the system, like we talked about in crime. Maybe it's worth considering bonding to buy someplace that isn't fifty percent. Especially now when there still is a kind of surplus of promotional space. That over time reduces the costs and reduces capital maintenance, at least for that millimeter.
Yeah, so the program would be, we don't, a bond would require elections, certificates of purchase, we shouldn't do not, but you know, the, that idea is not terrible. That's something we're thinking as well, I think all of the more will probably be, Jennifer and I will probably be with outside firms in the next year looking, I mean, I hope something will be, listen, people will talk about how it works. But you're talking about, you know, wanting to have two million dollar debt pay. Which we don't have.
So it's still, it's still.
It's the same thing, right?
So it's like. Yeah, no matter what you do, we gotta find five to ten percent of cuts and knock that whole parts of the budget.
Yeah. In, in, in order to do the certificates of participation, we would have to have, and, and you know, it's like, again, so. What I have to stress with the staff, and I'll stress with the team guys as well, is like, nobody did anything wrong, right? So the projections that for, for fifty years, uh, the averaging for, from, whatever, from nineteen eighty to two thousand and twelve. The average increase in the two years was four to five percent. So in other words, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-six, we would have seen an increase in the budget of one to one and a half million dollars. We're not seeing that, and that's what we're, that's what we're now realizing, is that we were all there, ready for that increase, didn't happen. Now, in the modeling for the future of the budget, we modeled out twenty-five years, we of course modeled flat years in that modeling, right? We were like, there's gonna be flat years, nobody ever said, I never did, and I shouldn't say anybody, it was me. I never did it once, projecting that we would hit a flat year in year three, two, year two, really. It's like, that was not part of the thing, it's always was after we had built up capital reserves, and then, okay, so we deferred. Doing Reynolds for another three years because we're going through a zero cycle, a zero percent revenue cycle. But it happens to be the case that we're hitting the zero percent now. Now, does it all go back to five percent in twenty twenty-eight? That's what history would tell us, right? Um, and really, over the last ten years, the last five cycles, the average increase has been closer to eight percent. Cause there was fourteen, ten, ten. Six, and then thirty, right? That's how those cycles went up until now, it's zero. And so we, we actually, probably everybody, reason why cities is mostly in peril, or looking at themselves like, what the heck? Everybody was kinda getting used to the county, when we had these negotiations, and I think we should increase the average for the modeling up to six percent. Like, well, I'm not, I, I'm keeping it at four, that's what our model predicted, four percent every two years in terms of that, then we finally have zero.
I, my thought on this is, well, I guess this is, this, this is your twenty-six budget, but we've spent a ton on capital in the last two years, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but I think, you know.
Who'd have ever spent more than? What was, how much, what percentage of the budget, twenty-three, five, just capital?
I mean, it was a lot.
We've never spent more than ten percent.
No, no.
We had five million, about five million.
Yeah, that's twenty-five percent, yeah.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, so Gun barrel.
So Gun barrel was a huge amount of capital, but, um. You know, I think this, it's hard to look at the capital right now and say, oh, yeah, that's right or wrong, because you gotta, I need to look at projects that you wanna fund, and I think maybe you'll know that later. But like, um, I think, you know, my thought to the board would be like, we just have to get these numbers in line with the averages. So, you know, you're gonna have to bring staffing down two and a half percent or three percent. Or, or bring costs down for benefits or whatever, you know, like, there's, you, you, you got a lot of levers you're gonna have to pull. Contract services, I think there's a ton of room there. Like, um, I personally don't think we need security guards at, you know, Reynolds or at Meadows. All the time, that's my personal opinion, but I mean, I, I'd like to hear people's input, just because, I mean, they're just sitting there, I'm, I'm there, and I'm just watching them sit around. And like, there was like two incidents at Meadows. You know what I mean? And it's such a small space, but yeah, that's my other, so like, I'd like, and then, you know, do we need so many guards here? We can talk about that, but like, you know. Then we got guards all over the place, which is, I think, okay, and it helps, but, you know, is there a more active role that? We have a lot of staff, like, when we, when we agreed to this, um, security plan, we didn't have the staff. You know what I mean?
And we had the bathroom.
We had the bathroom thing.
That's why we have so many guards.
Yeah.
There wasn't a day shelter.
And there wasn't a day shelter, that's really helped, I think like, I think I'm gonna have an improvement, I don't wanna see us, you know, reverse that. But also like, um, that, it's expensive. Yeah, you can see the incidents, so like, um, I leave that to y'all's discretion, that, I, I think we should leave that to your discretion on where you, where you source things, but. Or, um, where you allocate resources.
Like Reynolds, you can see.
Yeah, it's pretty, zero, 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 but we have a, a guard there all the time.
Yeah. Carnady.
Yeah, well, I don't think we have a guard at Carnady, no. But, um, that would be my. I, I think, for me, we need to be saving for Reynolds, for the Meadows. But we can allocate a part of the, yeah.
So, um, I, I, I think that idea of cutting that down, now, since Reynolds is a plan.
Yeah.
I'm gonna throw something out and apologize, because I'm not sure completely fits into this, but I actually think. As we're thinking about Meadows and Reynolds is our biggest liability in terms of capital affair after the swamp thing in the basement here. Maybe long-term here, we're actually creating like a sound, older-ish one place, closing Reynolds. Cause once Gun barrel's gone, and you got a parking lot out there, there's a lot of people who are gonna make use of that. Part of why Meadows is popular, I believe, with families, is because of convenience of the parking. Another space like that is a really justification that a whole staff in the building is underutilized.
And, and Reynolds and Meadows are a mile apart.
And they're mile apart, geographically, you know, you have two things servicing all part of the city, so. I think it's something, when we're trying to get to a big number, as Andy says, we're gonna get that much reduction. I think we have to talk about.
And I do think, I mean, you know, there's efficiencies to be had here, obviously contracting is a place where we're already planning to try to make some cuts. I mean, staffing's probably gonna be part of it, I don't think we need to be in the business of cutting existing roles, but there's probably some roles that if they naturally get dedicated, we should not refill. I mean, the, the nice thing about our first few years is, we actually had wildly more budget than we ever expected to have, right? Like, we saw a huge increase now, the bad news is, we found good ways to spend it all.
Well, you knew we'd do that.
Yeah, and yeah, like, this is, we did nothing, like, with setting it all aside and the assumption this was gonna happen, then a, a, our crew would move, like, not necessarily. Like, that was the taxpayers' money, they were giving it to us to use for these purposes, but. Like, we can operate a library effectively on less money than we're currently spending. It's just, we're gonna have to figure out which services we're willing to cut, which we aren't, and I think, my general philosophy here is. We should be opinionated about what we provide, like, I'd rather see us provide fewer things really well, than like, try to make. Small cuts to everything where everything gets incrementally worse, I mean, and we have to, people got different opinions on this topic, but at least from where I sit, I think. Now is the time for us to start to become a little more opinionated in what we want the library to do, what we don't want it to do, and to make those adjustments accordingly.
Where are you starting, Andy, I think is a question I'd like more people to weigh in on, is like. It's the same question, Jennifer, I talked about, like, the proposal you have in front of you is what I think is probably the best way of doing this, is that we give staff. The education and the opportunity, um, for two years to fix the ship, right? So I did, but it's a long-term education, like, I'm, I'm sitting down with managers who are progressive, who are thoughtful, who are looking forward. Who understand the financial situation we're in, and it's a two-hour-long conversation to get them to agree to let one shelter go. Uh, and so like, that's, that's what we're faced with over the next two years, it's a, is, it is the longest one. And is, is the board comfortable with that position? Because I don't, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent confident we get to twenty twenty-eight and we're there, right? So it could be the case we get to twenty twenty-eight and we have to make hard cuts, still, right?
Say that again, twenty, what?
It could be that we get to twenty twenty-eight and we have to make hard cuts.
Hard cuts, yes.
But, but, but for now, it's like, it seems like we have a window for better educating. All of the team, all the leadership teams, certainly, and all the managers, about how we make intelligent decisions around data and the use of data to determine. What investment services we can provide, what services are not being productive. And, and that, that's kind of the tactic we're taking, that's what we're presenting to you. But it, it's your discretion, you can say like, you need to go faster, and so if we need to go faster, there will be opportunities. We, we need to see that result by the next year's budget, cause next year's budget will kind of be back in the same place, where we're picking at little corners, trying to position ourselves for twenty twenty-eight, which. Might show a one and a half to two million dollar increase in our budget. Might is what I said, right? Like, so it might not do, in which case then we're gonna be like, now. And we, I think we're laying the groundwork for that now. My sense is, and I, and I don't mean to just try to tip your amp, like, my, I'm truly fifty-fifty, like, is the best way to bring staff along? So that we're all in this bus together, or is the best way for me to just, for the board to just say like, we're cutting here, we need to have that two million dollars now. And, you know, so that, we, we need to have, we need to have eight hundred thousand dollars now, so the next year we're getting a billion, so that when we get to twenty twenty-eight, kind of make drastic cuts. And I need to know what your thinking is.
Well, and I think what you're saying is really important in thinking about our conversation, if we have a conversation with city council, or if we're not just sitting there eating together, whatever. But I think, just given where the city is at, where they've been, and their cautionary flags, you know, hiring freeze, potential layoffs, that kind of thing, and. We need to kind of have our storyline aligned in a way, so that. We have improved conversation. so that we have improved conversations with them, I think, going forward. But I think that it's interesting for us, interesting for me as a, as a trustee, to have been in this place of, you know, upping the staff, like, making everything right, right? In the beginning, right? And, and then to be sort of in this place now that will, you know, sort of shape a longer-term vision. But it's, you know, just our attitude about it too, not having that, like, any personality. But I mean, I just think our motivation to, you know, correct the wrongs of the past related to city, and this was the first place to cut, and all of that, and trying to make ourselves whole in that. And now to like, be thinking, you know, can somebody do with one less shelter when we've had a whole different attitude and kind of story about it? So I just, I'm just really cautious about it because it just seems like, wow, how did that happen? That, you know, we like went from like, you know, let's do it all here, like, right now, and now we're like, you know? So I just think we need to be gradual, thoughtful, but also be prepared for a conversation with city council that, you know, that we're aligned in our, you know, where we're going, kind of stuff.
Um, Solia, same stuff? Go ahead, Solia.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Benita. I think that was a really great comment. And I think also, not just the, not just the city council, but the community at large. Like, you know, we've really taken this philosophy of, you know, we went from scarcity to plentifulness, and now we're going to try to try to scale that back somehow. So I think that we, I, I think we do need to be really kind of thoughtful and careful about not maybe going too far at one time. But I mean, at the same time, you know, our dollar, our, our financial picture is what it is, and we have to be smart about that. So it's just, it's a little tricky.
I do think it would, I mean, I get this is gonna be gradual. I do think at least by next year's budget, we should be trying to get part of the way toward realigning these kind of the target, where the target, what our targets to be. Um, I mean, again, we're, next year, we're also gonna have to find another three percent, three to five percent just in cost increases and overheads, so. We're gonna have to get opinionated somewhere.
I mean, if I said, you know, if we said, um, let's get this in line with the, you know, percentages that we think will keep us sustainable, I mean, how much pain is that in twenty-six?
Uh, there's some things that we're proposing to you that I want you to examine this year.
Yeah.
And there's some I think we can go further on. But, uh, but, you know, we'll see. I, I don't, I, it, 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 I, I, I feel like we're fine. Like, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to be simple, like, I think we're fine. I think we'll be fine for the next couple of years. Nobody made a mistake.
No, no.
And it, but it's, but it is serious, right? It is serious, and we need to get serious about how it's gonna work.
No, no, I get that.
I, I, I think, you know, to Benita's point, you know, everything we looked at, we bought the, whatever, Cadillac or.
The, the better one.
Porsche, yeah.
But I would say like.
We could have bought the Toyota.
I would also say that like, um.
An electric car.
We did buy the electric car. And, but I, I would say that like, um, you know, just to make a comment is, we're also in an environment where, um, you know, the governor, when they had huge increases in property taxes and the legislature, um, cut those, and, and just, this may be a public comment, cut those, um, for districts like ours, for, for fire districts, for library districts, for, um, city government, city county governments. So they ought, they reduced what we could have had. I don't know if that expires in twenty-twenty-eight or something, I know it's not permanent. But, um, they, they reduced what we could have had, um, probably by, I would say, a million or a million and a half. So, um, so we are, you know, we are, we did, our, our state leadership did do this a little bit to ourselves, but I mean, it was still okay. Um, um, do you wanna go into the? Go ahead.
As you said, there are only more tactical questions.
Yeah, I was gonna go to those questions.
Answers on.
I, I.
You made a recommendation, no? Like, that's what's, I'm reading here.
Yeah, so this, this budget assumes at least one thing, right? Like, this budget assumes that we're gonna drop the minimum wage requirement for security guards and janitorial staff.
Yeah, it doesn't consider that. I calculated at the current.
Okay, so this, this assumes we don't make that change.
Right.
And if we did make that change, that would free up additional money.
It could, uh, we don't know what market rate is on security. It could be close to our minimum wage. It's likely lower for custodial?
I think, I don't think it's that much low, but yeah, I, I think it's gonna be, um.
Well, presumably if our market wages for these roles are, or if our minimum wage is currently above market wage for these roles, you know, these folks have been getting raises each year. Like, are we basically waiting for market wage? Like, at some point, market rate will catch up with our minimum wage.
I don't believe so.
I think it, uh, you get turnover.
Yeah.
And then they just hire back as the.
Yeah, I mean, if we're already paying above market rate, you don't necessarily have to get annual raises to retain them, so. Um.
But the overheads.
But I guess we, we do, we do need to make a decision as to whether we want to make a change there or not.
So what it does consider is not paying benefits for custodial staff, which is about forty thousand dollars a year that we're spending. And, uh, pretty significant adjustment to the, um, schedule for security officers at main library.
What is the, what's the impact of the custodial? So that forty thousand we're paying for custodial, if we stop paying that, you know, what happens?
I don't know.
What about versus like getting, if you look at incident rate, like getting rid of, like, is there, at any of the other locations, are there, um, security where there's no incidents?
There's an hour adjustment, I believe, to the branches where we would leave, we would leave a guard. In the proposal, we would have a guard at the no-who the entire time they're open, but they.
Okay.
The guards at Meadows, Reynolds, and Gun Barrel, because I think they come in at eleven and stay till close.
But that's not an adjustment, that's what it is.
Well, that's what it is.
That's what it is, okay, so there's no money to find there.
Well, we're, we're reducing the guards at main.
Yeah, okay.
That is built in there.
Bringing out, we have four guards every hour that we're open, at main, like.
And this recommends two.
And times three.
Okay.
I don't think there's three. Maybe a, a little overlap midday for breaks, but other than that, no.
And I guess if things go bad, you can always add them up.
We can.
We find, we have to find money somewhere else to cut it.
But it looks like, like here, be cutting, you're, you would not cut that if it's immediately, right? For employees, is what you're saying?
For district employees?
Isn't that like, what, another fifty thousand in lifestyle spending? You're saying you're cutting it or you're not?
No, that's just out of consideration.
That, that's a, there, there are several things that we're looking for in consideration in terms of benefits factor. So again, we, the lifestyle spending account was stacked, set in, uh, a lot before, like, they got a rec pass before in the city. They said, can we get something similar? And so, we didn't have a rec pass, we provided that lifestyle spending account. It's very broad, you can use it for gasoline, you can use it for a ski pass, you can use.
Why?
It's not enough to buy any of those things, but it's, uh, it's a offset cost. And so, there is a program in there that is in place.
Is it the costs associated with maintaining the program? Or is it like actual paid out to benefits, the fifty-one thousand, five, six?
That's total, that's management.
Management, and, I mean.
I think it's considered a nice to have, but.
My personal preference is, I, I think we should maintain the minimum wage and the, and the benefits for the sta, or for the security, this is my, my thing, I.
We don't pay the benefits for security.
No, but for the, for the.
Cleaning.
Cleaning custodial, you know, I, um, do they just pass that on to us directly then?
Yeah.
Um.
It's for full-time staff, uh, after they work for the company for ninety days at these, these locations.
Okay.
Um, and there's two right now.
Okay, so it's two people that would, it's twenty thousand dollars a person, basically.
Wow, that's a lot.
Well, that's probably about what we pay for a person, yeah.
I think that's what we're seeing.
Yeah.
I, I'm with you on that, Doug. I, just a question, um, what are we, what's in this budget for outside consultants?
There's, um, about two hundred thousand that we were planning to use for the strategic planning process. Some of that might be consultant, some of that might be activities, we don't know. We're asking for your guidance on that. Um, we also are looking at, um, hiring a consultant to help us with data. Kind of look at what we're collecting and what's important to collect and how we evaluate, use it to evaluate things.
That's on top of that hundred thousand or it's in there?
No, it's in there. And then there's another two hundred and fifty thousand, um, for the website refresh and the calendar, events calendar, and other, other services that we, uh, purchased for the website.
And, uh, on that one, have we already like done a little exploring on RFPs to see?
Yeah, I did an RFI on the website.
Yep. And that was, that's what came back?
Yes, but, uh.
I'd be happy to look at that if you want, they, um, do that.
Do you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and just like to make sure, it's like, if you have to edit it, uh, like the backend, like if you're able to do it or if they're gonna charge you every time, there's a lot of services there. That feels just kind of expensive. But let me know, because that gets tricky, because there's usually a service component.
Yes, and there is, isn't there? And, uh, and we got a broad range. We got like twenty thousand dollars to more than two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and we, we are considering looking at, uh, new services, like for the events calendar and some of the, um, website, uh, webpages that have information on them that our librarians put together. And those companies also have web services available, so we're going to do some demos to see in there. They seem much more economical than, um, maybe going out to an independent, um, web designer.
Yeah, let me know if you want help, uh.
Yeah.
Because I think the big thing, just whatever you pick, you probably wanna make sure that you can have some control and that you're able to like update it, because it's so much cheaper, that you just like wanna be able to do it.
Yeah, it'd be great to have you look at the RFI. Do you want me to issue it in, you know, January, February?
Yeah, no problem.
I mean, I think just as a general, across the board, I think we've had this discussion. We should be thinking about where we can bring more stuff in-house in the long run. And I know our contract's not up for a year, but like, this applies to the website as well. If there's opportunities to do more of that in-house, that might make sense. I guess I'm kind of with Doug here. My personal vote would be, keep the minimum wage as is, keep paying that forty thousand for janitorial benefits, but that means we need to find that savings somewhere else. I mean, it does seem like the foundation health clinic is seventy-five grand a year that most people aren't using. Like, I, these are the trade-offs I would consider.
It will be seventy-five grand if we reduce, um, net cover dependence.
Yeah, well, and it seems like even amongst employees, I'd be, I mean, I'm sure you're looking at this, but I think this is where we like, the benefits people are using, we should keep. The benefits people aren't using are that only twenty-five percent of people are using. That's where we should be making the cuts.
Yeah.
And, yeah, somebody's gonna be disappointed, but I guess at least for me, I'd rather reduce staff for the employees than make that cut for the janitorial staff.
So let's, hold on, maybe bring her expertise in, into helping with that. And I'm thinking about this planning process. I mean, we've been through, you know, I think Kate ran a really good project on the outreach. I think she was the success of that, I don't think it was the outside consultants.
Correct.
Right? And so, we've built up this staff and this expertise, and we're, we're looking at how do we save some money? I would like to encourage that we think about how can we do the planning process without outside consultants? Since we now are so fully staffed and we have this experience of building the outreach program, it's doing really well.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, we, and we will to the extent that we can. I mean, in some cases, I think we do need outside help. Because you get different data, because.
It's separate kind of thing, so I, I don't know what we spent on the librarian who became, has a consulting business about branding. He brought in.
Anything.
Oh, Stacy.
Like, three thousand dollars or something.
Okay, all right. Well, just because like the whole thing that we did and like the input, like I got zero back.
Still kind of, we, we just got the Jennifer, I haven't received it.
Now, she's doing a lot of coaching, not so much.
Yeah, and coaching.
The staff has really written the plan.
Yeah, we, we will have a plan to bring back here in the fourth quarter. Uh, so yeah, that's, that has been on the board in progress.
Um, we have been disappointed quite a bit. I mean, I'm not saying we're disappointed in anything, but, or anyone in particular, but most of, a lot of the consultants we've gotten, we've kind of been disappointed with, you know, some of their output. And you're like, oh, I had to rewrite everything, and you're like, why did I do that? You know, so I don't, I don't know, like, but, you know, be very, um.
That's consulting.
Yeah.
That's the name of the game.
It's good to tell if you're a consultant and not to tell if you're a non-else.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, I guess, um.
I wanna go back, so we, we, we have three people who've said like they, so I, I'm, I am, you know, you're sitting in a room with a bunch of humans, you ask them, like, should we give this, right? And so, every human thinks about human things, and they think like, yeah, we should give benefits in the highest amounts out there we can to a bunch of outside people. What we are doing is we're affecting their bottom line, right? Significantly not. It's not the individual, but it's also the company's bottom line. We are decreasing that level of retention that that company has, so they, they can keep people longer because they're getting paid at a higher rate than they get paid in any other contract. And plus, we're also giving benefits. At the same time, I'm sitting down with some managers and saying, can you do without shelter? Right, so this is where we do have to make our decisions. I get when we're in a room and we say like, what, you're, you're a hu, human? What do you want, what's a human wanna do? Well, a human wants to give somebody all the money we can plus benefits. Is it essential for the way in which we run our company, when we are asking staff to make contractions and give up benefits, that whether they use them or not, is it still your contention that you wanna pay twenty-five dollar minimum wage and benefits to custodial service when they don't, they don't reduce the overall cost? They still add their thirty percent on top of that for what we pay them. So it's, the employee's getting twenty-five, we're paying the company thirty-eight, right? And we're paying the benefits, like, why aren't they having benefits? Like, you know, there, there are questions about, you're assisting a company making a bottom line. The other important thing to consider is all of those companies we're talking about, all three of those major contractors are mighty owned businesses.
So here's, here's a, you, you made, this was kind of back when we did the chart. And I was fascinated by this anecdote you shared, which was because we were paying more people to shell a higher rate. It was no longer this kind of transitory process, where people were staying. And you said to me, what's gonna happen is we're gonna, our, uh, uh, our, 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 our comp is gonna go up.
Yes, one of them might buy it.
Right?
Which is, how dangerous is this?
But it's that unintended consequence, right? So, we've got staff, it's working well, we honor their service. If we change things up with the security world where there's, you're gonna end up with, I'm getting fifty bucks and you're getting twenty bucks doing the same job, then there's a whole kind of, you know, there's, there's a tension in that system. So we, I think we wanna be careful about what's working for us with the security and the people who've been having those jobs, that we don't wanna create a class of employee for that company.
Um.
Well, and your, your point about, like, yes, we are basically making these contractors, like, the companies they're providing are janitorial staff. Their job is easier because we are doing this.
And they're making more.
Yeah, and they're making more money. I mean, for me, that's an argument for, we should be thinking about how we bring that in-house, not an argument for we should. Because ultimately, the owners aren't gonna take less money, the owners are gonna keep taking the same money. It's gonna be the employees that, that get hurt there at the end of the day. So like, yes, we are subsidizing some owners, we should consider if we wanna do that. But I guess my head, the consideration is not, is would be, cut the owners out, not reduce the employees.
Right, so we're paying, we're paying the overhead price, right? We already have a finance team, we already have an HR team, we already have all this. They have a finance team, they have an HR team.
Well, we're making profits.
But you, you may not be giving benefits to some of these security guards, so like, help care. So that would be an expense that we, you know, would have to pay.
This question, like, on the, in the packet, the number, the point one, if we did make these changes, what's our, what's the number?
From what would we save?
Yes.
We don't know because we don't know what market rate is.
We, we could, we could say, cut the minimum wage, whatever it is, fifteen, it'll be older minimum wage, and then, but.
And we might save a dollar now.
But, but they're like, well, we can never hire anybody under twenty-four dollars an hour or something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, we haven't even surveyed the stat, the current security guard and see what they make, do we, or do you know?
I, yeah. Part of the reason we do this, though, is they get paid. Part of the reason we do this though is they get paid.
Here, we required, yeah.
They get paid twenty.
But I'm saying the only, the only.
Twenty-two, twenty-two, forty-five.
Yes.
The only number we know for sure is that if we stop paying the benefits, we save forty thousand dollars. But, and we don't know whether that person loses healthcare, we just know that we, we stopped paying forty thousand dollars.
They lose it, the company does not provide it.
Okay. And the, but that's, otherwise, we don't know that we save anything. And I'm just asking, I mean, based on the sum of what, if we make these changes.
Yes. As presented, the only thing we're saving on is the schedule reduction, and that.
But that's not in this point.
It is, it's already been removed, so.
No.
And I think. We're, we're comfortable with the schedule reduction, I don't hear anyone objecting to the schedule reduction.
It sounds like we have to figure out the math then, right? Like, what the math would be, and then if we were to save money. I don't know, like, maybe I'm missing the point here, but.
Well, it's how we advertise the contract.
Yeah.
Are we advertising with the minimum wage and the benefits, or are we saying, let's just see what the market rate, and then we'll see what we can get? And we can say that's what we're gonna do.
Right, there's a potential.
It's just, I mean, we could all answer both bids.
It's just hard for me to weigh in on that, because I, I don't think forty thousand dollars is worth it. I think we keep the benefits if that's the only savings. But if making these changes saves us two hundred thousand, you know, if it's some real amount of money, then, like, I just, I don't know how to weigh in, because you're asking us to weigh in, I don't know how to weigh in. Because there's no, like, we don't know numbers.
Number, where he watched, which changes?
This is the, the question of the board.
The minimum wage change.
Oh.
It says, does the board want, not require security guard vendors to pay minimum wage and not healthcare?
I, I think you probably asked both questions, and then you can make a decision, and you can always bring it back to us, and we can, because then you'll have real numbers. It's gonna be eight hundred thousand dollars versus a million, and if it, you know.
There's your answer.
There's your answer, if the, I mean, we can be cruel, heartless people, you know, but, I mean, like, it, that, that's the, I think that's how you could.
So Kate asked the question, what would you charge us if it were market rate, what would you charge us?
I would say, yeah, you'd say, if, 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 you know, give us the quote for the, um, the minimum wage and benefits or what, a minimum, whatever, and give us also an alternative quote with, without that requirement.
You're not, you're gonna get twenty-two, forty-five is the answer, so I, I almost.
Yeah, I was just saying, why would they ever quote us smaller? Because they can carve in that profit into profit.
I almost.
Well, because you can always, because you, you would, you, I think they would, would, they could essentially, because you would, they would say, because you're gonna pick the one that's, um.
Yeah, I must come with the.
You're gonna pick the ones that's.
I, I guess my question for us would be, is there any scenario where we would actually want to pay those folks less? Because the original reason we, we had this re, well, the original reason we had this requirement was we basically said we didn't want janitorial staff and our security guards to basically be treated as second-class employees relative to the rest of our staff. So, you know, if we're willing to say we no longer feel that way, then it makes sense to give two bits.
And we could just put it out for market value and see what comes back. And then if we wanted to continue to pay our minimum wage, we just would.
Yeah.
But I think that's the question for us.
But they're gonna give you a.
It's a philosophical question more than anything else.
And they're gonna give us one.
They're gonna say, if, if, if the, if the, if the market rate was less, then they're gonna say it's gonna be a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars more to, to pay the minimum wage. Go ahead, Benita.
Separate, just related to the security guard scheduling, I just wondered, are we not considering Tom's suggestion or proposal that we are cutting Meadows and Reynolds securities at all? Isn't that what I heard you say?
Why, why don't we do a start?
Yeah, my thing would be reduce the service levels.
That's right, so why are we not cutting?
And not wages, but that would be.
Yeah, so not, yeah, so it's just another warm added savings.
Because we're.
I know staff like having security guards, but, but.
It sounds like we are cutting hours here.
Here, but also at other branches too.
Yeah, but yeah. But these other, but these other.
Because I mean.
Totally cutting them out, right?
Because it's, how, how mu, how much is Reynolds open? I mean, a library is open how many hours in a week?
Sixty-one.
So you're, it's like at least one and a half employees or probably two to make that.
No, they, they do eight hours a day.
Does it start at eleven?
So, um.
So one and a half employees, so if you, if you, if you, you know, you might be able to reduce, you know,
Yeah, so I would just close.
two employees or three employees, so that's like, you know.
But that gets added to this schedule. If we, if we, um, cut Reynolds, Meadows and Gun Barrel to, um, for the guards to be scheduled at two P M until close Monday through Friday, we estimate we'll save about fifty-six thousand dollars total.
I think what we need is like what number we're trying to get to, and then all of the different ways that we could get to it. I'm like struggling here. Um, so I don't know if there's like a next time, like all the different scenarios and what it would look like if we cut, um, like these three and like this reduced hours, or if we did, I don't know, a couple of different scenarios would help. Because I don't, it all feels like funny math to me right now.
Fair enough, I, you know, what we're trying to do is gauge your appetite for, I think, a budget. We're, we're, we don't need to say, and I'd also ask the question, do you want to save a million dollars by the end of the year? Because we're not, right? We're not saving a million dollars in twenty-twenty-six, we need to be at the point. If, if things don't change in twenty-twenty-eight, and we're not in a place where we're actually getting closer to putting a million, and that may happen by revenue increasing, right? We are gonna be in a fix. And so now, we're fine now, like, we can, we can keep every forty thousand, every fifty thousand dollars, it doesn't make so much sense, right? But every forty, fifty thousand dollars has to be done, and they all have to be done at some point. Some, somewhere forty has to give, somewhere eighty has to give, because that's the proposal that, that is the gist of the proposal. How do we trim the sales over the next two years and bring everybody along, so everybody agrees?
Well, I, I think if, for us to make a decision on it, I'd like to see the plan. I, if I say, as a board, if we say, give us a plan to, to trim a million or eight hundred thousand out of the budget, I'd, I'd like to see it. Is it two hundred thousand from security, is it, is it a hundred and fifty thousand from benefits, is it, you know? I would like to see that, I, I think that's the direction for us, is give us the plan to get to, if, if you think a million dollars is the right number, you know.
We are at about a million dollars with this, these proposals, if we go farther, we do.
Do you have it all on a slide that we can look at, potentially?
Maybe.
Can we take a break for a bit?
All of this, can we do a pause and just take a break?
Because I have to go back, it's gonna save us on premium costs. So like, if people were using the clinic, they weren't using insurance. And so if that's not the case, then it loses its, its, its appeal.
Yeah, I, I mean, to the point that being made earlier, and obviously there's limits to how complicated you want to get with this, but it would be interesting to maybe see a couple of different scenarios here as we start to get into the budget planning, where one is, you know, what would it take to get to two million dollars of savings? The current budget's basically with a million, and when we say savings, we really mean it's additional money we could put toward capital projects. But I'm expecting to see a couple of different scenarios there, because that's really the decision we're gonna have to make is, and to David, your point, like, yeah, we're not gonna make all these cuts in one year, but it would be good for us, I think, to start to look at what this is gonna look like over the next few years if we want to get to the point where we have a couple million dollars that we can put toward loan payments or some of that kind of debt service.
Yeah, having the bank, or like, what it would look like if we didn't treat everything equal and some of the service companies, you know, we didn't get the same benefits too as the actual employees or, um, you know, the difference made would be helpful.
Um, to get a million dollars, it's more than this, these three contracts.
Yes.
Um, and we can absolutely present you with numbers, but when we start putting names on numbers, then staff gets freaked out.
Right.
Even if it's just an exercise, so.
Everything we do is public, right? Yeah, it, it is, it is sensitive, we're gonna have to have these conversations anyway. We had asked already for, beginning to price out some of the things for programs, it's been a bottom line anyway. I mean, some of them are discreet, so this is the maker stuff, it's all fairly discreet, we can cost that out. The theater is fairly discreet, we can cost that out, there's something, and so we can bring in those for it. Now, is the staff all gonna look at that, like, bullshit, my job's on the line?
Yes.
Yes, they will, that is, that is the nature of these, the staff do, staff do read the packets and listen to your minutes, that's great.
Um, well, I mean, that's our job.
Yeah, I mean, our goal's not to scare staff here. And again, I think cutting staff would be the last thing we would do, but I do think it's worth us looking at the costs of these programs, because like, the theater could come up in the partnerships discussion, right? Like, how much money does Sundance need to throw our way to support that program if they want to use those spaces? Like, that's the discussions we're ultimately gonna need to be able to have, so.
Well, and I think just the signal that we're not sitting any longer and that we are not imposing a hiring freeze, I just think that keeps us on our, on our path, that's different from where the city's at with systems, and.
Yeah, I think we're definitely not there, um, and, um, I think at some point, you know, we're having this conversation now, like, but, um, I think even if we were gonna get a million and a half dollar, you know, extra in revenue, I would still say we need to cut things that aren't working, you know, and I think, and, and I think for me, I mean, that, like, you know, I think like, um, yeah, so what were the action items again, let me, so, or what were the?
So, no, no, we, we, yeah, we're gonna bring back some, a different, a, a structured, put the pricing on the, on this current contract,
So the plan.
which would involve Reynolds and those and Gun Barrel.
Right.
You know, and then, you know, the, we're not gonna know what market rate is till we actually go out for market rate, but I got the sense that we were fine with posting a market rate that if you choose to give them a wage higher than what they've, you know, we select the best bid based on market rate, and then we decide to pay them twenty-two, forty-five to it. The other thing is, it's a work plan, that's nothing you guys have to do on me, you just have to have a work plan, but we've done it before, pricing out the cost of bringing inside security and cleaning. So starting to start returning some of the cleaning now. And I remember the big problem with that, just because we did it, it was turnover. Turnover rate for, in the, both of those industries, security and cleaning contracts, is significantly higher than what we have. It's the highest, low turnover, which was used to the shelters, and probably still is, I don't really know. Our, our turnover rate in general is very low, a hundred percent.
For staff, but not for, the security turnover is pretty high, I'm, I'm not sure about that.
I don't think it'd be feasible for us to bring security.
No, I don't think, I don't think that's something we want to.
Because we don't have a, you know, substitute pool.
I think the janitorials.
Janitorial store makes more sense, because that's closer to the facility, closer to already have.
Also, you have less liability.
Yeah, no, I think, I care about this more on the janitorial front than the security front.
But, anyway, um, okay, and so now do we want to move on to, took a little break?
Uh, we have a, you know, brief memo, I, I, I'm ready to go wherever you all want to. Safety has been a big conversation, did you remember from the survey? A lot of people who indicated that they didn't come downtown because of safety concerns. We, I stopped pretending it's somebody else's problem, I try to talk to everybody, and we have a good relationship with parks. The fact is that, you know, outside is, remains somewhat unmanageable, um. I, I'm in the habit now of talking to people all the time. I had a donor recently who, who described it as dystopian, which I thought, like, there's something to work with, I thought that was awesome. Dystopian made my day, but outside is dystopian, I was like, maybe we could just change the name of the park to Dystopian Park, and people would enjoy it. But, but the, the fact is, it's a reality, and there are, it's something we get word on every day. Probably is depressing the numbers downtown slightly, although our first downtown are up, so they're available this year. And I expect us to go higher next year, so, you know, what's our role? What do you want us to do? Is there stuff that we need to change with regard to our policies to help mitigate some of the concerns that, you can call it a perception issue, whatever, the, the perception that the downtown area library is not safe. I, you know, that's one. The community engagement, I, I am interested in what role, again, do you want us to play in some of these organizations? And their ideas that you want for me to do and some staff to be out in the community in different ways. And then that kind of bleeds into the partnership conversation, but the partnership conversation is one where we are planning on bringing forward a policy for you. I, you know, it's not, they don't happen just magically, there is a lot of labor. The staff did propose a position, if we were gonna do something in twenty-twenty-six, I would reject that position. We don't have the ad book for it now, but I think, I don't think the staff will like the partnership. Program in its biggest form is doable without us having some kind of, there is our person who has time dedicated.
So how would partnerships differ from outreach?
Well, so, you know, part, it, it's an interesting topic, Tom, right? So because a lot of the things that we're doing now, um, involve some of the same groups, but in that outreach work, um, identifying groups that are working in similar communities with a like-minded goal, then a lot of what they want is, they want to come live with you, right? They want to have a library for themselves, and so we have done a few, it's not really kind of our specialty. We, we can, we can have a theater, but then if they want the whole place as a venue for two or three days, how do we pull that off? JLF is one that now we're in our eleventh year, and we've kind of got it down, but we've kind of treated it like the circus is coming to town, and it's not, it's not everybody involved. Whereas for, for, uh, Centro de Amistad is having an event here next weekend, I believe. I mean, it's, it's a hundred and fifty teenage girls speaking Spanish one day, and it's a major endeavor, right? We are doing it because we, we want to explore it, um, but it's, you know, right now, it's falling to the outreach team. They can't really fall to the theater team, there's no team that falls to it. So how would, how would it be managed partnerships going forward if we truly want to grow that program? And, and there are pluses and minuses, but I know you guys have kind of thrown it out, it's like, why don't we have a better relationship? Why don't we do more of this, but it's always the end what they're asking of us. And Sundance is, is maybe because they're now growing, because they're growing.
And they're gonna talk later about Sundance today.
We can talk about it now. Will we bring in a policy already?
Well, well, let's, let's take this, let's start with safety.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, let's keep it in order, it's just.
Yeah, 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 we, we can't.
I have something to contribute about that, I just want to.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, I just wanna, um, so you have three questions, what's our goal? Um, I, I have, you know, um, um, people's sense of perceived safety is, I think, a lot of what we're talking about, you know, I think for the most part, you know, the, you know, um, eh, you know, you do get the online chatter, you know, people seem to be, um, floating with their feet a little bit, seems like they are coming back, um, uh, I guess, what, what are your thoughts, Tommy? You had, this was kind of your, one of, one of your things.
You know, I brought this up when, when we got the survey data back.
Yeah.
I don't remember the exact numbers, but the ninety percent that were satisfied, forty-eight percent that was too scared to go to the library, and I was like, how do, how, how do we tell that information? And I don't know, there isn't something simple to do here, which is the, I think, if I'm right on the presentation of the data, David, is that the group of people who are in and out of here the most are the story hour.
Of the what?
Story hour. And one would assume that that's the group of people who would have the most concern about the dystopian outside teenager. Maybe we just begin with a survey of people after story hour to say, did you feel safe today? What would have been, what would have improved your feelings of safety around being in the library? I don't want to overly bias with the surveys, but something where it engages with them, so there's input coming. So that as we go forward with these things, we can say, well, listen, we, we've talked to the biggest group of users, the ones with young children. And, you know, this is what we learned, and they've made these changes. It's not really different than the parasit patrol showing up for the drag queen hour, where the community responded to the need, need to safety, and they've got all these volunteers, so we've got successes. Because I think a lot of it's about narrative, and Nadine, you jumped in on that too, and you're also, you have, I don't.
Yeah, I don't know, I think it's gotten better, um, like, we come, we don't use the bathrooms, we always make sure of the bathroom before. Um, and then outside, like, we play, I don't know, I feel like it's gotten better. Um, and I felt like we have that probably heaviest footprint, and I think it showed in the service traffic that came through in that report, um, that it was a lot of, like, young folks that come through. Um, I don't know, from a safety perspective, I would hate just like a few folks that are like so scared to skew, and for all of us to be paying for those folks, and they may never return, whether it be from like a COVID fear, or they just probably won't return. Um, and they're just outliers, right? Like statistical outliers.
And the other part, like, we have Nadine now, as a representative, right? Like, one of the, you know, we talked to, to the people we recommend, and what was attractive to you is.
All the kids.
Yeah, I don't know, that's not us.
Love the strap in.
So I think even like putting that out in the newsletter, I don't know, the newsletter that goes out is, that showcased the new board member, but that might be a nice part of the story around it. And it helps raise people's sense that we're, you know, who are, who are representing and who are.
You mentioned bathrooms, which seems to be a relatively common flashpoint when we make this sort of feedback. I don't know if it shows on the spot, but is there something that would make the bathrooms? I don't know if it's on the spot, but is there something that would make the bathrooms?
Is there for you guys?
Yes. Um, for a while, the bathrooms, um, I think you couldn't, I don't know now because I haven't gone for a while. It's like we just use the bathrooms before we come to the library. But the kid bathroom was locked, so we couldn't go there. We had to get a key as it opened out.
You have to get a key.
Yeah.
Oh, you have to get a key.
Get to the key. So that was harder. And then the main one here, you had to leave all of your articles of clothes. You got like your purse and I had like diaper bags at the time and it was like little kids. That was so annoying and it was so hard. And then you were going into these like mixed bathrooms and like I preferred going in the kids space because there was like a little chair inside the kids bathroom. You can like strap them in. It was so awesome. But then I'm like fighting for a key and looking for a librarian. And when I'm in a mixed space, like it's just like homeless are in there, like it's just an experience that I don't want with little kids while all my stuff is sitting out there with the security guard. Um, and, uh, so I don't do it.
How hard would it be to open up the kids like?
That's different.
We we do have the dead pit area about them. Is there a reason we could, I mean, is there concerns that if we unlock those, they would be abused as well?
They were previously used by anyone and we restrict access now to since the pandemic. We restrict access to the children. You have to be under eighteen or or accompanied by someone under eighteen to use.
But it does sound like the forcing folks ask for a key is probably meaning there's some folks that aren't using it at all.
I my my thought is, um. It's also kind of cleanliness in there for little kids.
Yeah. It's like cleanliness and like the.
I mean, it's it's clean. They try to keep it clean, but you know, it's a lot of people going through there.
Yeah.
I don't know how you up the cleanliness of those bathrooms of this.
It's the bathroom thing. I think for like all my friends, um, for the library, because you're in there a lot. And like if you're at the playground, you gotta drop all the way through the library to go to the bathroom. There have been many a times like we're at the playground and you gotta like come back through. And then, but again, my kids are a little older now, so I don't have to fight the bathroom thing. But you'll see like little kids being pushes out there because no one wants to come in here to go to the bathroom. But that's it. Otherwise, I feel okay.
I mean, like having dedicated bathrooms for families and kids seems appropriate and we do. It sounds like maybe though those aren't quite as accessible as we might want.
Yeah, we require key access for all the live bathrooms in Kindred. You can only use them one or one person and child at a time. And so all bathrooms will be key card access. Uh, that. Yeah, we 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 don't have to provide bathrooms at all, right? And and as as far as library data, like there was a recent survey that came out last year, actually from Ugov, which is like a massive surveying company that does like a hundred thousand people. Only one in three persons in general would ever consider using a public bathroom, one in three. So it's thirty three percent. So most of those people probably have to. Two thirds of the public would not consider using a public bathroom in a public library or anywhere else. And so, interesting, um, but like, so we provide it because we have to for a lot of people with medical conditions, for older people, for families.
Well, we have the cafe.
I mean, yeah, we we should provide bathrooms.
Yeah, but it's like, but you know, again, it's, um. But yeah, again, I mean, I I get complaints. I get complaints because they're all gender. I get complaints because, uh, you know, I don't know what to do with all that. I'm asking you. I don't know what we need to do. I honestly that we're not doing.
I don't know. I just go to the bathroom before I get here.
I mean, you think, I don't, I think if we don't have the key card access to the entrance to the bathroom, it's very difficult to regulate. Like, like if anybody can go in, anybody will. And we've had, you know, in the past, before we entered non-gendered bathrooms, um, people who were did not feel safe going in there if you were in, if you were gender neutral or going through a gender transition. So where did you go to the bathroom? You went to the children's area, which was also not a good solution because they think like, um, gender transition, you think I wanna pray through a room with a bunch of kids in it? Like, that's not what I wanna do either, but I don't feel safe in your other bathrooms. And so where do I go? And so they would go there. And so I, you know, I don't know what the solution is. I always kind of.
Well, I think I think most of them, when you go to the public bathroom, you, most people have, uh, I think a a belief that they are assuming the risk of of going into the public bathroom. I think from a safety perspective, just get the back to safety. I think the bathrooms is part of it. I, you know, I'm not, I, you know, I may always think it's weird when I come out and there's like a woman there, you know, like, you know, I think that's always kind of strange. But I I get over that. Um, and then, um, but I do think, I don't know, I still think the exterior, the grounds around main library is the biggest driver of unsafety. And and like.
I think it's lumped into it. Like I think of the creek as being unsafe. It's not the library, but I think of it as being part of the ground.
Well, but but everybody says at there was an incident at the library,
But it's not people associated them.
Yeah.
But it was usually like over here, you know?
Yeah.
But I think that's.
Um, I know you've had many conversations with Redfern and and we said, can you break it off and call it the Central Park area or something?
But I mean, it's it's a special moment. Can you start this discussion? Because you said that you would like to think that this isn't your problem, but it is. Like, and I think that's the issue is, it's like, we would like to be able to bifurcate, like make people think of that as not a library, like everybody does.
And I remember when I was a commissioner that you said when the incident happened with the meth, that it is the highest used public restroom like in the downtown area.
Yeah, because all the rest of them were closed.
It's like, could it not have been the other one? It would have been more. We have the nicest public restrooms in downtown.
We're also beginning to. But I mean, yeah, but I mean, so I mean, it's I was thinking about the unhoused traffic is a part of that, but then also like just creek, you know? Floaters and, you know.
I do routinely see kids in bathing suits and their shoes running into the library bathrooms because they're the creek bathrooms.
Yeah. And that's not that hope they're doing, they're.
Yeah, there's another, there's another set of bathrooms here, but I know I wouldn't go in there.
I see babies. See a baby's.
Are those even floating? They got those for a while.
Uh, uh, okay, so, I mean, as far as our role, I I think I still think we need to take a very active role in the, for downtown, the space around here. And I don't know, you know, we're gonna have a meeting with the the city coming up. And and maybe, I don't, we could have an open ended sort of comment or discussion with them about, you know, this place that, you know, we, you know, we're the central feature here and we draw a lot of people. But also, you know, there are major concerns from our patronage and your citizens about this area. And I know you're trying to address that in this community plan. You know, uh, converting more park space that you're gonna fence off over here because it's already fenced off because they didn't like that unhoused over there. And so they're gonna, you know, build, expand that park. Is it also gonna be fenced off more because of the? On how, I I I I think there's some comments here to the city just around, like we had that meeting with Chris, me and you, Benita and David, um, and they they've done a lot. I think they've done a lot, but like, how do we continue to improve this area so that it's not a magnet for just the unhoused, but also other people? Like when they run the Taco Fest, you know, that that moved displaces a lot of people. You know, it changes the the vibe of the whole area.
Yeah. And we had that, excuse me, we had that meeting because of the the glass break, right? That the rocks and the.
I can't remember. Yes.
It was last year. I just, I just want somebody to think we had this meeting recently or anything, but it was, it's a long time.
Yeah, when they busted through. Yeah, we had a, yeah, we had someone uh break our window, which was like twelve, twelve dollars.
Right?
And, you know.
Yeah, so I I what I just want, this concern is not gonna get easier. Uh, there are major plan, you have that team, we'll talk about a little bit later in September. Right, so, you know, the the city is leaving in twenty twenty seven and basically taking all their toys. And I I did find out for certain that some of those buildings that are no longer at our program being there. There is a plan for funding for demoing and they're gone as well. Right, so I just like, the city is leaving in twenty twenty seven, twenty eight. This kind of bleeds over into partnership discussions as well. Like, will there be Taco Fest? Are they gonna close our parking lot? The city's all for you, right? And are we applying that like that?
You mean the city's leaving?
So you're leaving the building. All of our lives is down by Boston.
Oh, my Boston copy.
So the buildings that stay, the minute building will stay, but the plan there shows it to be like a restaurant, a bathroom, some that kind of stuff.
Okay.
You know, the only, the only thing that's on the on the far side. And then, you know, the senior center, we can talk about this, the section eight, older housing partners is closing the section eight housing. That property is also lying to be purchased by the city, which looks to me, and I think is a an accumulation of property in order to make it as suitable for, say, uh, along with the senior center, which is only opening a couple of days. We, but we are very soon, I mean, it will be a part of our next strategic plan to talk about how how are we not gonna be the last man standing in the park? Because as it is right now, we will be the last man standing in the park in very short order. In three years, we'll be here. And or not, and then how we, what 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 will our role seem like there?
So you really are the bathroom.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Unless they make ventures.
Yeah, I mean, this is why I think you're right. Like, we need to be very engaged in this planning because the bathrooms discussion, I mean, even the landscape, right? Like, the natural landscaping is nice. It's also a large reason this area is so attractive for folks running camp, right? Like, if you had more sightlines, just like Jane Jacobs one on one, you wouldn't have as many problems. But I think that's why we're gonna need to be engaged in this design, we wanna solve some structural issues here.
Yeah, we can talk, we'll talk, we're gonna talk about that a little bit later in September. It's lots to chew on.
Well, I I I, so I just wanna, I don't know, you know, when we talk about what is our role, what can we do? Uh, are there any policy changes we can consider? You know, I don't know if like, do we wanna get involved in activating the little amphitheater over here? I don't know. Like, what's that cost for us? Can the city partner with us and give us money? That those are the kind of questions that we might, you know, like.
This is an amphitheater, like our space here?
Uh, if you go right out of the Kansas Theater where the Taco Fest was, there's an amphitheater right there.
Oh, okay. Oh, that space.
It gets used four times a year, like a Jeff and Paige show, Creek Fest, and whatever the.
Okay. Okay, you're not talking about the Vegas?
No, literally right outside the doors here that you probably don't even realize the amphitheater.
No, no, no.
A little church there.
We have none of this.
There's an amphitheater there.
They're gonna get rid of a lot of buildings, huh?
Although this.
You know, but they run metal music up at Chautauqua. You know, like, what if they ran metal music out here? Uh, the city runs metal music for Jeff and Paige.
Ch- Chautauqua.
At Chautauqua, yeah. I mean, it's awesome. It's fun.
Bringing children's music.
Yes, and there's a big child mosh pit. It's it's like, but.
Your mind is challenged.
Your mind is challenged.
I just noticed.
Children's metal?
Meadow, meadow, meadow music.
Music.
Oh. I heard meadows, but then.
Because it was in the meadow of Chautauqua.
You said mosh pit, and then I was like, wait, is it metal? Sorry.
No.
But like, but we could, but to be fair, this, I don't think Chaut- Chautauqua needs more activation, right?
No.
There's children's rippies.
Like, they, it's like, it would be the number one, you know, national park in the country if it was a national park, you know, like from a maintenance perspective. So, so like, those are the kind of conversations, I think. I think we need to, you know, push on activating the areas out here. I wouldn't mind giving up our parking lot for Creek Fest and more festivals and more things like that, you know? Um, for weekends and stuff, because I think it draws people to the area and, um, yeah, so.
Do we have any interest in pushing for our ownership of the property before this finishes?
Um, I I we're we'll get to that. There there are there are leverage points that we have that probably we'll see in a lifetime.
Okay. Yeah.
Leverage points, but I, but it'd be more than that, right? So, um, there were two camps in twenty fifteen when this plan first was made. One camp was, let's sell the property and sell it and turn it into a conservancy and like spying the funding that's gonna actually support program in the park. I was in that camp. Uh, I'm still in that camp, uh, because I think there was a strong group that wanted in twenty fifteen was really like, the city needs to do everything we can and we need to maintain all this and we can, this is an asset and we can keep doing it. And I think we've seen in ten years how that played out, right? Like, I I'm not sure, um, I I desperately, my main concern in the social security plan is we need neighbors. We need friends. We need partners in this community. And I mean, I I I'm not gonna tell you what to think, right? It, none of it's easy, right? Like, if they, if the city proposes, you know, selling the land on the west side of the library on the on the north side of the creek, uh, south side of the creek and turning it into trillion dollar condos, like I'm all there. Like, I don't know that you guys are gonna be super excited about that. I'm all there because I want a bunch of other partners in the business with me, right? I want, and I want the money that contributes to that to go to programming the park, to turning the park into a viable place for everybody in the community and not for some, not some nice people calling dystopian. But it, but it is a complicated thing, like in some sense, I get it, right? Taking public land and turning it into a public private partnership is not simple, it's not easy, it's not necessarily what everybody wants. But I'm, we are faced with very real possibilities that cities waiting to. And and we need to think of something, is a conservancy, if if there is a conservancy, we'll have a position on the board, I guarantee it. Like, we we will be a major player on the board of a conservancy that's running a park. We will have a say in how that money is spent. We will have a say, but that's, that's all the things that we're trying to talk about, right? We we need to get a partnership policy in place. If a conservancy comes floating to the top and they're talking about, this is the amount of money we're gonna generate by making it two and a half acres of condos, uh, tax free for twenty years, list the money, those are all considerations to me, I do.
Yeah.
Everybody may say that we don't need another bunch of million dollar condos. I I get it, but it's like, what do we need as the library as an institution? That's how I need to make this.
Yeah, and I'm just going back to what is our role for the safety and I think is drawing human beings to to this area. What, you know what I mean? The more activation, I think, the the more safety. And I think we've seen it play out. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I I I agree with that.
Yeah.
I think that's a great one. So I just wanna come back to what I said at the beginning and really let's survey the people who are our biggest users here in some kind of way, whether it's doing an iPad when you're leaving, it's a QR code. Let's get a sense of the people who are here weekly and where do they feel about safety? And what do they see as means? And if, again, if you're using the library and it's about bathrooms and it's and we've made a lot of changes in the bathroom policy, well, that's that's information to us. And if it's the outside, that's information and we can then at least say we're we're engaged in it. And then the bigger picture, this this map, yeah, I think, as you said, you wanna talk more about this afternoon, but that's, being here alone is not a great idea.
I just, I just wanna say that, so at our meeting last week, we did, you know, this was highlighted, we talked a bit about this. And it was that the city was seeking input related to this and that deadline's passed, right? And so I just think we need to be ready to have, you know, when we're talking to the council and we're bringing this, that we have a strategy, a message in mind as it relates to this. So that's what I just wanted to add for you two.
Um, there is like these like buttons you push, like, I don't know, have you seen those, like when you're leaving them?
This is my life.
Good.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah. When you.
Like at the airport.
How was your experience?
No, 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 like, like when you're at the bathroom at the airport or something.
Yeah. Um. I mean, I think the the thing about this conversation, I think, is that, and I think where we get stuck is this like first question is, which is like, what is our role? I don't know that we get a say in that.
I think we, I think our role.
I think, I think what we get a say is the second question is what we do. Because I think the first one is what we were saying before, which is like, we would like to be able to have a a say in what we want to say.
I think this is like. I think it moves into the community engagement part and partnership thing.
Yeah. But I mean, I think in terms of how do people view us with respect to this property, I don't know how much say to get in that.
Yeah.
I think people are gonna view us the way they're gonna view us. And so like, we just need to say, like, we need to figure out what is it, how is it that we're viewed and then what do we do about that?
I think we have a model though.
We can say, we can decide how, what role we wanna have, but people aren't necessarily for us. That's my, that's my.
I get that, but I think we have a model here that works, that is pea, investing in the facilities and the programming and the like spaces that draws people um, tends to make places safer.
Yep. And that's the point. That's that's what can we do.
And so like, I think we try to push that, hopefully we can push that out. You know, I'm just full say, but.
But that's the, that's the same, I agree.
We are the library district. We are the district and we are the governing board and we have to do share responsibilities that relate to this element, so.
Yeah. Right. Right.
I mean, I I agree. I think, I'm just saying, like, I think all of that comes down to what can we do? And I I agree with you. I think that is what we can do.
Yeah, yeah, keep advocating.
Yeah.
And and I think, like, let's go into community engagement portion because I think, where do you, we have, you have a bunch of people here. Um, is is, are there things that you actively wanna start doing in twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six to to build partnerships? Like specific ones, like.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm asking you, is if you guys see a value in this, like, you know, I, and and do we keep pushing it? I mean, like, I go to Chambers stuff now. I I we are members of downtown border partnership, you know? But, you know, it's those don't, going in with agreement on some of those things don't always align necessarily with what you hear about. Just I I know that. I, they may not personally have my values, you know, but I'm I'm I'm, my personal values and what I. I'm I'm, my personal values and what I do for my job are two different things, right? Like I'm, I'm trying to bring what I can to disable it, but but how how closely do we wanna? Bring these players who are players, uh, into into play with regard to governance of the library, it does come back to what we do, I.
What's the benefit that you think we would get that we're missing, that we're not utilizing?
Um, that's a great question, you know, like the. The chamber, it's remains to be seen, right? Like I, every time I go, somebody wants to sell to you definitely, right? It's not like, there's not an overarching point, it's just they kinda, they want more housing, so what I look, sale is not your stuff that doesn't really get us anywhere.
They want more, they want the same thing for this area down here. My, on this piece, my thought was. I'm okay with whatever partnerships we wanna do, I think let's have a framework by which we evaluate. I think this is something you can bring back to the board as a, it is my view and you guys, is like, hey. Because, you know, different groups are gonna be pissed off if we don't wanna partner with them, or they're gonna be happy if you do wanna partner with them. So what is the like, you know, um, what is the, I think the the library needs a policy or or a framework for evaluating partnerships? And some criteria for which you want benefit, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
So like, it's gotta be mutual, but like, I think that would be the action item for me, would be, here's the. Here's our framework that we're gonna establish for community partnerships, because you know, to be fair, like, I don't know, like. The Proud Boys may be like, hey, we wanna utilize your space for, you know, you know, a week or something. And, you know, I I don't think that would be aligned with our values, so we might not want that partnership, right? So, um, so but, you know, other groups might, and I just have to be, we have to be fair about it, but also, we need to.
Yeah, but would we actually say noted them? I mean.
Well, no, probably not if they want, but but we probably wouldn't partner with them, you know what I mean, like, it's like, I don't know, but like.
But.
Right now, the the, well, the theater is one of the things we're talking about, right? So the theaters, anybody can make a booking, so are all the rooms, right? The NRA can book it, like anybody can book their rooms, I don't, I don't say, we we would not form a partnership with them, we've been, we've been fits and starts with regarding partnerships.
Correct, yeah.
Boulder Housing Partners is the one that I would consider to be actually a real partner in the sense in which we are going into their doing programs, they do. They do programs here, we have a navigator that's funneling people towards housing, you know, a lot of different things like that that are happening. What other, if if Sundance comes to town, you know, if except, and when Sundance comes to town.
When.
If they have an interest in our theater, which we don't know yet, we've heard that they do. Um, we don't allow selling tickets, so it'll require a change in policy in order to even allow it here, but they're not gonna say like, we're gonna do free programming in your theater. Is all we want from it, money, if there's easy enough for us to say, like, we're closing the theater for three weeks, it's all Sundance, you guys can do whatever the fuck you want, we're out. And we don't recruit volunteers, you know, cuz it's a very volunteer run program, right? So we don't do anything with them, right? But if we're doing that for Sundance, why don't we do it for Lotus Theater? Why don't we do it for the Pillar Monique? Why don't we do it for three other groups, like, I I don't, I, we need to have an answer on this, cuz we can't just say like.
Well, that's what I'm saying, come up, like, I think that's why you need a policy and or at least some sort of matrix or. Is that something that you could come up with, or?
We're planning on bringing a part, a policy forward to you in.
Go ahead.
In the fall, in the fourth quarter, but I'm I'm looking to see kind of what you.
So, essentially, one one factor then is the equity. So, you know, the city's adopted the policy on equity, I think we have it in ours.
We talked about it.
Until we get to this kind of scale of stuff, bringing it in, some of those, providing equity may be. Venues that don't have a lot of people, there's a, there's a community role for that, so I just bring that into it.
So related to Sundance, what I know, and it's because of this other board that I serve on, that has the Stanley Hotel and the Film Center, it's tied to Sundance, right? And all that went through and it's in play, but I heard recently about, um, so Sundance is spending like a monthly visit here. And last month, it was at E-Town, everything you wanna know about Sundance, and I was there, and then next week, they have a session for programmers and producers and. All that with the Sundance staff, so it's a way to sort of begin to build relationships with their professional staff team and the community. And so I just happen to be paying attention to that closely because of my other connection with this project. But I heard that because sponsors come in, so it's eleven days in, um, late January, right? And, um, they're talking about like sponsors like Disney would come in and they like to take over a certain space. So they might take over an art gallery or something like that, and that becomes their sort of drop-in center for producers or Hollywood types, whatever. And the city, this is just what I was hearing from a city source, is trying to figure out how to deal with, um, liquor licensing and, you know. The provision of alcoholic beverages and that kind of thing, and they were talking about partnering with a nonprofit. And like the nonprofit would be actually like sort of the the host in some way, and they then would be charging for anything in a sense. And it could be a donation to the nonprofit or whatever, it was some way to like connect our nonprofit community with, you know. Sort of these four proper corporate sponsors that need the space and need, you know, their food and beverage stuff going on. Um, so that was just something that, you know, was out there, and I don't know where they went with that, but they were, the city was kind of excited about how they thought that this could help nonprofit organizations and. Anything and that kind of thing. But what I also know is that they, you know, Sundance is looking at various spaces, not only for the eleven day thing. But when they have this film center presence in Estes Park at the Stanley Hotel, they'll wanna be, you know, having some ongoing relationship in some places where they can. You know, have gatherings and shit, you know, screenings and that kind of thing, and, um, you know, this and other spaces would be aligned with that. So I just wanted to mention those two things, because. The city and I, so I think you're partnering with the, um, Downtown Boulder Partnership seems to be like the lead entity in those kind of conversations. And, you know, again, like, you know, Sundance folks are here monthly, and you could probably ask for a meeting with them when they're here in their monthly visits to just talk about and understand.
I got a meeting next week, so to follow up on that.
Yeah.
Uh, in my travels, I met a woman in Toronto, and I got the chance, that was one of the Tri-Becka folks, and then she ran the Toronto Film Festival. She has a partner in the new business who's here, his name is Brandon Lowence. And they would be really interested to come to Boulder to do a presentation on how, as a community, to embrace Sundance, this is what they've done in. New York City and Toronto and so. And I thought it might be something we could think about, cuz the library district is a, you know, is a way to put us at the center. This conversation is to use them to a meeting and invite all the, you know, players, nonprofits, city, et cetera, and say, here's a presentation on how. They would recommend, as a city and as this library district, we engage with Sundance versus just getting Sundance's version of it.
Yeah.
Because they have a very vested interest in wanting to take this.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I think for us, given that we have a, you know, we have this hole. I think part of it, I've been really thinking about how we utilize this building during Sundance to maximize the revenue.
What do you want?
Right? And that, David, may even, as we're renovating the second floor of our gylopore, this is that maybe we need to be thinking about that in the context of. How that space, which is really the best downtown space for a big group. Becomes partly maybe one of our, it's less the Canyon Theater than this, this, you know, upstairs gathering space. Now, we, you know, as Chris and everybody, we've succeeded with the gala, maybe, maybe that thing really rocked. And one book.
And I I.
It's eleven days.
I mean, we should remember, like, the, one of the, we chose a community law, right? Like the use of our public space next to books is probably the next biggest recognition of why people use the library. And I appreciate that we try to make it free and available to the public most of the time, but I think there is probably some willingness on our part to explore. Partnerships that wouldn't necessarily be free enough for the public if there was a suitable benefit for the library involved. That's where it sounds like we're back to like, we need a policy for how we make those.
It could be cool too to like pitch them ideas on what we're going to do with the library, and I think like.
Yeah.
It's one of the good ideas.
Right, and like come to them, like, there's gonna be different movies here, and with that, different actor and actresses come, and like. What happens if you have those actor or actresses, ask them if they'll do reading time or like story time, right? Or like, they helped you make your workshops, I don't know if any of you've been to Sundance, but like. I've been to the one in Utah, and there is like everywhere you turn, there's like famous people, it's like the weirdest thing, you walk up a bathroom stall and there's like someone famous, it's just, it's so bizarre. And like the show that I went to was in a middle school, and you sat in a gymnasium, and there'd be like a famous person who'd pop down next to you, it's so weird. But I think it could be like a good case study to show like how we as a community are using them, and I think we should capitalize in it, on my like business background. But, um, I think pulling them in as part of us would be really interesting, and of course, I think they'd probably get a little different model than some of the other partnerships down the road. But this is one where all the budget cuts you're thinking of, this could really help accelerate all of that, help it all.
I.
You know, you might need to be that security back for.
I think that's a good, a good comment, and maybe we pitch it at the city council, I think we should, uh, you know, when we talk to city council next month, say. Hey, we'd also like, you know, seat at the table with the Sundance stuff, I think we have a lot of spaces to offer, we have a lot of expertise in this area, um. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Do you wanna just, want me to introduce you to to Beth and Brandon?
Brandon? I, I, yeah, I I know enough people to know that I would need to check into some others to say, like, yeah, we're gonna bring a contrary view, like. That is not a sentiment that is massive and prevalent in town right now.
What do you mean?
Contrary view to presenting how to deal with Sundance.
Oh.
That's not from Sundance, like, that's already like, I I totally get it, like, I'm, and and we should probably recommend, but I I don't know.
What is it, it's like wait till they come to you kind of feeling?
I know, it is like, you know, that Sundance is like the biggest thing since Pearl Street, I I'm not sure, I know.
Yeah.
I, you know, and and there, most people are getting in line. You said one thing, though, that I do need to follow up on, the whole board, right? So this is, you said, like, let's figure out a way to maximize revenue. No library board, no commission before it, no, nothing has ever been down that road before without this, right? We did have a program to make money in the theater, uh, with On Purpose, you know, almost ten years ago. It failed in the end, it was in a, in a partnership with Downtown Boulder Partners, didn't fail because the program was wrong, failed because of competition, and somebody got worked that was working it, we got slaughtered. But. Even then, there were people who voted against it, and they said, no way, that's slippery slope, we do not want to have anything to do with this. So if you guys are truly into the idea of like, let's look at Sundance, how to maximize revenue, I'm gonna ask you, how does a policy change? That maybe other groups could do this, cuz I hear from the Pillar Monique too, the Pillar Monique used to come here and do programs, we paid them a lot of money. But they would much rather have the space for free to do it and sell tickets, right? Like, other group, a lot of group would like to have theater and sell tickets.
Well, I maximize, I don't know if you literally meant maximize revenue, I think from where I'm sitting, it's. I'm more willing to consider things that would involve revenue, right? I don't think we're saying we're gonna be purist and everything is gonna be a hundred percent free.
No, let's say something.
But I also think there's a balancing act here, right? Like there's, it's gonna be a deal by deal negotiation, and we're gonna have to balance the public and the library interest.
And there has to be, there has to be a policy, there has, it has to be, there have to be felt like grounding principles, because otherwise, like we're all saying, what happens is, it's like.
Yeah.
If we treat Sundance differently, why?
Well, this is my.
Like how we justify that?
That's how, that's how the state passed the bill, bring them here, they wrote something that was the only thing in the world that was gonna meet the test, Sundance. So we could create a policy that is.
I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm saying, like, I think we need a policy that would allow other people to have similar access.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that could be a different gradation.
Because like you said, Sundance is two weeks.
Yeah.
So, like, I don't think that we need a policy that is specific to, I think it's, I think what we need is a, is a policy at all.
Well, I think though, like. Like what, what the foundation is doing with like the Boulder Bookstore and the, I mean, we're doing it free.
Mm-hmm.
But what if, you know, what if they were allowed to charge the fifteen dollars or whatever? You know, some of the authors would would book up the whole upstairs if it would, but.
Well, we, we technically already do this, like, we have the gala, we're kind of selling that.
But that's an exception to the gala, right? It's an exception, it's an exception in our policy to the gala.
Right, it's a, it's a one thing today, but this would be, I think this is, this is the gradation, right? Like, we're already doing this for the gala, which sounds like there's some object for Sundance, there's probably some other groups that we should be considering as well, and we just need to help with that for how we make those decisions.
Because. I think a lot of our, I I think if I understand our undercurrent is, our, our biggest driver is activating the spaces for use by the community. Um, and as cheaply as as, you know, and like, like, I feel like if if they are charging, if we, let's say, we open up the theater every night of the week. But but Tuesdays and Saturdays are free to the public, if you wanna use the 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 theater on and charge for an event on Monday. You're gonna pay for like security guards and, you know, you're gonna reimburse this for services.
Staff.
Staff, yeah, like. Yeah, I mean, that would be the kind of thing I would say would be, you're welcome to use it outside the the free time, like you 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 balance that. But but then, if you wanna have it on a Sunday night, you're gonna pay the the security guard and reimburse this for services, that.
And I think goes beyond that, I think it's also, and we wanna collect enough money to support upgrades of theater and, you know, the infrastructure capital costs that are gonna be associated with maintaining that infrastructure. But this is why, like, I don't know that we're gonna sell this big now, but this is why we need all, like, we need to decide what are we actually trying to do here.
So you're, so you, I think you hear a willingness to charge for the space and and and, I think you hear a willingness, but we also want some stuff free, um, I think, like, um.
There just have to be principles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Sylvia.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, we also just have to remember, you know, we're not a business entity, we're not here to make profit. We are an entity that exists for open access to certain, you know, certain things, um, books being the primary thing. Um, so I guess I would just wanna have, you know, it's still, I would still want it to balance more in the favor of the the open access and the, you know. Ability for people to come in who wouldn't ordinarily have the money to do some of these activities. Um, yeah, I I I wouldn't want us to go so far in the other direction that it's all about, let's capitalize and make money off of the theater. Um, we need to remember that we're supposed to be, um, a place where the community comes together and not have to pay a dime to do so.
Yeah.
Well, I think the balance, I think the equity piece that you talked about would be important in the policy, you're trying to get things that would be important in the policy to the board, right? Yeah.
I mean, the real question here is, how do we get entities like Sundance to subsidize all of this theater programming?
All of it.
That's basically what we're talking about.
And but also, but I think to me is like, we're open sixty-five hours a week.
Almost, you know, this is a very structured.
And a couple extra hours on the, on the, uh, the Canyon Theater. And my thing would be, okay, well, well, the space is closed, is there, is there uses for the space?
After hours.
After hours that might, you know, we're offering nine, you know, a hundred percent free, and then, you know, if there's people that wanna use and program. Like, that's the same with the city, if if the Taco Fest pays to use the parking lot, you know what I mean? And they they pay for the, all that stuff, so like, um, anyway.
I think it's just important that the district is in the conversations now with them, and so I wanna be pushing that.
But I mean, I I wouldn't want our, yeah, I want our partnership policy to also include, you know, modus or, you know, like organizations like that or, um. El, El Centro, you know, like those types of places, um, you know, like the same kind of places that we are doing now, you know what I mean? And like, um.
And to start, we we've started that this year, right? So there are two groups that have a theater that have, uh, ticketed events, um, they, we don't allow them to sell tickets here, they have to do it, they do it online. So the the El Centro is a leadership conference, you know, a team of women. And so they, uh, so the condition of the temporary contract that we put in place with them was they have to keep X number of seats open for the company for free. Cuz everything is free, and it was just an experiment, we'll try it once. I think they sold, they have, in the, sold other tickets, they wanna sell the last ten, but we're not gonna do that because we still have to have possibility that somebody just shows up and wants to drop in for free. But if we had a different policy, uh, that would enable them to do their weekend thing, mostly cost control, they're not making a big profit. They wanna pay the speaker, they wanna pay for the lunches, they wanna do all that stuff, and I think that's how the Jordan groups will look at it, how to recover cost. With Sundance, I'm assuming that partly it's year round or variation, they make enough money, mostly to do the eleven days for two weeks that funds their programming for the rest of the year. Uh, and so I don't know if they're, and I, I looked at their, you know, their tax receipts, like, they haven't made profit the last two years, like sometimes. They're not gonna be just wildly open to like, it's like when Google came down, it was like, Google can pay for everything, Sundance can't pay for everything. To me, it looks like a small nonprofit that that generates a ton of revenue, but they're barely scraping the bottom, like, they went. To me, it looks like a small nonprofit that, that generates a ton of revenue, but they're barely scraping the bottom, like at what point you begin to make a lot of money? So I don't know that we're gonna, they're not gonna be paying us for a lot of stuff, but how can we facilitate them to do their thing and they become profitable, that's why they go to Boulder. They wanna figure out how to become profitable.
There could be other incentive pools, like, you know, state economic development funds that help support them in their, um, you know, their time at the Stanley Hotel and there could be other incentives that we just wanna be in those earlier conversations.
I think, I think we will want the foundation to weigh in on some of these conversations, see, 'cause what if, what if what we do is we've written a policy and then we want, we have twenty-four groups that wanna do their gala? How do we feel about that, right? Because that has been something that always happens in theater, you can, you can ask to open a school in Ghana if you want to and have QR code up on the thing. Raise enough money to build a school in Ghana if you want to on stage, but it's like, we have not predominantly, we've never advertised ourselves as a venue for raising money. The, the way the foundation is not similar to any of these other organizations is they only give money to us. Sundance is looking to maximize their profits and figure out a way to give more money to the library. I would, modus, I'm assuming, or Philharmonic, right? Figuring out how to keep their business alive, how they keep their thing running. For the, for the library fund, all they're doing is raising money, so they, they raise more money, that's means more money for us, so there's an easy payout there. None of the other groups are gonna do that, none of them are gonna say like, yeah, we make more money, we'll give you more money, we can ask for share of profits.
They, twenty twenty seven, yeah, Sundance.
Twenty seven.
Seventeen.
Yeah.
I, I think, um, I think, I'd like to see the poli, I, I, I think we can always what if ourselves out of the, you know, I think, I think you, you put something in place, see how it plays. And you make adjustments, you know, like, I, you know, I don't know if, you know, yeah, I, I think, uh, uh.
Did, did you have a specific question on the downtown, like, are you looking for a nod to like engage more with downtown partnerships from the south side?
You know, that, that was more like around community engagement, so I am beginning to spend more time out, it's not their responsibility, a lot of the people, although with like some of the librarians and managers do it. We're having, we're starting a leadership program that will be engaging people in the community, talking to different groups. I know you had come up with like a shadow campaign, we're just going toward a, toward a business system. And I'm interested in what ideas you guys have in that area, 'cause I think it is an avenue, we've not, you know, the city said, don't do it. That was my mode of operating when I got to Boulder fourteen years ago, I was out talking to everybody, the city said, like, you gotta stop talking to people, you just come back and do your job. So now, we're about to go, I'm about, I am going back out and engaging with different groups, you wind up in all kinds of conversations, you wind up, you know, mostly reciting what policies you have. Uh, but you know, we changed this policy around these theaters that could change things dramatically.
So.
And I do think it benefits us to have a seat at the table with these groups, so I mean, at least personally, I'm supportive of library and that work. I think your initial question for you will be, how to make it not just you? And to your point, we're not hiring you to get it staffed, so how do you start to incorporate this into our rules?
Well, I'd like for you all to think about your roles too, what community groups you are, you belong to, is where, where you can begin to represent the library and matter. And even if that only means you're invited to come and sit there too, you know, or if there's things, like I, I go talk to Rotary.
Yeah, we went to Rotary, we went to, yeah, I, um, I think that was something we asked for you to do at the beginning. Um, and I think we continue to expand that role, and I think we even offered to pay memberships.
We are so clear, we're going downtown.
But I mean, even for you personally, to, to, as a member of different organizations, if you wanted to, you know, as your role as library director, uh, and in that capacity, if it was a membership fee to like, you know, be part of the Rotary or something, or, you know, or to be part of the Lions Club or whatever, you know. Um, I don't think we're gonna send you to the country club, but, um, Kitty can, can do it there.
You were just gonna say, you already do it.
Um, but like, uh, but that was where things go.
There you go.
So are you gonna, just, we got like five minutes, and are you gonna have a different policy for community engagement and partnerships?
No.
Are they separate or are they gonna be the same?
No, the community engagement is just like how far are you willing to go. Uh, you know, you guys, you, some of you just barely know me, some of you know me quite well, I am what I am, I'm not like, I'm not everybody's taste, I'm kind, but I, if, I'm asking, I'm out there speaking, I'm, I try my best to represent the library uh, as I can, right, and so like, the more I'm out there, it is a public profile job, right? Like, that's how I've always seen it, that's how I saw it when I got to Boulder. At some point, Boulder told me, like, you can't talk to people, and I, they shut me down, right? And that's partly, I think, me, partly questions that come up, and so we'll have to balance it as we go along. Now, the partnership is one that's different, we plan to bring to you in the fourth quarter, or if not the fourth quarter, in January, um, a new theater policy, an updated theater policy and a new partnership policy.
Yeah.
I expect that, you've given us some good stuff to go on, the big one was like being told always free, it's not prior goal, and now I'm not gonna get a bunch of pushback, we're gonna break forward a policy that allows for, uh, 'cause really what we're talking about, the UALC is like you're making money, we're allowing for people to make money. We're not allowing one group to make, if we allow one group to make money, we're, we're, we're bordering on violating some state laws. If it's an equal policy that allows for groups to make money, we're not, like, as long as, nobody's totally relying on us for making money, uh, we'll be fine. So we'll, we'll bring that back, we did not, the last time around, I think we talked about it, we were about the theater policy board, uh, and the recommendation was to make it all free for everybody at this point. That's great, the staff love clean, black and white, but it is complicated and it's resulted in a number of groups, uh, who would like to have the space saying they can't use it because they can't even recover the cost.
Do you, do you, you don't envision us approving individual partners, or do you?
I think we approve the policy, let staff make individual decisions.
No, you'll, you'll approve of a partnership policy.
Okay, so like, we'll do the policy and if, let's say, you know, some group, that, they can just, you know, the, the board, so there'll be some group that will analyze these different things. You know, I do, actually, one more thing is like, do you think that, um, you know, I know there is a revenue for the, for the partner, partner to get, but I think, you know, part of the crit- criteria should be evaluating how much of the programming they can give to the public for free, or, you know what I mean? What's the give back to the community, uh, so I think that should be part of the policy as well.
Yeah, and there's always the opportunity, like, if you, if you were to come back and say, oh, this partnership policy sounds good, it's affordable, it's not gonna fill up, it, it Sundance needs. There's, you have the option of saying like, you know what, January, the theater's closed because we turned over to Sundance, that is something that you can say. And we just let them have it, my staff can take their vacation and do planning and whatever else, like, and then, then Sundance can just have it, but it's not gonna be halfway, we're not gonna, we're not gonna staff it with, uh, technicians and they're in there making all the money, right, so maybe it has to be a balance here.
Uh, Sundance, Sundance sounds like Carnaval a little bit, you know, everybody's turned upside down.
It was crazy, it was so fun.
Yeah.
Big walk into ice cream and like Jeff Torres yelling at his kids about eating ice cream, and I was like, you're all human!
Chris, go ahead, I think you get the last word, but I don't mean to have the last word, but, you know, I mentioned this to David, you know, as we think about how we've been leaning into a partnership with our local independent bookstore and, you know, the, the goal with the gala and, you know, that provided the stage infrastructure that led to a much bigger, one book, what I see as a common thread is twofold, uh, you know, fostering a love of books and reading, you know, these are author talks. And then, uh, also like driving up attendance with high quality, pop, popular author talks.
So, uh, as I think about, uh, a film festival that's world famous coming to our town, I think about like all the books and, and, and screenplays that, um, you know, led to those amazing things. And I, and I see, I see a possible niche, uh, where our partnerships and our library kinda come together that kinda becomes a, a special and, you know, something the library's thought, rather than like, oh, this is the pavilion area for some, some part of the films that are shown, right? So, uh, that's just, I just want y'all to know, like, as I think about like how, how could the foundation add value in that arena? I like the idea of author talks and driving up attendance and that's kinda just where I'm, what does that mean for your policy? I don't know, uh, but, but that's, you know, that could be a one thing leads to another, you know, as, as we continue to partner with Boulder Bookstore and.
Cause there's so many books that so many people who will be coming have written, that you could somehow feature here, I don't know.
Most of the movies are based on books, yeah.
Books too, yeah.
So it just reminds me that I connected with the Estes Park Valley Library Director, um, Claudine recently and for these similar reasons, because from my Seth Brooks side, the Colorado Educational Cultural Facilities Finance Authority side, I want to see that Estes Park has, the community has ownership in this film center and the connection there. But I had suggested to her that maybe she could connect with David and there could be this coordinated, you know, sort of series that relates to films, media, and in this case horror films, which is Blumhouse is going to be one of the principles at the film center as well, and it's a horror genre, is a big deal too. So, um, you know, I, I just see some library synergies that can happen in, along the way here in this corridor between Estes Park and Boulder, so, um, it's right in line with that. So, I mean, maybe it is, you know, some figures thinking about how we are connecting with the, with the districts as well.
Um, before we leave partnerships, I wanna put one more thing on. So, several months ago, when we were debating the around the Gun Barrel Library and we got into the issue of issue of land acknowledgements and other things. And I had suggested at the time, maybe we explore an idea around that sister city relationship with Wind River, like the city of Longmont has. I, I see that as something as a partnership potential. After we had had that conversation, First Nation, uh, sponsored a film and the Canyon Theater and their staff there, that they would be interested in being in conversation with us as to whether or not there's a way to have a relationship with two schools in Wind River and their librarians. So, it's something I think it's worth, uh, looking into and it helps us be in a place where we're, again, we're in that equity land, we're in these other things that we represent value wise. And it would be a unique relationship, not unlike what Longmont did, that doesn't exist elsewhere.
Sylvia also has a contact at Wind River.
I think Sylvia has mentioned that she was gonna reach out.
Yeah, I actually know one of the tribal leaders at Wind River, um, so he might be, you know, I don't know that he would be the person that would be the main contact, but he might, he would also probably have some good information about who to hook up with to kinda start that conversation.
Would you wanna talk to Wolfstar at First Nation or people she had in mind?
I'm sorry?
Do you wanna talk to Wolfstar, the staffer at First Nation who has some ideas and people up there?
Are they actually from Wind River? Cause the person I'm, I'm talking to is actually from, yeah.
You're up there.
Yeah, so yeah, no, that'd be great if you wanna share that, that information with me, um, we can maybe kinda bring them all together.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, great, and while I'm on, um, so I am so sorry, but I am gonna have to leave now for the day, um, I'm actually in Cortez. Um, my uncle passed away and, uh, we had kind of a bifurcated, uh, burial on Friday. And then today we're doing like a celebration of life in about an hour, so I'm gonna quickly change my clothes and jump in a car and drive down to Shiprock, New Mexico, uh, to be with my family. So I, I'm glad I was able to at least get in the first three hours of the day, but, um, um, I'll talk to you all later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um, I think we have a break, I don't know if lunch is here, but.
It's not yet.
But.
There's, there's more baking.
Stretch your legs while we wait.
But we'll stretch our legs, go to the bathroom and, and if you want more coffee or fancy coffee.
The library's open now, you can go.
And I, again, I hope this will be more you guys talking than me, but, um, some big stuff to talk about, right? So we're about to embark on our next strategic plan, and in doing so, we wanna celebrate the fact that the last plan, uh, has neared completion and we've, we've basically, um, begun, if not fulfilled, all the practices. So it's in your document, it's stored in progressive programs, pre additional spaces, updated booth, uh, collection of books, extending out of all the libraries, opening a lot of the Gun Barrel, expanding those mega space programs. And improving maintenance of Bravo, uh, that it got done, I think one of the bigger parts of the, um, last year, ten year plan was the part that was very unlike anything else that the other plan had done up till that point, and the city was like, how are we gonna pay for it? And so we did a deep dive into how to pay for it, laid out a number of different options, and then, you all know where I started, right? We passed an election after seventeen meetings with city council and discussing five or so different options for funding library, and then the citizens took over. It became a valid item, we became a district, and that's what enabled us really to go through and execute all the rest of the parts of the plan. Um, I wanna talk about some of the major issues that I think we're gonna be seeing in the plan, but I'm, I'm very interested in giving you your feedback on how we go about the plan, so. I believe we included the timeline, we, we started out to put a bunch of stuff in your plan about how we do the master plan process for the city. I, it, it has crossed my mind that like the elaborate nature of the process that the city does is eighty percent PR. And that part of the reason why we passed the election, part of the reason why we were able to get all these things done was actually that part of the plan, but, um, when we did our plan in twenty eighteen, I think we had about four thousand individuals who participated in that process, uh, through focus groups, surveys, a lot of different things we did. Jennifer and I made waffles, uh, for two days in the cafe, like, I made waffles just for, put fruit on there, just for people to sit down and talk to us. We offered people free haircuts, we did a lot of stuff for people to, um, come in, uh, to, to engage with us, and a lot of energy was put into it. It also extends the timeline for what we do the master, do on the master plan process, 'cause in the end, while we will probably have consultants come in and help us out with some of that stuff. Um, Jennifer will be the primary project manager for the master plan, Jennifer's an outstanding writer for writing clear succinct prose. Uh, we have two people recently moved to Harwood, they will be the principal, um, people on the engagement process, but I need to know what you guys want. Do you, do you want us to do, you want us to do it all up and get four thousand people? I can tell you that after about two hundred, we're not learning anything new, but it, but there is a value in, in four thousand, I get it. Um, but I'd like to know what it is you're hoping for from this next strategic plan? In that regard, it's primarily revenue. Anybody have any thoughts?
I would, my recommendation would be to focus on getting representative sample of everything, a huge sample. Um, I think it's gonna be important to make sure that whatever sample, you know, whoever we're surveying does in fact represent the district as a whole. But yeah, I mean, I guess in my head, I would rather have a five hundred person representative sample than a four thousand person sample of people who are available to show up at six p.m. at night to share their comments or cover the structure.
I think, if I go back to what is it we want from this strategic plan? Because like, we're probably not gonna get more, we, we, we're not gonna like be looking for more, more funding, but, right? I mean, maybe, that could be, I don't know, but like, um, I think we're also setting up hopefully more sustainable systems to provide input as we go around programming and services, you know, with feedback and with that. So what, I mean, we have also a plan with like Meadows and potentially Reynolds and Carnegie that, you know, I think the board has said is a priority, so you know, that might be a place where we're looking for, this might be a place for like, starting to get the community used to the idea of one South Boulder location. Um, uh, uh, these are just all kind of thought, thoughts that I'm thinking, wha- what do you want out of the strategic plan or what do we want, I guess, out of the strategic?
So are you thinking, it doesn't have to be as big and broad, or?
I don't think it needs to be, I mean, do you, I mean, do you think it needs, I, I don't think it needs to be, I personally don't think it needs to be as big and broad, um.
What's the time scale you want it to cover? The process is always a ten year plan.
Five years?
Well, we're, we're, we're looking at a five year plan, I mean, maybe six, maybe seven to get it done, but we're, but I mean, we're looking at a shorter period, right, it's a five year plan. I think the main thing we'll probably be drilling down on is, well, you know, some of the things that didn't show up in the la- last master plan that were discussed, right? So, um, Meadows and Reynolds, South Boulder is a big issue, um, obviously things that are happening downtown, it's gonna be a big component of it, I don't know how much we can control entirely that conversation, but managing PR around that. And then, one of the other things, like, I think we go back again and like, we have that conversation again, libraries are changing, whether the core service is what, what's core in the library. Um, I think that's an important conversation to have with the community. And then secondarily, what came up in twenty seventeen, eighteen too, is, you know, target audiences, older, getting older, we knew then that, um, you know, we still don't have seniors identified as a target audience, I don't know if they even wanna be. Uh, we, you know, our target audience is still currently operating with primarily young people, families with children. families with children, and the kind of the people who, for talking about a term we we call power users, like it's people that, and then, you know, through the outreach program, and now also some of the partnerships under certain groups. Seniors are rapidly, the seniors now, older adults outnumber in Boulder, outnumber every other demographic group. Even families with kids, they're, which is about 18%. Seniors now represent about 20%.
Do you see, random question, but do you see a world in five years in the city leaves down here? Do you see there could be a possibility where there is no library down here either?
I can imagine any possibilities.
And I think the other variable is the post-COVID environment. Because I think that changed a lot of things. It was never in our 10 year vision that the world could shut down.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's, those are like the variables of like, so do you think it's a very shorter, I mean, a simpler five year plan?
I, I, I mean, it's, we, so I'm a master here for a reason, right? So there, there are a lot of things in this that could be a PR nightmare, right? So you don't close down now for no good reason. You close it down because, you know, you, we may want to save money, but that's not the reason why we do it. We do it in a manner which we create a library system that's something a lot better that they want to go somewhere else, right?
Yeah, you're not gonna sell that.
So Nobo, yeah, Nobo, it's something, you know, something better. And so like this is the map that I've had in my office for years and I'm always thinking and drawing on it. And so a lot of the big, big question we had was, what's, what's up with Martin Akers? Where does Martin Akers go for library services? Because it's a sizable chunk of Boulder, this old area. And we had no real good data until recently. And this last week, we now, one of our staffers is a trained GIS programmer. And so we ran all the data and we just ran like where, for the last three months, where did people pick up, requesting pickup holds? Where did they live? Where did they pick up a hold? So Martin Akers is entirely around Reynolds. So this is the Reynolds Library. Everybody here goes there, which changes the equation really for Meadows. Obviously, you know, if we were to take, the Meadows Library is here in the baseline mall. The mall is suffering all along baseline. The city's where it is, like that, whatever, base mark is also going to have a lot of vacancies. So one of the things we thought, I had thought of, was like, what about, and it's also, if you're looking to build a library, land, right? Land or buildings and, you know, land use is Boulder's favorite blood sport, right? There are not a lot of places that just come up. And like a place comes up, there's three other people. If it's really a right place, three other people are bidding on it. One of them wants to change it to residential, one of them wants to make it ten to fifteen, or corporate headquarters. No building that's perfect ever shows up. And so balancing that and looking really along this corridor is what we were initially thinking around.
What road is that, that baseline?
The baseline corridor, yeah, baseline corridor. And so, and there is a possibility, there's a large development here around Williams Village that's gonna be slated for, well, if we did that, right? So if we did a library there, then that begins to serve in a manner kind of like the regional, although it also kind of begins to cut into Chautauqua. Because you can see some people in Chautauqua already use these libraries.
That Chris's house there.
Very few, but.
Yeah, but I, you know, about that, you know, Maine, that's centrally located, we can, we can switch. Like we're snobby, we go to, we go to Maine because it's beautiful or we go to Reynolds because it's not crowded. I mean, it's parking easy to just go get your.
But the other thing about this is, right, like, so, you know, South Boulder is roughly, all of South Boulder is roughly locked, right? There is no future development out here. There's no future development here. It's about, we cut the area along this line. And this is the, I believe, the federal, the University Federal Labs, federal labs here. So it's about 20,000 people, which is right, roughly right for a service area. Slightly larger than Nobo service area.
There's no more doubt.
But no more works, right? And so we would be locating it closer to this one. But then this area is the area that is slated for growth in the comp plan. So Fifty Fifth and Arapo is one of the areas potentially slated for growth. The, and it is talked about and seems like a far cry. But this area here, two of the largest manufacturing home communities still, we don't serve Meadows is here, Nobo's there, Gunbarrow's there. Fifty Fifth and Arapo is here. In the last comprehensive plan, they're, they're starting to weed away what is zoned as commercial, what can be potentially zoned as residential. It turns out all the landowners there and developers are all commercial land developers and they flip the switch and start building houses if you've been in business for 20 years. But that, this is area of potential growth. And so on the smaller map, what does, does it make sense? I think it's, I think we have options, right? Reynolds may stay where it is. If all things go according to the plan, then the city will eventually deback those buildings that the city owns that we now lease. We would own that facility. We rent here now anyways, a cheap lease that expires 29. And consider a much broader sphere between corporate area, also Fifty Fifth and Arapo. And we look more at locating a library for this area where there is growth planned. Valmont is here, the airport is here, that a larger library might serve that area. So that's one part of the puzzle, I think. The regional thing is, does make sense, it's something I'm thinking about quite a lot. We have to also think about where Carnegie would go. I mean, it could go either one. This building is 60 years old now, it's a 50 year building, it's not gonna last forever. We will have to, if we decide to leave the place, we are gonna have to develop that building, probably pop the top, probably build it all over again, make it useful and make it work. But then this one could be a new building that goes into a place otherwise. Now, talk about that, the math, you have a new table, the civic area is a whole different calculation because the civic area, that could fall, you're sorry.
Because is there a world where the city says you can leave downtown? Like, could that happen?
For the library?
Yeah, no.
Yes, I don't think they would. I mean, within the buildings, they could probably sold me up in.
20 years, 18 years.
As soon as they get big, probably 18 years, but I don't.
I don't think so, I just wondered.
They're in trouble. The city could, I think, if you ask the city staff, they're really offload every building they can. You know, like, now the city council have a different idea, but.
Yeah.
It's an opportunity for us in the next three years. I mean, and of course, the strategic plan obviously is like, how can we leverage things that are in play downtown in terms, and not just downtown, but how do we, how do we leverage ownership of.
So Carnegie, let's go back a little bit.
Nobo and, and frankly, what I thought would never be possible, that building. And if we own that building, it's a very different equation. They say we're willing to devalue that building. Then we're sitting on land that's probably in the neighborhood of $18 to $20 million. The building itself is probably for a church, for instance, is 20 million. But it changes our equation in terms of being able to negotiate a certain type of participation, get a loan, that, that totally changes the equation. Reynolds, not so much, Carnegie, less so. It's nice for real estate, but it's not like we're gonna ever sell any of them. It's what can we, what can we use to leverage value in terms of getting this.
And is more willing to do that because they're leaving?
I think they've never indicated that they would be willing to give us this building.
But this is probably the last building they would be on.
But they have to reckon with the fact that we're gonna be the last people standing.
Okay.
We're in a fight way to negotiate, yeah.
So I want to go back to the strategic plan discussion and like what you're looking for, is this.
I'm not done yet, I'm. Because downtown is the bigger part.
You know, I don't see it increasing the number of branches even with new development, do you? In the next five years?
In the next five years, no.
Even the next 10 years, no?
I don't know what happens with Fifty Fifth and Arapo. I don't know what happens to the junction. Train's not coming, you know. The two other areas that are mainly, you know, so it's really Fifty Fifth and Arapo. It's this area, and then the city's plan already calls for development coming all along Arapo, right? Like this is all potentially residential and retail development. So this area is the next place for realistic growth. The other that they always talk about is Area 3. Area 3 is this area here. If it does happen, and it's major infrastructure cost, like you're talking about.
Somebody has to remember water, electricity, 36.
Man, this is, this is 36 on the way to.
Lions.
The Nobo Library is here. Area 3, everybody thinks it's either Prairie Dog Village or open space. It is slated for future development. It has always been slated for future development. It's about 6,000, 3,000 to 6,000 single family dwelling units. The other one, the thing. I will definitely be retired by the time we do it. It's part of the garden. Yeah, the no, the thing is, is that somebody has to pay for water or power. And it's just, the city's not.
Jenny needs to be in next.
Yeah, I'm gonna be in next.
No, Area 3 is already purpose.
I didn't think it was.
Yeah, it is.
I thought there was some part, like, there's a.
No, I think they're part of it to be in next.
Yeah.
There's a lot of county.
Like right against J Road, there's property that.
Oh, no, you're right. This is, this is one of the signs to see like they would need to add some, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah.
So there's that, right? So the potential for growth really is, and that may leave us options. Like if we moved Meadows here, we're doing a service to future brother, we will leave a branch eventually. Even if we think Meadows, even if we think this library is gonna serve this broader community here, then what happens when this develops? We won't have anything there. So I think, I'm just saying that there's, there's some fluidity to this. Like we don't have to make our decision, you know, with all of these things like Carnegie, with Meadows, we could probably negotiate another lease with Meadows, we could probably, we have a 20 year lease for Carnegie. I don't know that we want to do any of that stuff. But I think making a decision, putting Meadows where it is right now, it's a mile. And, you know, a mile and a quarter is if you drive a car. And the reality is, this is a hard dividing line enough. People are not crossing it.
You see it, yeah. I, my, my two things is, I think, A, you're gonna have to negotiate a new lease with Meadows. I don't think they have enough time.
Yeah.
Yeah, because looking, just using gun barrels and experience, it's taken us almost a year and a half. And that, you know, I mean, granted, we didn't get started on Meadows because we were doing Nobo, but like, it's still gonna take over, I think, a year if we get any new space and want to renovate it. And then, by the way, we'll need $2 million or something.
You want to start currently, so?
So.
Is it generous lease?
It's free.
Yeah.
It's not free with the common area maintenance charges, which I don't know, Jennifer would know, it's $50,000 to $100,000 a year we pay in gun barrel maintenance charge. So we're paying money to be there.
I mean, I mean, I think, I think.
I mean, that's no matter what.
I mean, I, yeah, I'm assuming.
No matter where we were.
I'd ask for at least a 10 year extension.
I would.
You know?
You would not?
I mean, that's terminable? Or do you want to push yourself to get new space?
I mean, I don't think they want to be there in 2013 or 2029? Or 2039, yeah.
2039, that's what I mean.
That would be a 10 year extension.
No, but I mean, you could terminate it, the lease, and leave.
Yeah.
Or you could pay it out.
I mean, I still.
You could leave the space if you're only just paying.
David's been doing some of this, but we do still have two and a half years there. Like, I think there's a decent chance we could find a space in the next year that we would.
Yeah, you'd have to find a space in the next year.
Yeah.
And I think part of that goes back to our strategy. If we were, so this is part of the thing that's gonna, we threw out the regional idea, it's been on our mind as well, because we talked about where, how, where do we put, where do we put the archive? Where do we put Carnegie? And the summation of the last board meeting was like, why not put Carnegie with Meadows? Give it a place in the suburbs, get good parking, we can have adequate access to expand. There's, you know, in Plan B, in my mind, was probably Carnegie, give them into this building. And the city moved out in 2027, might be able to do here. It's not a great, it's not a great plan because we're, that's right, about high hazard, flood zone. But it was a plan, and because we don't need, we're not relying on Carnegie for visitors. It does have regular traffic, but like downtown has become the place where it's like, you know, a lot of people still come, but the branches are doing, are growing in more rapid rate than the others, and that, that kind of speaks to what people do in their neighborhoods. We talked a little bit about 15 minute neighborhood. Like the 15 minute neighborhood, I told the city, like we did, we're doing everything we can for a 15 minute neighborhood. This is a 15 minute neighborhood, this is 15 minute neighborhood. Where they're moving, Alpine Malsum is everything, the hospital leaving is everything not to do with 15 minute neighborhood. The hospital moved all of its services east. The school district moved all their central services east. Everybody else, I feel like we're doing 15 minute neighborhood, nobody else. That's mostly something you have healthcare, educational, the school district does a good job. Yeah, but then grocery shopping, all those things. It's been a guiding principle of kind of the, the city's land use plan for 50 years. Like how to build 15 minute neighborhoods. This is the first time around where they've been actually having a conversation about what are the costs of building a 15 minute neighborhoods? And the costs are very high, right? The costs are, you wind up with two libraries that are a mile apart, serving limited areas. And if one of these buildings concerns, either one of these buildings concerns that.
So you, you asked about outreach and stuff, and I guess what I'm saying here is if, you know, since a lot of the concentration of our decisions are gonna be in the south, we need, I think, heavy outreach and discussion with those neighborhoods down there.
So I want to go back to the beginning of this, when we were discussing 4,000 people last time. Let's do more of the pipeline process this time.
Yeah.
That instead of engaging for input on the front end, just did the survey, a couple of things. We have lots of things we can kind of make. And over the course of this planning, beginning phase of this planning process, we come up with two, three, four scenarios. What growth is, where the library might go, what we might shut, what we might not shut, et cetera. And then after we have the, the staff and you are competent in the potential of all two, three, four in the next five years, we're engaged and we choose which ones to present to the public for reaction. So it's not, it's not open season on, get back in. Because the other thing that's gonna come through this, particularly if the economy continues to be an issue, there's still being the John Kears and others come at us that we need to learn from. And so to me, the first part of this is either four scenarios or whatever, the current knowledge. And our commitment in the five year window not to raise the revenue. So we take away that kind of criticism and say, you know, we've recognized we have a limited amount, we have more money than we have limited money. And we figured out strategically how we grow the library in this window. Or we have options on how to, now we want the public to.
Yeah, I like that idea, Tom. Is there anybody else? Sorry, because I only threw just a little bit more subtlety into this, right? So we did the thing a few months ago for our annual report households that library card there. And so I said at the time, like, this, this number is extraordinarily high for any library in the state of Colorado. And I think it's also low because we excluded university housing, we excluded most of the manufacturing home community, we excluded a lot of the senior residential facilities. And I think at that point, we were at 63%. So this is the district, it cuts off part of the edges on both sides. Population of the district is about 133,000, right at 100,000 people have a library card, active library card. So basically 70% of everybody living here has a library card within the district. That is crazy, awesome, unbelievable numbers. And so then, the question I asked next was, can we start parsing out? And I'm trying to set up a potential PR nightmare for you, so. We started, we started to say, like, we, we know that gun barrel saturation rate is one of the lower ones in terms of households, but you know, maybe I still don't have a count because it's hard to know what is service area. There's Iowa, even none of the district is included in the service area. You can see the density of commercial businesses in nine months, pretty high. But we started doing the neighborhoods in anticipation of this plan. So Reynolds, which is this neighborhood, and then Meadows, which is this neighborhood, is 83% of all the people living in Reynolds have a library card.
Look at how many readers there are, there's a ton.
83% of everybody in that place has a library card.
So.
If you go right across this turnpike, Meadows is 65%. 82% and 65%. So that is, I mean, that's a question, right? Like, do you, do you really think, do you really think you're gonna close this library?
There's no way in hell. When you look at all those red dots.
And so, and it's like, and so, and and 65 speaks to a hidden library, which we heard a lot about in the 2018 master plan. Our library sucks, our library is too small, our library is, you know, hidden in the back of the mall. But that, that changes the the equation in my mind. Like, when I saw Martin Akers, everybody in Martin Akers is going to Reynolds. They identify with the Reynolds. They go, they shop at Whole Foods or King Supers, right? The people here shop at Safeway or Sprouts or whatever. But, um, but it's very, um, it 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 increases the the stakes. When we talk about, let's just move the library here and assume all these people will go to it. No, 83% of every single person who lives there has a library card.
That's so high.
They are, that's absurd.
I don't, I mean.
I mean, it looks like every house has reserved a book in the last three houses. So like.
Well.
I mean, I think this map makes it pretty clear, we're not gonna necessarily find one library that works for both those communities. I think the better line of reasoning here is what Tom's brought up in the past, and that's, we should be looking at consolidating Carnegie with something further east.
That's South Boulder, that's the academic industrial complex in Boulder. Every street around Reynolds is named after an Ivy League school. You got Bear Creek, you got Fairview, I mean, it's a break.
So it's like two-thirds of the city.
Got Nist.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the other part of the equation for the strategy is this building. So downtown in general is gonna go through some pretty massive changes in the next three years. Um, I did confirm with the city, so I had spoken with a developer a month or so ago who has backing, and they said that they were gonna make an offer to buy this building from the city. And then I I met with them for breakfast, and I'm like, mm, whatever, like, you'll never work. The Landmark Board will come in and slap you down. And they were like, no, we thought of that, we will keep all the parts that the Landmark Board fires up as, which is basically the the facade, the gardens, the gallery, the connection to the bridge. Um, but yeah, we tear the rest of it off. And so, um, and then I got a word from them that, yeah, we know the city, and they're super excited about the idea. So I met with the city last week after our last conversation. And yes, it is absolutely true, there is a group that has not put an offer forward, but is assembling an offer. I know, I researched the people who I met with, um, a month ago, they do got a lot of money. Um, and so it's a real conversation that this building, uh, could also be in play. I think it's also a part of our strategic discussion, because like, I look at this building, we got a theater here, we have the maker space that we retrofitted, and we have offices for about 20 staff members. Uh, I don't know if we asked the community if one out of 10 of them would say that the theater is a core service, I don't really know. The reality is, it's a 1961 building with old boilers, and it is difficult to maintain. The temperature in here is cold today because we cannot do a better job of controlling the temperature. Uh, it is, you know, you turn it up so that they're not burning up on the second floor and you wind up freezing on the first floor. This building is like a lot of our buildings, like with the current mouse building, like the Carnegie building is in some ways, you know, we have to acknowledge the fact that they are in some ways out of trust, right? Like, they are, they are at least a liability. And so I don't know, it will be a part of our strategy, our strategic discussion. My my impulse is, we don't get in the way. I'm I'm, I'm gonna, I told the city manager as much, like, let's see what they got, let's see what they come up with. But if it, if there's a real proposal on the table, that is means, that is serious means of leverage. Because we have a 20-year lease on this building, we can say, no fucking way, we're not doing anything, we're all night thing. Or we could also say, like, tell you what, provide for me, whatever, city owns a lot of land, they don't have anything on a baseline. Um, we may be able to leverage that, we may be able to leverage that into a conversation about, we have Reynolds, we have Carnegie, we have N O O, we own that. And then how does that then transpire? But how does that transpire in the terms of our negotiations? Because this building, and the parking lot is lesser than that, but this building could become, um, uh, something, right? It could be something that is not controlled by us, it's not controlled by the city, it could be a viable thing. But essentially, they're not asking us for subsidy, they're not saying like, yeah, and can you continue to run the theater? That's not the condition, the condition is like, we want to buy the building and build something else.
So they're gonna tear it all down?
My assumption is they would tear everything off from the gallery back, including the theater.
Yeah.
And and maximize the use of space that they can. Um, they the the, they they pitched to me, um, they pitched to me a performing space, but I think they're, I mean, they may be partly sincere about performing space. My sense is that the St. Julian's right across the street, the Hotel Hill is their competition. They're looking at ways to leverage more, not housing, not more hotels.
Conference center.
Conference center. And so like, can this become, and from from my point, and I need you to appreciate this, like, when I know the city's gone in 2027, I want neighbors. I want neighbors, I want people other than me to have stake in this area. And so that's part of the reason why I'm just like, I would not get in the way. The same way that I feel about million-dollar condos, whether the city needs them or not, I don't really care. I need a HOA over there that is this powerful and can.
What about an artist condo?
An artist condo, and I.
Yeah, that's not a $3 million condo.
Yeah, it could be, it could be a lot of things, but it's got, well, it's gotta be able to make money.
Okay, wait, but within the discussion of the strategic plan, I mean, that's hard to plan for, I guess, but, um, what if, I'm just trying to focus this back in like giving you direction on the strategic plan.
Yeah.
Um.
Can I just ask, what is your timing, what did you get as a sense of timing related to this potential interest offer?
I think we'll know probably more in the next six months to 12 months.
Well, there's probably, there is a risk here that the person who buys it's happy to sit on it for the next 15 years, in which case we lose our leverage and kind of get screwed, right? Like, we lose the square footage and have nothing to negotiate.
I think they want to leverage competition with the St. Julian's also, they're using Sunday as as a, as a point.
Okay, so we're hinging on them being in a hurry.
They're not St. Julian's, they're a different city.
No.
Yeah.
It's not St. Julian's.
What happened with the civic center space over there? Is that?
St. Julian's.
Is that getting built now?
Yeah, they're gonna develop it, the St. Julian's.
It's this.
Well, they were.
When?
Instead of it.
The pad, yeah, it's gonna be, um, extended state. Uh, there is still a, there's still a, uh, rentable, I think it's lower than market rate for nonprofits, uh, space. It's like 8,000 square feet on the ground or on the top floor.
Um, so I like, you know, you know, I think that's where I was going with your thing is like, instead of.
We can just have options.
We 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 present the options and ask for sort of feedback, kind of how this is gonna set up, Jim? Because, you know, I think we don't need that huge engagement. The, because, you know, from my perspective, the next five years, we're pretty much are operating. You know, there's gonna be programs we begin, programs we end. But then the, what we need really inputting on, um, is sort of, um, well, like.
Yeah, does, does anybody have a counter view to that on the board? Because it's, I don't, I do. So go ahead.
I think, go ahead.
Does anybody else have a counter view to that?
Well, I think it's, I mean, I think in those next six to 12 months, I think that's gonna turn and trigger some other thinking about.
Yeah, but that's happening, it will.
Plan. And so, I mean, I, I mean, that's just my add-on to what you're saying. Like, I don't think it's necessarily a status quo-ish, it's.
I definitely don't think it is. I mean, if we can, if we can leverage, if we, so one proposal that I'll put in front of you is if we can leverage the negotiations around this building and and maybe in another context, but until these brings to the table, without ownership of the other buildings, it allows us to get some form of certificates of. We we will be able to better negotiate, better percentage on our certificates of participation, we'll have collateral to put up against the law. Um, the fact is, is that we need a bigger maker space. Not.
Yeah, the maker space.
This one was something that I, me and Adam Watts did this, like, me and one guy who used to work here, we built that thing. It was a used place, we were in there throwing away, I mean, it wasn't done on purpose. It was done as an act of pop to make more space available to the public. We need a design, we cut back on what was gonna be a N O O, and right now it is like a driving force in all of our libraries. The theater is something we have to call the question. I've got 20-some people who are here in offices, right? We have to find space for them as well, the biggest one being resource services. All of our books come into this building, for all the districts. Come into this building, that's where they are, you know, sorted and shifted, boxed and sent on their merry way to get out to the public. We have to find a place for those as well. And so what you're taking from its Carnegie needs from the report that they submitted to us, they currently occupy four thousand square feet. Carolyn's report indicated was that they needed at minimum eight, ideally 12 for the next 20 to 30 years, and the question can expand.
Eight to 12.
Thousand square feet. So they need 12,000 square feet, Meadows probably could do with 10 to 12. There's expansion, I mean, if Area 3 would happen, and that's not gonna happen in my lifetime, uh, N O O would be too small. Uh, if if Arapulon 55th begins to happen, then there's growth in the Meadows area, and that 7,000, 6,800 square foot library is already too small, and they could probably use 10, 12,000 square feet. So now we're up to 24, resource services is another couple thousand. If we put a theater in there, that's another thousand square feet. If we add a maker space, which is an adequate maker space, that's actually can handle bigger than 15 people capacity, you're talking 3,000 or 4,000 square feet. We're paying nearly $100,000 to lease a building for the facility staff at, that's another 2,000 to 3,000 square feet. We're talking about a regional service, but it's not concomitant Reynolds and Meadows.
Yeah, I know, I.
It's it's trying, how do we get all these services that we might lose in this place under a single roof? And, you know, what I just added up to is like a 35,000 to 40,000 square foot building, which there are not a lot of those available. There are some. Maybe we get a 60,000 square foot building, do we buy that? And within anticipation of future growth, do we build? Like, if we find land, do we build a library? Because you're talking, you're not talking 5 billion, not 10 million, you're talking 30 million bucks, right? You're talking a major retrofit of a building that may be outdated, like, and so. But the cost that you're faced with if you don't do it, right? Like, this building needs a new HVAC at some point, you're gonna, you'll say yes when it's December and the HVAC doesn't work. Uh, and you're gonna spend $300,000 to fix the HVAC. Well, same thing at Reynolds, yeah.
Is this your counter view? What was the counter view that you were gonna do?
You you're saying sit tight. I don't believe we can sit tight.
Oh, no, 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 that wasn't what I was saying.
You said sit tight about Meadows.
I'm still saying for Meadows, I think we gotta.
You said sit tight about Meadows.
Oh, about Meadows.
Yeah.
I don't think we want to.
No, 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 I.
Yeah, I I I'm with you on this idea of that, and I, and I really do think the 55th Street area is where we're trying to figure this out. Just like the, you know, the sheriffs moved out there, I mean, they.
Isn't the county out there too? There's a county.
Or the county out there, there's stuff out there, I don't know what's, what, what's empty out there, right?
And if we have money through the certificates of participation, like, I hate to say it, but like, the best time to build is during a recession. Right? You cut your cost by about 25%.
Well, if we're.
And we're, we can, we can, we can brace for a recession and not be ready to do anything, and then when the recession happens, you're gonna keep the wall. Or we can say like, hey, the commercial market is as flat as it's ever been, property is as cheap as it's ever been or going to be, and we strike while the air is hot. And but but that requires that we negotiate on all these things. We need to own those buildings. We need to say yes if this building is called out on, even if we get that, not a dime.
Right.
We have to figure out what we're gonna get if this building can stick.
And I'm so glad that we're having dinner here.
It'll be freezing in here.
Make it cold.
In this building.
Cold.
No.
Well, I originally did like the idea, it's like now I totally embrace an idea.
So, yeah, I, um, so, I mean, if you found a space around, you know, I think, I think that would be a priority. I I think, um, maybe for our, maybe we do say, hey, uh, City of Boulder, when you're here next month, we're gonna come to you in next year and ask for you to 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 transfer these buildings. It'd be, if we, if we did that, we need to show them how much we've invested, I think we need to pull numbers on.
Well, we, I do think we need to start that conversation sooner, we've been beating around that question a lot.
Well, we we have an option in 27, I think, to do it. So I think if we say this year, because it's gonna be a new council, potentially the same people, you know?
Yeah, depending how this election goes, it's gonna change the politics.
But but we probably ought to get with the other candidates too, um, but.
I I do think, David, one thing I want to think about on the maker spaces, it would be interesting to see a plot like this of maker space users, I don't know if we have that data, but I don't know that we would be able to move the maker space that far south. I I would guess a lot of the primary user base to maker spaces in Central Boulder or the university. So I'm just gonna think about that, but generally speaking, I do think a lot of these services probably move east.
But you don't think that they would know if it was a much nicer, much bigger space that was coming this year?
I think if it's, if you're a student with a bicycle, you're not gonna bike 55th to go to maker space.
I guess that's the question that's.
Yeah, well, this is, that's part of the doubt I'm curious.
You can add that, um, because you have to register, but I don't think it, it just asks for your email.
But there's other ways to solve that, right? Potentially, some of that building could turn to maker spaces.
I feel like 15-minute to be aside or whatever, if you're good, but, um, that aside, I think people who live in Colorado, driving 10 minutes is like not a big deal.
Yeah.
I think, but my question is, most maker spaces usually just made out of a car.
Yeah, yeah, that's enough on the journey, like.
People even come from shot, from outside the district, I mean, it's.
But the maker space.
Or it's almost true. It's on the bus route or.
The 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 place that.
Yeah.
Nothing on it.
Yeah. It's cool back there, but the space sucks for, it's just, you're on top of each other when you're trying to like build stuff.
Yeah, no, we we need a bigger space, so.
I mean, PTSD, you know?
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, Reynolds, my, so I, I mean, I, I say this in the leverage in mind, is like, if we're not giving up on Reynolds, that, guess what that means, like, where are we doing it? Right? If we're not giving up, where are we doing it? And that is a long, probably a 10 to 15 million dollar question, and it probably has to happen in the next 10 to 15 years. It's obviously not in this plan. But if we say we're not moving it in the course of this plan, and we're building something that's great, three miles away or four miles away, then basically we are committing to re-redeveloping Reynolds at some point.
Yeah, well, there's another, it may, it's not a bargaining chip, but there. Because that building is so old and so difficult to win, and it's gonna be expensive to make it any better, maybe it's not in our interest to have it and move across the street by the bank building on the corner of, you know, for rent for four years, turn that into the Reynolds, right?
Big buildings make nice libraries.
Wow, we're about to find out.
It's a lot of investment.
I don't know, it's beautiful, Gun barrel looks brilliant.
Yeah, let's let's check again in six months.
No, it's.
Hopefully.
We saw it, yeah, it's good.
Yeah, um, there's a bank, you're talking over on.
Like at the corner there at, uh, St. Paul's.
That gas station lot on the corner is also the future of.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and so I'm just saying, like, you know, you look at the data, it's like, yeah, we need to be in that, we need to be in South Boulder. Do we need to be in the Reynolds building in South Boulder? Are there other options when we think about what the maintenance and capital improvements are gonna be, make Reynolds something that lasts for another 25 years or whatever?
All of this does get back to why we need to free up capital and budget then, because everything we're working about is to have more free cash flow.
I mean, we're probably into this discussion, but, um, is we, is have you got the things you need for this strategic plan?
For initial draft, I I think what I heard from you is that, um, you'd like to see some proposals before we actually plan. The community engagement, and typically when we're with the city, what we do is we, we start with a community assessment, we do something like that, then we do a community engagement. So kind of what you're talking about is the assessment, it's basically a community assessment.
But.
And then we can decide how we want to go to the community at that point.
But it seems like we have a couple of things, like, if 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 the idea is like, we're probably not gonna get rid of Reynolds, maybe part of the strategic plan is, what does the new Reynolds look like? Do you know what I'm saying?
That may be premature, that makes me feel like the city planning Alpine Molsom 14 years ago.
Yeah, 15.
Because I think we're probably 10, 15 years out, unless the money changes. I mean, if the money changes suddenly, we had property values went up 12% in 2028, then we'd be talking about two years.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's the part we don't know, and it could happen, but it's also.
It's, I think, the, I think we have, I think interest rates, the the federal interest rate will drive property values. Um, if they start dropping, I think property values will go up again. Um, I think it just depends, but we can't drop too low because we need to borrow money. But, um, but like, uh, um, yeah, it's hard, I I think there's a ton of like shovel-ready like housing in Boulder that they're not building. I I can think, there's probably 500 units in Gun Barrel that are just, they're shovel-ready, but nobody's building them, I think, because of interest rates. So like, um, yeah, I, okay, well, so you know some proposals, put some proposals together and.
Yeah. You're not super jacked about having the biggest community engagement ever in the world, it's more targeted, community can make sense.
Yeah, but I gotta get to the, like, the scenario piece of this, you can, that's kind of the scenario, like, right?
Yeah.
This building is sold, that's a scenario A. This building isn't sold, that's scenario B. We create new space in South Boulder, C. We renovate Reynolds is D. I mean, like, you know, that's.
And I can have 100 community meetings and I'm not gonna come back on much more.
I think the.
Not conclusive answer on M D's.
I think like, from a test the waters perspective, and I haven't, I think we asked the city at least for Reynolds library.
Well, and I think in general, our strategic plan is just like a messaging tool, like, the feedback's part of it, but it's really a messaging tool for us to tell the community that where things are going.
What we're saying.
Where we see, where we see the problems.
Yeah.
And the play, like, well, we're gonna get feedback, right? Like, as soon as we raise the issue of retiring Carnegie, that's gonna be unpopular. Like, there's gonna be some of these unpopular decisions, but I think this is our opportunity to start moving the overturn to other.
City, city might make us take Carnegie if we're gonna give, get that file.
Well, maybe, yeah. Carnegie is gonna be part of the negotiation here, shouldn't we?
Nobody wants it.
But they may want it for, uh, they maybe want it for Sundance.
But they may tell us, you have to take this as part of the building, you gotta put in.
You gotta pay like 10 million.
As a means of getting the other building.
So like.
Like, you have to.
Like, yeah, you have to.
Yes, it's a, it's a liability, not asset.
It's not an asset.
And as a result, everyone's trying to get it off their boss.
This one thing that was said in the meeting that I had last week with the city manager, the deputy city manager was, I thought, revealing tonight. They weren't, two things, actually, that could be. One was, they said, they were, we were talking about the civic area, and I was asking them all these questions.
Yeah.
And they said, the only, the only thing that we see owning in the civic area is the Tea House, and that's because we can't see the way out. And so like, you know, the city, that that's, I don't know that they knew what they were saying, but that, if you had been with the city for a minute, it's like that means the beauty building, that means the atrium, that means Beboka, that means that building, that means the senior center, that means all of this. The only thing we can see, really see owning is the tea house in the civic area, and that's what came down. So my assumption is then that they're talking about, and here's the other thing that I thought, like, if you've been around Boulder long enough, you'll be shocked as I was when they, the city council is in private meetings now considering bringing back up there. This was a dogfight ten years ago, and there was free money on the table, and they were afraid to do anything because businesses might make money, and they were just like, oh my god, no way. The city is, council is currently discussing whether or not they bring that back. That would be huge, and that's the kind of necessary tool they need in the civic area. Not necessarily at Urban Row, but they have to form some kind of district wherein, if they plan to vacate this, how, cause the conservancy doesn't make money just by getting donations. There are tax incentives that go to it, there are park organizations, there's development that's happening in rapid fashion, like hotels going in, and they get a tax-free break cause the money is going into the, the bid that then funds the conservancy, and that's how you grow a park. If they, if they really have come around to that conversation now, for ten or twelve years, I would be shocked. But if they have, then that is a pathway forward for the civic area to change.
Well, I think they just see the writing on the wall, because they don't have any, and the touch, but, or they, they're, they don't have any growth.
And they don't wanna own any of this, and there's no growth, yeah, yeah.
So, they need to spur growth, and like, if they wanna do climate change resilience and core arterial networks and, um, you know, the road diets and like, they need to bring in, but those things aren't free, and so.
Development piece.
And just pull the pot.
With that.
They need to do it with develop, they can do it in the planning process or through development piece, they can't do it in control.
Yeah, I mean, they can rezone anything and re, you know, plan everything, but if they don't, if there's nobody paying for it, if this is not gonna, yeah. Those are their priority, right? Um, okay, um.
Civic area is evident, I I, I might put the proposals for you in the next few months, so take a sort of look at, hey, I will be tying it all together, cause I need to take this, this civic area thing, while it may not be entirely comfortable for all of us, um, it is the leverage point by which we can begin to make some of the other things happen.
When we go to the city, can we bring it up next month?
This is one of our topics for the last ninety minutes.
Oh, okay, well, you got everything you need for this.
Uh, can I ask some questions?
Okay.
So, this is what I heard, uh, you want two or three scenarios at the current mill rate, and then we'll choose one, that's one, the one we'll go forward with to get community input. It will cover the next five years, each scenario will cover the next five years. Do you want operating costs with each of those scenarios? Or just are you looking at buildings?
What do you, uh.
Yeah, I think we wanna.
You're gonna have to, uh, to ask to leave, um.
Okay, yeah, um, and then once we choose a scenario, that's when we would go and get community input in South East Florida.
Or we might present one of the one scenarios.
I think we might give community a couple of options.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Um, anything about programs, services, that sort of thing? Or we just want new facilities and like overall services that would go in there, not specific programs and services?
A big part of the plan, I think, is core services. We need, we need to, we need to dive back into the community about.
Yeah, yeah, I I assumed you were.
Programs, like Canyon Theater is a program, Carnegie History Collection, we consider a program, Makerspace is a program, these are all programs.
Yeah.
And so like that, that will definitely be weighing in, because we may be making proposals that will be changing that.
So I think, I mean, I don't know if we want to do scenarios or what there, but I do think we are gonna wanna do something like, try to get some read on where do people want us to invest? Is it more meeting spaces? Is it more circulation? Is it more books on the shelves? Is it more digital lending? Like, it would be useful and awesome signal there.
Is it more like one book, one Boulder kind of events?
Right, is it more free programming in the Canyon Theater? Like, I think we are gonna have to think about how we gather some of that in.
And I, I mean, I have to think that there's a, there's a chance that we present some different scenarios, and what comes out is actually a little bit of column A, a little bit of column D, like. So, like, I think that however they're structured, it wouldn't be like hard and fast, like, if you pick A, you can't have anything, you know what I mean, so.
Right, right.
Cause what's, cause if we're gonna get feedback on the backend, we have to be prepared for things to move.
But yeah, I think if these are our discussion, we can't do everything, so let's pick the things the community cares to mention about, and we're gonna make some down on that.
And we, and we would collect that after or before, or we'd use dark, like.
As part of the, I think, I mean, I think it'd be similar in the buildings, it's, we'd probably wanna go into the collecting feedback with a couple of options or some questions at least that we.
I guess.
I go back to the original like polling we did with the district, and the number one thing people wanted was literary service, literacy services.
What was that?
Literacy, literacy service, that was the, that was the core mission of the library, was the number one thing people.
What, what year, what year was that?
Twenty twenty, twenty two. I mean.
And how do you think like the theater, how do you think the theater would do against the cafe in terms of like a value service?
I don't guess Doug that.
I think the cafe would beat it like five to one.
Yeah, probably, also the cafe is pretty close to running an intro, heading in that direction.
But it hasn't been like that before.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it's making money on the other side.
It's covering some of this.
There is some, well, uh, I think, um. Yeah, I think, um.
Are we looking at like an à la carte menu here? Is that what it sounds like to me? Like, we passed out what we think are core services and the programs we currently have, and all these building scenarios. We bring it to you, then we cobble together some two options from that and present that to the community. Yeah.
I do think, I mean, I, it would be interesting to hear from the city on this, but like, when I do city surveys, the ones that are most useful are the ones where like, they show me three options for what they wanna do with the roadway, and they ask me to pick one.
Okay.
I think that's a little better than being, let's just throw ideas, have an idea board.
Like one label of growth for today, and one more focused on growth for tomorrow, right, if we can label them how we want it.
Well, we know, yeah, I I think there's like, there's gonna be like programs and services, facilities, kind of, you know, like different tranches where.
Yeah, you do it like it's, I mean, you can do it a thousand different ways, you can do it as like a, I don't know, it's like, like it or not, I don't know, you know, which one you pick, like, do you want, do you want cafe or do you want the theater? Cafe wins, cafe or books, books wins, books serve story time.
Yeah.
You can do, there's a thousand different ways to construct, so we can get data, and you're running through it a thousand, each person does ten, there's a good ranking, like, there's top four things, like, that's not impossible.
But we're not doing it, we're giving board the, all the options, and they're picking like a suite of options.
We're giving board all the options, yeah.
And then you could do that, yeah, then you can do that with like the suite of options, I suppose.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, well, because I don't think there's, I don't think that there's, my my whole point in this strategic plan is we've kind of delivered most of the things we're gonna deliver as far as like growth.
In the short term.
In the short term, so really, without major growth in the area, we're just reallocating pie pieces. Does that make sense? So we're, 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 we're changing like the share that goes to Reynolds versus, you know, the share that goes to, let's see, on Meadows, you know, like, like, it, we're, we're just changing pie pieces. Maybe we're changing capital and programming, you know, like, that's really what this plan is gonna tell us. It's not, here's all the great library services that we're gonna have.
Right.
Uh, we might add some, but we'll probably be taking some away, does that make sense? You could, in the current level, like, we've, we've built out what, I mean, okay, I could have.
So you're not asking the community what they wanna do to expand, you're wanting them to tell us how we allocate our resources right now.
Yeah, some of that might be, some of that might be expansion, but I think under the current mill levy situation, we're, we're, we're not gonna be.
You may have the right mix.
Yeah, I think, I think, but I think. By what you're saying, and I think what I've been hearing is that like, this is gonna be a different type of strategic plan than the last one.
Yeah.
Cause the last one was like, we have a, like, we have a wish list, we have like ten things we wanna do, and they are like discreet, actionable growth things we wanna do. This strategic plan is gonna be much more nuanced.
Cause we're not gonna put it in a franchise.
Yeah.
We're not gonna.
Right, and yeah, well, the other.
We're not gonna create a library district.
Yeah.
And we've had two years of Reynolds.
It's a sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so this is us coming back and saying, okay, we've run it for two years, and here, these are the things that we are weighing, we want your, we want your input on
Yeah.
these different directions we can go. We're not gonna say we wanna go one way or the other, we're just gonna get the input. And then, and then after that, then you have a whole, another round of this to say, well, now this is the plan.
Yeah.
So what we're presenting isn't, if they pick all, they pick A with B, doesn't mean that's the plan in the end, we take all the feedback, we'll do A and B and say, okay, now we know what we wanna do, back to kind of the à la carte part.
And are we asking if there's a scenario in which they'd support additional funding to get to one of these scenarios? Or are we just sticking to the current mill rate?
No.
No, no.
No, no.
Yeah, I don't think this, realistically, I don't think this is gonna work.
That's a, yeah.
I think it is.
It's a.
No.
In five years, I think, you know, without a major growth to the city, I think that, that, you know, the, the thing going from the city municipal district to the district district was we recognize that this, the, the municipal was like a nineteen eighties funding model, maybe even a nineteen thirties funding model, you know what I mean? And like, now we're in the twenty twenty five funding model, and that, that generated the expansion growth, and now it's really the, and I don't say, I, I, I don't, yeah, yeah, we're not expanding. We're, we're reallocating resources.
And so, um, if we wanna build a new building and consolidate two locations, that's gonna cost us money, are we looking at what to trim to get there within this current mill rate?
Well, we would have to allocate.
Yeah, that would be that.
We would have to allocate part of our mill to that.
Yeah.
Future debt, you know.
Which is part of, I mean, it gets back to our original discussion, we need to find a way to start to reserve five to ten percent of our budget for capital projects, so none of this is possible.
Right. So part of this would be the trade-offs, you want this, this is what you give up, or we'll recommend.
Yeah, and and I think also part of it's the discussion about leverage, about trying to get the buildings.
Yeah, I mean, nobody, I I did send that financial model to, I think all of you at some point, I don't, probably not as many people played around with it as much as I did, but there are a lot of different scenarios where we wound up at twenty thirty five was forty million dollars, and and they're not wildly different assumptions, like, I can't overstress, when, when the asset value is over six, almost seven billion dollars, I cannot tell you the difference a, a point, a percentage is in terms of revenue increases, like, when, when you, when you see an eight year, an eight percent increase, like, we're suddenly ahead of where we were gonna be. Like, what happened with us in the last cycle was absurd, I mean, that jumped us two and a half million dollars ahead of where we were, like, eh, than where we planned to be. Now we're back to the place where we planned to be since. But all of those, all of the things we're talking about, none of them are impossible, they're not even crazy scenarios, like, we see five percent, three cycles in a row, we're gonna be back with like, what are we gonna do with all this money? Uh, the, the reality is we're just stuck for four years with no different amount of money, that, that's it, right? If it were, if it were two percent, we probably wouldn't be having some of these conversations. If it were five percent, which is the historical average over the last fifty years, it would be a totally different calculation, we wouldn't be talking about, we need to save a million and a half. We would have, have an extra one and a half million dollars, or maybe two million dollars in our budget, we would have two million, extra two million dollars in our budget. If you go to ten percent, you're talking about, there's an increase in our budget in a year of five million dollars, we're not gonna spend it, we're not, we, and we have reached capacity in terms of like the structure roughly, but I think if we were to ask our people, I don't know that, we're not happy with Carnegie, I mean, I think everybody's content with the library, but it's like, are we? Is the Meadows the best we can do for the community? Is Reynolds the best we can do? I don't think so, for the amount of money that we have, I think we can do a better job, and so we need to think about, are we gonna do those things? Yeah, we're not building a library in Nyland, we probably won't be bombed out for another twenty years, but we might. And all of that's within grasp of property tax, property values, resume normal pace.
Okay. And this, I have a thought about just how you present this to the community in a way that's authentic and exciting. To me, like, I'm listening, David, your opening sentence at this retreat was about the data that that shows ah, an almost unprecedented nationally use and support of a library system, you had to like point to Ann Arbor really to find a comp. Also, you've got, um, a, a, a library running the library now. You're librarians, you, as a way of life, you, you take community input and you turn it into services and programs. And I think you can talk about that somehow, in, as you present this to the community, and you say, those who were following closely in twenty eighteen remember a giant process, we're not, now this is librarians running the library. And our commitment to you is a, is continuous improvement cycles, and so sure, every five years, and this is one of them, we will have some way that's a little more visible, but we assure you that we are in a more constant improvement cycle now than ever before. I think of, for example, Aurora last week had the news they were closing two branches, but their news was they were opening their big central branch. And, and then, oh, by the way, we're closing two branches, and by the way, yeah, it's been planned because the use is low over there, and that's why we did all this. But the new headline was, we're opening our big central branch. You know, if you go to the community, like, ah, we don't have Carnegie, we don't, no, no, we're growing, we are, we are high-use, high-support library system that's taking a pause as we will every five years, but it's constantly on a growth trend to improve services for our community.
Yep, I know.
Yeah, I think Doug was saying something earlier about like, that we're kind of like now in this pattern of getting feedback all the time.
Yeah.
That we've been like, listening to feedback, it's not like something we're doing once a decade, it's like we get feedback all the time.
And it's cause you're librarians, like, you can lean into what that means.
I think part of the message here too is like, the library is not static, right? We are trying to make sure we're continuing to best serve, to better change the community.
We're reflecting on the last, the last conversation we were having about the theater, uh, we did just ask that question in August, like, what brings you to programs, I thought like, I would have to go back, it's not ready for presentation, go, I'd say sixty percent. Said two things, programs were unique, not, not like you can't get to mentors and they're free. Free, and you, like, it's raining outside on a Sunday afternoon, let's go see what's happening in the library, so, just so you know, but it is funding, it's seventy people, it's only eighty people, but.
It's free, I mean, that's a huge thing.
Yeah.
Like, if I wanna take an art class, if I don't wanna pay sixty, seventy bucks or whatever, that's a, you know, and if they're a family of four or three, you know, that's, it adds up. So, um, okay, I think you have what you want. Anybody need a bathroom break?
Yep.
Okay, five minutes and a little come and wrap up.
I would say, Doug, I thought it was on here, but maybe it's not. I would say let's spend a few minutes on the last discussion, trying to nail down what we wanna discuss with council.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we can't, I've been trying to feed that in, in, as we go, uh, just so that, um, oh, David, I don't think we need a meet tomorrow. I was gonna tell, since we're meeting all day today, but y'all tell Sylvia, that's good.
I think it's better if you don't. My powers are break, I need to look at my phone.
Four minutes, five minutes.
Can you just call or send me this?
Well, I think it's in this room, we're standing.
You leave in the bathroom?
Yeah. So that's, that's a match, and then.
It's a new, um, we're doing some requests, okay, I don't know, I think it's separate from requests right now.
Okay.
Did we just submit like just a council meeting here, or a, or a city council, or a county membership?
Okay, so this is just the general.
Yeah.
Now, this.
We didn't, we don't have a county agenda, no.
Oh, this was the thirty eight.
Um, I was, I was thinking about, well.
This doesn't, this doesn't add the thirty eight, dude.
Will, will they get.
Turn that, but I wanna, so, so why?
Okay.
I don't know, so.
I'd like to make sure this is the same as that, I see.
Cause they're.
Because also though, like, I think they're like, they're messy and.
You're anticipating a second year.
There's three of them, they're underwater, they don't really care about the library.
And they're like. I think, yeah. They don't have anything, there's like, they wanna talk. I mean, Claire might wanna come.
I mean, I'll, I'll be interested to see the details, but I mean, just in round numbers, that looks like something.
Oh, yeah.
They were like, yeah, I know.
They were like, thanks for the animal court, let's cancel our meeting.
Yeah.
So.
Found it.
What was it?
In my back pocket. Your clue is good, because I probably let people into the, I was probably looking at my phone when I let somebody in the bathroom, and then I sent my, went to my wallet in my back pocket.
Um. Do you find this helpful, this meeting?
Yeah.
I think Tom's like, this is the best meeting we've ever had after, you know, coming in as a new trustee. Well, you also, I think one good thing is you hear everything I hear on like, when I meet with him. With David and Sylvia weekly, you know, because we had a whole film here on his meeting with the city or.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it would be fascinating, I, I'm just so skeptical of anything ever happening in any like. Quick manner in the city because like, you know, like they bought Alpine Blossom fifteen years ago.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, or twelve years ago, and like, and it is happening.
Oh, that's funny, yeah.
I mean, but like, man, you talk about being responsive to.
Taking a long time.
Responsive to like your community, and I know we do so much planning and execution and stuff here, it's like. I think the city overplans and underexecutes. Like, this is an example of it.
Yeah, it's crazy, I had.
They'll never have the money to do any of this.
Yeah.
Well, that's what makes it interesting, they always do this without money, I know exactly how much money they have for this.
I was like, who's gonna pay for all that maintenance?
It's, they have eighteen million dollars. That's probably enough to do this.
It's gonna be like four million to tear down the buildings.
Then that money is perfect, that's not the eighteen.
Oh.
The eighteen is just, yeah, this area, the ban show, and the thirteenth street improvements, and maybe some of this gardening out here, they're not doing any of this stuff. Um, and, and they're not doing this either, except for the fact that they're showing it on the plan as volume, which is pretty interesting, right? It's just volume for some future development.
They're not gonna build a parking garage, you know what I mean?
Yeah, tearing down costs a lot of money too.
Yeah, it cost twelve million to tear down the hospital.
Oh, really?
They're real.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only condition at which they would build a car, so there's.
Well, because they wanted to like recycle everything.
They will do it if somebody.
And like, you know.
Yeah, you know, pull all the, you know.
Just send us a lamp.
I'm concerned about the traffic in that balsas, I drive through there all the time, and all the city employees.
That's, you know, that's. But they did all that, I mean, you could always.
Employees, but like now, like that interception's gonna be.
Be like, hey, it's Patrick Raymond.
He's throwing it away.
And like, there's been no change on what it looks like a lady's, yeah, and like, it's nice to try to like my path there right now, and it's not gonna be my little path there anymore.
But like, um.
Nice.
But I, I, I'm sending emails to people, planning, like, how many units are we, are coming in right now that aren't being built?
Sixty, yes.
Cause there's like two hundred by mine.
Yeah, for now.
Like a hundred, like a hundred and fifty.
Cause I cut it so bad, cause then foothills staff cut through there too, I cut through there to a school, and like now there's gonna be all the other.
Yeah, it's just a dump. And then like, and then.
City employees, it's gonna be.
I don't think they're build, building anything.
Yeah.
Because the interest, so the, the cost, the cost thing at like.
Yeah.
Two percent interest versus six percent interest or seven percent interest.
Yeah.
Well, it also had a saturation factor, the rest of the markets housing being filled with.
Yeah, my friend George from the city, she doesn't go in.
Yeah.
When things are sitting because fires are in a, a little harder.
I have a city that's been.
Yeah, to borrow, they, they would normally borrow.
Yeah, returning.
When I do, it's gonna work, right?
Whoa, who are you?
Your market is saturated, not really ready for a new building as much.
Right.
I would imagine.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And we have like one of the most resilient housing markets in the country, so.
Yeah.
We're slowing down, just like in two thousand eight when we were flat for a couple of years. And Vegas was cratering and Florida was.
I mean, I think we're flat to negative this year, like, for most of Boulder, like especially, it depends on the price.
So, you know, it's.
I asked me, if that's what we're seeing in Boulder, think about what must be going on around the country where like, actual real economic pressures, do things.
Yeah, yeah.
So, taking on this training, so my needs to be, it's.
Technically, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna go back, yeah, I think that like, the peripheral too, like Erie and probably like Louisville or Longmont, they probably have a lot, much higher.
Which, which. We're doing.
I like that.
I've heard.
Too, like Erie and probably like Louisville or Longmont, they probably have a lot, much higher, you know, a front.
Yeah, I think I've done. I give emails to.
Yeah. You might have already done them, I think a lot of these are stuff that we want, but because you're new, you're probably getting more than the rest of them.
Un, okay. Okay.
Also, it's very possible to.
Okay.
They take like thirty minutes each, they're annoying, but doable.
Okay. Okay. Alright.
How I do have trainings, I'm just doing. Good, huh? I have ten days to do them. Also currently like a four in a card story for my, it's a jerk, it's weird, so, that's also something I had to do, but.
I only got, they're. But the security training is a test at the end, but I only got eighty percent on, I think some of their answers are wrong.
That's good, huh?
And Andy, as far as the lease from Meadows, uh. We know, we will know what the twenty twenty-eight revenue is by July of twenty twenty-seven. Which would be about the time we'd have to start the issue, so we'll know if we're gonna have an extra two million dollars or not in our revenue.
I mean, I think the thing you've been doing where we're opportunistically looking and perhaps progressively more aggressively looking is probably the right thing for now, but. Yeah, I think it'll be interesting.
Keep looking, but depending upon what happens, a lot of things come first in twenty twenty-seven. As he leaves, this building may be being torn down, a lot of things will.
Do you think that if they do go through to sell this building, there'll be a desire to keep the bridge?
Um, I haven't made it clear that he's our sire, I know, I don't know how powerful landmarks board is anymore, if they are, then we make of them if it ever comes to the question, because. It is now landmark as of this year. Well, they did threaten that the last time we talked to them, like, you can't do anything with this building, and oh, did you know that that building was lost, and they had an auditor come out and actually put a. On my seventy-fourth.
I do think it's useful, because you have two entrances and a main, so even if somebody else redeveloped this building, finding some way to keep the second entrance on the side is perhaps good.
Yeah, I think, I don't think they could get anywhere if they don't keep the facade, and if they keep the facade, they wanna keep the gallery, and, cause the gardens are part of the facade. And then they keep the gallery and the connection to the bridge.
Okay, um. I think we're ready to start again. So, wrapping up, we got an hour and seven minutes. Um. Annual goal, do you wanna take the annual goals last? Um, and, cause I think we have those, I think I have a rough idea about those, who do we go first, annual goals? All right, let's do this first, that might be the hardest part. Um. Let's see, uh, let's see, I think.
Do we have a copy of the current goals? We do?
Um. They were in, I don't have, I still don't have them, um, let me open my computer.
Is your goal the cycles or just the process for cycles?
No, this is for the directory.
Right, right.
Um. They were like, integrate staff, let me fully pull them up. Um.
Open gun barrel.
Open gun barrel.
Hey, you know what I'm doing.
Alright. Let's see. Okay, while I'm pulling this up, let's go to, uh. I think we've talked about this, trustee expertise, Tom, this is one of your, um, just kind of, maybe you can expand on that a little bit?
Um, well, a couple of us have talked about it, I can't remember, it was a while ago, but just, um. I mean, we're a board, we have the responsibilities of making decisions and, and being the fiduciaries of this, but we all have our own expertise. The question is, how useful is that to you? Is that something that you wanna traditionally tap on in our lanes of expertise, or are we, you know, we're just here to be the citizens members of the board that we are?
Um, well, I've had multiple staff ask me to give them eighteen, you know, trust me, it's. So, um, so I don't wanna say no, but, um.
You're welcome, too.
But yeah, I think it's kind of, um. I think it's kind of relative, depending upon what, you have a big job to do, I don't wanna ask anything more honestly than what the big job is. And if we're making hard choices around the budget, I don't envy you that either, cause. I mean, there's nobody else to blame anymore, you can't blame the city, you can't blame.
The mills.
So that's a, that's a big, uh, job, um. To that extent, I mean, I do, I know I do ask questions, of course, quite a bit about the stuff, and I expect you to bring your best big brain to the table on those items. I, I don't know, I mean, I, when we had the programming conversation, that's what we're talking about, do we want consulting, outside consulting on that? I, I think that group is a large group, it's an unruly group. Um. That would be a harder one, I, I, I have threatened to bring the public in, I don't think that's a great solution, I've done it before, it didn't work. Um, but I do think we have to change that process, uh, so. I don't know, if you have process changes for doing massive programming for hundreds, thousands of participants every year, I think, I, I, first thing I want is a data point. If any of you had, like. That's, I know we're weak. Marketing indications, we're still building, that muscle is still vastly underfunded, and then the other places that weren't really struggling. Not me so much, but I, I'm looking for educators on data, I mean, I'm interviewing people, I'm like, every time I get a person who's. In the case that they have data expertise, I'm bringing them in to chat and see what they can do and write me up a proposal or anything like that, because I wanna give an idea of like, how can we better educate staff? Doing data analysis.
I think what Sylvia said, and I, I tend to agree, is, I think there is an area for, for people to do expert. To bring their expertise to ver- various things, like I think as lawyers, we did that a lot, I don't know, Cara mixes it here, but like, we did that during the formation process. Um, but I think it would.
But it wasn't necessarily expertise in district or districts, it wasn't, you know, it just happened that you guys have a law degree, and I have a master's degree and.
No, 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 it's like, we're. Legal. Right, it.
But it, but there was a lot of like, like vendor contracts.
Warning stuff like that.
Like, but they're like, they're like, just stuff that we read more often than the average bear.
Yeah, but.
But, but I think that like, I think that like.
Maybe.
Yeah, but it's just been government for thirty years.
My, my goal, goal, or my thought would be, if there's an area during a, a board meeting that we're presenting on, then like Andy has expertise on, like, you know. That we identify that during a meeting, and, and then the board member can engage, or if, if they so want to, with their, with their expertise.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of this goes back to, to the extent, David, that you and staff think, so it's helpful, I think many of us are happy to engage, like I talk to Amy at least once a quarter about something. I think it's a little bit tricky though, cause we're effectively wearing two different volunteer hats, right? Like when I'm talking to a staff member, I'm not doing so, or I'm trying not to do so, if my authority is trustee, right? Cause I'm merely giving guidance, it's ultimately needs to go up through staff and through David, and maybe it comes back to us at some point, but it's a different role than when we're sitting here actually making decisions, so. I think there's a place for that, but you have to be a little bit careful, like I don't wanna be working with a staff member and have them think that what I'm saying is the word of the board, because it's not.
But I think.
I think like, well, you participated in outreach, uh, committee, but you were.
We were, we were on the board.
You were not on the board, you did it.
I've been on the commissioner before that, and then.
Yeah. I can, but I can't, you're in a different capacity if you're doing it in the board capacity.
But, here's, I was thinking about related to, I mean, I think it's different from any other nonprofit board, just having had that experience for decades, but. I think there, we need to figure out, like, something that makes sense for people's expertise and bringing people aligned with this effort, and I think about task forces and. Committees, and I think about some of the early conversations we had about engaging people outside of the board in this process in some way, but. Most particularly as it relates to board, I think about things like, you know, we were talking about the maker space before, and I thought, you know. What about a deep dive of, you know, two of us, you know, sort of examining aspects of that, and just, you know, coming forward, just, you know, some programmatic report out or something like that. But some short-term efforts where we can use our energy and the curiosity we have about something. And, you know, and come back to the board with a, with a report on it, I don't know, it just seems like that would be a way to. Engage us in a way that helps and helps create some structure to, you know, what follows in a process, and, um. You know, I mean, that is just one example, but I think there could be other places where, you know, two people could take on the whole idea of like a survey tool, or survey elements, or evaluation elements, and just even. Track like, here's, like, here's what the district is already doing, or it's what we know is coming from staff, and then there's like this chunk, and, and here's our recommendation on. You know, where the gaps are and the kind of survey, different tools that could be used and something like that, but I, I just think some short-term alignment, you know, could. I think really could be helpful, and I think it could be a benefit.
This isn't exactly using our expertise, but I do feel like it would be good for us to think hard ways to engage with the raw public as well, cause. I mean, I know John and I, you obviously use, I mean, I know all this use library in various capacities, but I don't know that we, we don't want people that are showing a public comment, like, it might be nice just to.
Yeah.
Continue to think about other opportunities to get us in front of the public, just to maximize the number of opportunities to hear from the folks that are actually using the library.
But I think if we can't find a way to like engage ourselves first, then it's awkward to like, say, well, let's create a volunteer pool to do this, right? And yet we had thirty-seven people apply for one position on this board, and.
Which was the most exciting thing I think I experienced being on this board. Seriously, and it was.
Was never people to.
Was never able to, and really, amazing group of people.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So I think in terms of evaluating a program, that I'm really uncomfortable with, we would pay somebody to do that, we had, uh, you know, somebody, and agree on the criteria and by. Which we're using it to do an evaluation program. Now, in Madien's case, we've asked, and there was something asked today, like I think that, so there are several things which are within her wheelhouse. We don't have a lot of expertise on staff currently, and so we may throw, uh. Here's a proposal, here's a contract asking for feedback, to get the thing right before we actually bring it back to the board, right? And so that's, I think that's helpful, um, you know, being, being elsewhere is another one that I want, I mean, and, and partly the reason why I said.
Well, well.
Seven out of ten people in the district have a library card, every fucking day, you're in a grocery store and there's five people in line, th- three of them have a library card, like there's a way to strike up a conversation. And I don't know that we're, you guys who are level change, the power that you have as a board member, to just engage in those conversations, where those people say like, yeah, I love the bathrooms. Or, yeah, I love the storytopper, yeah, I love, you know, where else is super nice, it, it's seven out of ten people, every day going, Boulder has got a card probably in their pocket. And they used it recently, start having those conversations, that can be very useful to us, we, we do this pulse surveys now, we get eighty people, it's eighty people I don't know every year, not scientifically valid. But it's eighty people that we don't otherwise hear from, that's great, like, that could be a huge benefit for us to have more people out in the community to say, hey, so we do.
Go back to the committees, you know, and that you were talking about, like, you know, I think it is a good place to leverage the expertise, like we have the finance committee, we have the governance committee. Is there, you know, on the outreach plan?
Over the outreach.
Is there a committee that we, cause I see the, the benefit of the expertise is, this is something that's a deep, deep dive, not just like. Using your role as a IT consultant, you know, or whatever, but it's really like. This group of board members or two or whatever has looked into this issue and they're advising the board. That's where I see the best, on the best course of action. Um, and I, I'd be open to that, or, I don't have the science, I'm open to that too, is like, and, but my question is then. I think we'll need to identify, and people will need to speak up when we need to form a, like a, a ad hoc committee, cause we agreed to do ad hoc committees. Um, and, and I do think maybe one is around the outreach for the strategic plan. Um, and, um, because, yeah, um, and so, um. I think that's like something I think we could do, so I, it, for, for that, I think that would be, it, you know, a good place to leverage our expertise in these ad hoc committees. Benita, you're an expert in that stuff, that outreach stuff too, you know, like, and so, you know, so I think, um, but I, that's just one example.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I think, you know, I think what it will take is. Some, a board member bringing it up, um, or volunteering, maybe it's a single issue like IT or, or internet, whatever.
Marketing.
Sorry, yeah, um, or legal, you know, like, um, you know, big IP, intellectual property, uh, you know, like, whatever. We're talking a lot, um, so, um, yeah.
But I just wanted to go back, so I'm not saying like, we are, we would formally be doing an evaluation of a program, but it is just to share information amongst board related to. So I think it was board-driven, board conversation, not board to executive director feedback in a sense, but.
Yeah.
You know, so like back to like the maker space thing, like, you know, two people, they said, well, hey, let's take on, you know, the next two months, let's sign up for five classes or whatever, and let's just share evaluation or experience in doing that, or something like that. It's like back to, to. It's like back to to what silly was talking about, like the best way to understand is to like volunteer whatever. Well, two people like buddied up and said, hey, we're gonna do instead of, you know, whatever, reading sessions or whatever, older rights or whatever, you know, and report that back, right? But to share that feedback, but to create some synergy here too, so that we're better informed and observing beyond a written valuation or survey tool.
And I think there is a lot of expertise on this board, and I think they sent people see opportunities to use their like personalized footy in the board role, I think people do. Um, I think we also just have to be cognizant of time.
Yeah.
It's like, I know, like, you know.
Extra meetings outside of.
I mean, my actual day job takes up a lot of time.
So I think I think.
So like there's also, you know, we don't wanna make people put a lot of pressure on anybody on the board to say like, you need to do all of the board stuff and then you need to be like over and above, you know, on top of that, so.
But I think one thing.
But I don't have to be often.
Yeah.
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 I think, um, so I think we we agree around the ad hoc committees and 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 using that, I think we'll probably evaluate some some situations, I I leave it upon each board member to bring it up. Like, don't expect me or David unless David asks like, hey, we really want community, you know, your input on. Um, but and then we can consider it as a board and vote on it and and form those committees. Uh, so I think that's a good way to do it, and then, you know, again, I but maybe all of us for the next year, uh, sign up for some sort of volunteer or program and and attend it. Um, introduce yourself to the staff.
Yeah, I mean, the day that I wore my name tag and got in line with the personal patrol.
Yeah.
They were like, wow, you're trustee.
Right.
Why are you here? I said, I'm here to support you.
Yeah.
And wow, that's great, right?
I'm always.
Now, those are, all that stuff is huge, and I I I'm not gonna, I mean, without asking you five times first before I actually ask you, I'm not gonna ask anybody to do anything more than here, everybody's already doing. And a bunch of people like you on property assessments, one hundred from the districts, you now are in wheelhouse of Andy's work, they do, Andy volunteered when he was a board member, but helped us scope the IT thing, I like, everybody's done a ton already and I and it is, it's a long assignment, five years, it's like, it's like raising a child.
Except we was thinking just going.
It's like, it's like, it's a long time.
A little similar to that.
If it was only five years, I would have done five now.
Yeah, but five years is a long time, so I and I know how much.
Yeah, I mean, your kids will be in like high school.
No.
Middle school.
Also, ten year olds.
Yeah.
So long, guys.
Um. Uh, okay, so let's, I think we got that, um. So here were the goals for the director. Uh, cultural and community, uh, within the within the district oriented, build upon the existing culture and collaboration with integration of new hires. Implement performance review policy, done that, uh, construct trustee organization, we've done that. Uh, let's see, meet individually outside of meetings at at least once each country, have you been able to do that?
I don't know, I don't know if there.
Well, let's try to, I think that's a, I think you should continue to do that and we'll break that down. Like, I think, um, try to schedule at least one meeting outside, um, of one on one. Okay. Uh, services and programs, continue to.
Can I ask a question on that one?
Sorry.
Is that something that you want? Because honestly, again, and and this is the thing, like, you can say this is required of me, I I don't, I never say no to a request for a meeting.
No, I get that.
I my schedule is constantly comes, because I meet with everybody, I meet with somebody that's angry about what the bathroom looked like one day, like I I will meet with anybody about everything, so anytime you want, you're, I'm here five days a week, like you can drop in and probably even talk to me. So like, do you really want me to send you out an invite for a meeting? If if you do, I'm happy to do it, but it's like, you can meet with me anytime you want.
I don't know, I mean.
All you have to do is say.
Personally, I I'd meet with a lot, so.
Yeah, so you're in the finance committee, so you're meeting with them a lot, but.
I feel like.
Yeah. I'm good, I'm good.
Um, and, uh, you know, like me, I I don't know.
I think the idea was like, because I think then it was like we had two new trustees coming on.
Yeah.
October third, so I think when we were doing these goals last year, the idea was that just to continue to build those relationships, because in the first year, we were all meeting every week.
Yeah.
And then after that, it was like not as often, so the idea was like, how do we make sure that there's a relationship there that when you're, when there's less space to waste time, I think that was the thinking last year on that.
It's easy to do loss loss terms.
Yeah, I don't know, but I'll see, you know, if you email someone and they say, I'm good, I think that's fine, like, we shouldn't count that against David.
No, no, no.
It is, I mean, I think there's probably a usefulness of people just lose track of it. I straight line everyone.
I enjoy the library, right? I totally hung out and I actually knew you.
Well, and I think like, if you don't have a office and role or community role, you may not meet with David as much. And I don't want that to be. I, you know.
I think the point was that he should have a relationship with every trustee.
Exactly.
And, um.
So do you think, would it be useful if, you know, for that, for for him to reach out and have at least one meeting a year?
Oh.
Yeah.
Why a year?
That's what it said, one a year.
At least one.
At least one, one on one. It goes by fast these years.
We can do one on one.
Yeah, so I I try to do it with each, you know.
Each.
And each, no, with each of you at least once a year. Um, you know, as the chair, so. Um, not that I won't meet with you again the year, but, uh, anyway, all right, uh.
So that's one.
I think it's a goal, yeah, that was from last year, but I think we can carry it over.
Yeah.
Uh, services and programs were continue to implement two thousand eighteen master plan and valided promises. Um.
So can we advise her to begin to develop strategic plan process and.
Are we trying to finalize all the goals right now, or are we just talking about where we want to go?
Um, I think we wanna finalize the goals.
Okay, you wanna set up David twenty twenty six goals?
Yes, because that will also lead into our two thousand thirteen, or no, fuck, it's not twenty twenty.
Watch your mouth.
Twenty thirteen.
Watch, watch your mouth.
That's right, December. Re redoing the contract.
Yeah, we had said we would, we need to do the goals part of the contract, so we had this meeting, so that's what this meeting is.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, um, I think the only thing we need to continue on that one would be the, uh, cuz it was like open Novo done, it's just finalize gun barrel. So.
Well, that would be done, gun barrel, we opened before twenty twenty six.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean.
So I think, so yeah, there's.
I think that's what I'm saying, we had to plan for strategic plan.
Yeah, strategic plan.
Process of engagement and. Data presentation plan.
Well, we have, we didn't talk about it, but we do have a timeline for strategic plan here, so it's really like what falls in twenty twenty six on that in terms of.
That turns into a goal. It's twenty sixteen, so.
Oh, this is three years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is one, this is a previous one.
This is, this is what I was wanting to say.
Three years.
This is why, uh, never mind, put that on. You know, we, part of the community engagement thing, we heard. The reason why we're talking about is that's what, and also the fact that we.
It's checking times.
Jennifer had to write the whole plan, but like there were a lot of stuff that we did, and you can kinda see if you look through this, like. I mean, I'm fine, if that's what you wanna do, I get, I think there's a payoff in maybe doing it, but it's like it's.
No, I.
It drags it out, I really.
So we're just saying.
Timeline for a year and be done.
I think so, we're hoping to have a completed strategic plan in twenty twenty six.
It'll be twenty twenty six.
Okay, so that's a goal for David, just deliver.
Is it, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The.
We're gonna complete the the strategic plan in twenty twenty six, are we gonna
My goal.
Complete the plan to do the strategic plan in twenty twenty six?
No, we're doing it.
So you're doing the whole thing?
Part of it, yeah.
Okay.
My opinion is that we we're delivering.
Yeah, so there's a goal is deliver the 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 next strategic plan.
Like four, four, over twenty twenty six is like.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty six.
Okay.
I pat each other on the back and stuff like.
So you don't want three years to come up with a line?
No.
How many consultants do you?
Okay, um. That's a lot, that you're gonna be busy. Engagement with library commu- community and library district leaders, develop and nurture leadership within the organization. I think we can continue to keep that.
Those are two different ones.
This was, this was like a bucket.
That's a, that's a cover and.
Okay.
Engagement with lit- library community and as the director, district leaders. And then it was develop and nurture leadership within the organization.
Did we tie specific measurements to any of these, I know we had this discussion, but I don't remember where we landed, but did we tie measurements to any of these last time around?
The next one, so last time around, it's the goal was develop and nurture leadership in the organization, and within that, he said, provide at least three development opportunities for potential or aspiring leaders within twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Okay.
Cuz yeah, it's that latter bit that like ultimately we are going to be asked to evaluate against these goals, so we're gonna make sure we actually have a way of evaluating.
And then, um, develop trustee, develop, work with trustees to refine, develop, understand the fiscal fiduciary responsibilities, I think. I think we've kinda got that one done, but, um.
That's a lot, really.
Develop and nurture leadership within the organization. Uh, provide at least three development opportunities for potential aspiring, you are doing that, right?
We've done more than that, but we're we have, we're doing more next year.
You're going to question?
So twenty twenty six, uh, we're starting leadership program.
Leadership program.
But that, so this year, I mean, did we, did have people go into conferences, you know, I have one on one meetings with a lot of staff. Not just my parents.
Do you, do you have specific goals you want to call out in twenty twenty six?
Around develop leadership or a.
Do you know your goal this year or just in general?
Yeah, I mean, I I am, uh, you know, because it's been hard to get, or we are, I'm, we're doubling down a lot. Uh, you should probably in some point like in your on that point in my career where it's like, there's a lot less time than there was before. So yeah, I think part of it, the work I have is helping to grow the bench. And yeah, there's a lot of things, you know, the data one is an important one to me. I mean, that's most of my entire career is based on the fact that I can read a spreadsheet thirty years ago. I mean, everything that happened to me basically was like, I was okay with math, and so I'm I am. I am committed now, we've kind of, we made that commitment this year. I've 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 come to understand how that's totally absent from most librarians education that we have long ago. I would like, I'm gonna be looking for outside help, but I'm I'm down with that, I think there's a lot we can.
What, so what's your, like, when you talk about wanting to do more with, I'm just, cuz I'm gonna have to write this down in your contract. What, uh, when you say that, like, what is it that you are wanting to do more of or?
Is it developing skills within the staff?
Yeah, it's with, it's with the staff really, so that's.
And also like them doing more with data with as a library district or?
Yeah, we already are beginning, I yeah.
What if the goal?
But then.
I mean, it doesn't like we should have a goal related to this in some way.
What if the goal is like prepare and present or implement, uh, the, you know, you may already have it, but like or portions of it, but give perform, you know, the the formal leadership program or skill development, it doesn't have to be just for aspiring leaders, it could be, you know, training on certain things that you want individuals, like, so maybe it's like prepare, you know, education development, leadership. You know, program and present.
I think there might be two separate goals here, the leadership thing might be separate from the data thing.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know, but I.
As I understand what we're hearing is that you you both want to have more data analysis skills within the staff, and whether that comes from new people or just new skills within existing employees, that's one thing. And then probably a thing that will happen automatically when you do that is that then the library district will use data more
Yeah.
to inform everything it's doing.
Yeah.
I just apologize, I should ask this really, when you say seven out of ten people in Boulder now have a library card, seven out of ten of those. Basing that off of survey data or is that something you matched up against household? No, it's only just ran that database against it, we now have, well, it's speaking of growth opportunities, we have a staff member who is interested and we've sent, we've sent him to do a full GIS programming, he's now, you know, certified GIS programmer, we can do amazing things, but one of them was, I wanted to know is how many people live in the district and how many have a library card, so it's a hundred out of a hundred and thirty three, nearly a hundred out of a hundred and thirty three thousand people in the district have a library card. So basically, it's seven out of ten.
And Tom, another fun fact I cited recently is that there are as many library card holders as there are residents of our district. Because you make up that other thirty percent by people not living in the district. So there's like a hundred and thirty three thousand library card holders for a district of a hundred and thirty three thousand people.
So my idea of going to eighty percent, David is a goal, we shouldn't go there. Why, man, I'm just lost, right?
Develop, um, so develop data skills for select staff leaders, would be a goal, and then and then do that on leadership program or?
Right. Yeah, we could, we could tie the developing staff skills and leadership together if we wanted to, but I do think we want a standalone goal for.
Well, it sounds like the leadership program is a thing that exists.
Uh, no, it's it will start in, we are, we're, we're funding it out of current budget for this.
That's what I mean, but it's something that you're, it's.
But I do think that, I think the board would want to look at that, all right, I'd personally.
It's a notion already of timing.
But that's a staff development goal, I think separate from that, I think we do want some kind of goal along the lines of we're actually starting to take a data driven decision making process to programs or to like, you know,
Yeah, so I have.
we don't have to be super specific, but we should have something we can point to.
So I have one bullet that says that the, there is already a plan, but it's now a goal to start a leadership program twenty twenty six for library staff. That's already a plan, but we'll include that here. And then saying that we're gonna develop data analysis skills for the staff, we're gonna do more with data analysis to inform the work of the library.
And I maybe split those apart, there's like the training staff and then there's the actually using it, the decision making.
Yeah. Um, okay, well, we have some more, I think we need to.
Yeah.
Um, okay, and then, um, so that was, I think, fine. I don't think we need to keep, put anything in on there about trustee development, um, or anything like that. Um, although, isn't, is there a library conference coming up, are we gonna get?
Oh shit, forget that, yes.
Yes, September.
Um.
It's the eighth.
Well, just send us an email, cuz we don't have time to talk about it.
Yeah, if you're interested in going, we will, we will pay your way, we'll pay your mileage to travel up there to the.
Okay.
As soon as, like, you know, we can have.
Yes.
No, yes, first we can.
So first we can.
I signed up.
I forgot, oh, good.
Yeah.
Did you get repressed?
Well, I just signed the registration stuff.
Okay.
I didn't sign up, I mean, Sylvia helped me sign up.
Um. Okay.
Let me say that.
So, so.
But it is.
I think you will be meeting then for me.
Oh, okay, so, um, I think another one is, um, contract services. And it will be like explore, I don't know if this is twenty six, is this a goal, we're like, you know, bringing in house some contract services. You know, for cost, is that a goal or?
Or at least, yeah, I, I mean, the goal would be, I think, explore feasibility, yeah.
Explore feasibility, yeah. Um.
And I think we would do that for, yeah, to varying degrees for janitorial and IT. Maybe security, but probably janitorial and IT.
Have we ended our contract with the Rocky Mountain Employers Council?
No.
Or didn't we reduce it somewhat to the kidney?
Twenty six, we are, we are actually currently using turn this bit.
Yeah, we use it S max, it's not, not really, I thought was, no.
No, okay, uh, the other goal, I think, so did you get that one?
You know about goal around like partnerships and.
Yeah, I was gonna get, I'm getting there. Um, you got the one around contracting? Sorry, I don't know why I'm asking you, but you seem like you're taking notes and I'm just scrolling on paper.
Well, we, we, you were gonna do this, so.
Yeah, evaluating, uh, evaluation criteria for programs um, and services, so, um, develop some sort of way to evaluate programs and, you know, internally for your programs on it.
So that could be combined with the using data one as well?
The data.
I think that's where you're thinking about using data one.
Yeah, but I thought we were asking him to present a specific, a specific plan around evaluating how they're gonna evaluate programs and services.
Cuz that's. Yeah, I just think we should maybe do that with the data on them, then that is the data goal.
Yeah.
I I like that one, I think it's fine, I've been trying for thirty five years, I haven't got something I probably use for. But so let's put a stick in that one as well. I'm 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 still trying, I I'm.
Well, the only criteria then is that whether the board thinks it's useful.
I challenge everyone else to.
Is that a pen in it or a stick in its heart?
I don't know, I don't know.
Either way.
The fact is that they're, they're.
Just a stick.
You wanna put that in the data thing?
I think it marries with the data.
Okay.
I do too, and and it really kind of, we have to break out the programs, we have, we have to break them out in terms of how much they.
And was there a goal around circulation? Um, no, okay.
No.
No.
The CalCon conference is Thursday, September fourth.
Oh, wow.
Oh, jeez.
In Brick Ridge.
Next week.
Yeah. Um, we, is there any goal associated with gun barrel?
I think some shots.
No, it opens and it's.
That's part of this year's goal, so.
Right, so we don't.
And I mean, it's not like we had a Novo goal for this year, so I.
And then I think it's a, present, uh, or present a, the last one would be present a policy around partnership. Or suggest.
Or a strategy around partnerships.
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna present a policy at the end of this year to January of next year, yeah, plan around it would be more.
So that would be the, the last goal.
Pursue partnership strategy or? Pursue partnership strategy or something like that.
Evaluation, yeah. And any other goals for the director around HR?
Are we dropping one of the very first ones you wrote, the performance reviews, since that's now up and running?
I think so.
Will we strike that out of next year's?
I think that it's already been completed, so.
Sure.
Uh, do we wanna have any, um, around the website? Getting the website up and going, is that gonna be in twenty six?
It will be in twenty twenty six.
I guess it's a question of how tactical do we wanna get with these goals?
Yeah, yeah.
That feels really tactical.
Yeah.
That feels very specific.
Well, we were very specific last year, I think, you know, so.
How, how many do we have, I mean?
I think we have five.
Yeah.
Five, that's probably.
That seems about right, do you mean, like otherwise we get into the business of listing all ten thousand things David actually has.
Yeah. Right, well, there's, there's, there's a lot that he has in there that's not, like the budget is a huge suck of your time.
This, this is not meant to be like a job. Yeah. This isn't meant to be like a job description.
Right, yeah, yeah, so.
Since I never heard about that.
Okay, I just wanted to, wanted to make sure, um.
Do you want to, once you have these formally typed up ISOs, look at them in a future meeting as the final review before we officially?
It will be in the, in the contract, it'll be in the contract.
Cause we can have that on the, on the. Yeah. Which we don't do until.
November.
So can we just bring it forward?
Yeah, it might be nice just to look at it in September, if they're drafted, so if we need to make any last minute changes, we can do so before November.
Yeah, and Sylvia will be able to look at it in.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, uh, city council. Um, I think we talked about the role of outside consultants, right? I don't think we need to kill that anymore.
Mm-hmm. You're sitting there very tough.
No, I don't think so.
Um.
Well, do I need to say, I mean, I just, so they have certain roles that they do in some ways, like the, um, the marketing consultant that you mentioned. Who was like, you know, like, it's really inexpensive, like I, the, the value of the information that she got from staff as an independent, just the kind of person that she is. Was remarkable, I thought, like we, that was some of the best money we spent last year, like for nothing. We had a consultant who somehow the staff all loved and adored and provided like a ton of information to them. And then that became a report, which we never shared with the board. Uh, it, it led into building out a marketing and communication strategy, which you will see in the next few months. I mean, so will we bring it out, I haven't seen the final one yet, that we've gotten to our house of different things, but that is a broader marketing and communication strategy. In the end, there were quite a lot of processes around programming and the promotion of programming that we need to fix. And part of that leads into twenty twenty six, bunch of decisions around the webpage and the calendaring software and stuff like that. So you'll see it all in some way or another, you have to approve the budget that we're putting forward, but, but in the end, like, sometimes we hire consultants that do stuff for no money. Almost, like it seems like free money, the survey that we did, I think the total cost of that survey, even with paying people to take it, I think came in under six grand. Like it was just like, it's so astonishingly under budget, um, that it's like, why not, like? And there is a credibility in terms of like, it's not the library asking you, what do you think of library, but the email comes from a third party firm. There's a value in that, it's probably worth the six thousand dollars. My real question. So I, I think there is a need sometimes to bring in.
Jeez, you got her.
Yeah, I remember the other firm we used, they're out of New York.
I don't, I don't think we're saying no outside consultants, I mean, for like, yeah, things like you, like there's a time and a place, right? And especially if there's something like where you need someone who's specifically an outsider, because that's how you can trust, like yes, that's a great use. But I think for things that are like core library abilities, right, like the GIS stuff, you're doing stuff that we're gonna need to do over and over again.
Yeah.
That's where I would be more dubious about turning to outside consultants.
Okay, um, and then meeting with the city council, topics of discussion, um.
In this room.
In this room. This beautiful room.
I like it.
It's not, now, now that I know it's actually for sale.
Um, I think, you know, I think, I think we go, you know, my two cents is we go over the, the usage numbers and the circulation numbers and show our improvement there.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we talk about our role in this area around, um, I'm just summing up. We kind of have, um, you know, in our activations of these spaces and, you know, can we? Can we, sorry, she opened that, I know, can we, but now I can't hear. Um, and how we wanna, you know, activate these areas, get them used, get them, you know, and I think that's the best way for safety. And we wanna be actively involved in that discussion. I think also around Sundance, uh, discussing, you know, saying we also wanna be part of those discussions.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
How are you gonna, how are we gonna facilitate these discussions? Are you, you thinking there's a slideshow, we pose some questions for council, or are you thinking we present with?
I think we just say what we want, I don't know, they're not just being blunt about what we want, they can tell me that.
And I think I'd avoid the slide thing, cause that's how we get caught, like nobody talks to each other, right?
So I, I, I mean, these maps are great, right, these GIS maps, having them on the wall.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'd have another like. Map there, poster of the stats, like the.
Or use the annual reports.
Yeah, and, you know, people coming back in, just things, just some bullets up there to show the highlights of the seven out of ten people that own a library card.
Too, but use one.
Like just, just some things that they're not gonna know and you don't even need to talk about it, just have it on the wall here.
Or blow up some of the pages from the annual report, just in graphic.
Yeah, and it's, and it's up there, yeah.
I think it's a good, like, I think we talk, you know, we, we can couch it around safety too as well, like, hey, we found, this is the formula that works for us. We think this is the formula that will work for down here and, you know.
Yeah.
How do we, how do we partner to do that in this area, you know?
And again, like, so, you know, the numbers, the incidents in the other libraries that we are, if we do end up changing the security staffing there.
Yeah.
We've set that conversation up already because we're showing, you know, right, two incidents in a year.
Right. Um. So, um, sorry, Sundance, and then I think, do we, do, the question for the board, I guess, is, do we say, hey, we're gonna be coming next year in twenty six? To, you know, hopefully get you guys to, and we'll work with Nuriya to potentially feed us. Some library properties.
Yes, our buildings better. So I think the libraries have worked since they used the community's buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they, I mean, the cities, the city recommendation, as you know, was already given them all the buildings, because the community paid for them out of city. That was political and I think the concern at the time registered by some residents was that we have no idea what this library district is gonna do. Well, now they have two years of data, and next year we'll have three years of data.
There was also a campaign in the air that, you know, was, people were taking sides on the question of the library's future.
I mean, Bob Gates now says, it was good, it was good, it was actually, I was wrong, you know, like.
Yeah, it's just data is.
The, the, the amount of capital and expenditure, or two years prior to this, it was just the two years, so we've spent a lot more money.
He's not on council, so.
Oh, we, yeah, twice, I mean, I, Jennifer, I don't know.
It would be good to.
That would be a really good thing to show them when we're gonna get into conversations about.
We want the buildings.
Well, like, are you planning to leave this conversation Doug, or are you thinking there's gonna be a bunch of us there and they're all having our own level conversations?
No, I think, well, I, I think that like David can run through the numbers and the stuff like that. Um, and, um, I could ask about the Sundance, the, I can lead discussion on the civic area. And just engagement there and, and then the facilities discussion, oh, or, or, or comment.
Right. But not a slide presentation. The, the ballot promises are done, we finished our master plan under.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll be shocked, they, they've never finished a master plan in their entire existence, so the master plan is done, three years ahead of time.
Yeah. That's a proxy.
Cirque is up, incidents are down, attendance is up.
Yeah, I think if you have just prints, print charts.
That's sure.
Yeah.
And by the way, seven out of ten residents has a library card.
Yeah, I think those are the, the things we've put around here. Uh, you got RSC, oh yes, you probably don't, Jennifer.
No, Celia does, I think we have, uh, in the, almost every, there's one person that can't be there for sure.
Should we ask the count, should we send an invite to the county commissioners? No, yeah, I don't want to say that. Larry, what's that? Oh, you won't be there, but and Sylvia probably won't be able to make it down, but, um, that's five. And, uh, okay, well.
We can have a discussion of members as well, but we should also probably think about doing some kind of outreach to the new city council members once the elections pass. Cause I don't know that we wanna wait until a year from now to talk to them either, or should we approach some of these conversations sooner?
No, yeah. Yeah.
Um, but yeah, let's wait until we see who those people are.
Yeah, yeah, speaking of calling people up and asking for meetings, and of course, as a district formation, the commissioners took two council members. And I'm, I'm not mad with them for not just to talk about.
And if one, we can meet with candidates, if they wanna be really aggressive, but I think it's probably just wait till after the election and start building this relationship.
I think we would, like Jenny Robbins applied to be on the trustees, um, we could always meet with her, I think she would be, uh, I think, I think maybe we do talk about that in September, like.
Yeah, okay.
Meeting with serious candidates, would be considered serious, I guess.
I mean, if we meet with, if we meet with one, we might as well meet with those two of them, but, you know.
Okay. We can meet with Tom Smoak and the other guys, so, um, um, okay. That's all, um, we have for this retreat, I think it was pretty productive, um.
Yes.
What did you want us to?
Any final parting comments?
What have we done with this?
Oh, that's a good question.
Our evaluation thing.
The board of trustee Danielle Sarsky.
Didn't we send that page to Sylvia, is that the only thing?
I think that, I think we.
Uh, I did send our online packet as well, but I don't think I've gotten it, it doesn't stand alone, I think.
Uh, I think you probably need to send it out digitally.
Yeah, we probably do, that's, that's all yours.
Alright, well, I'll, I'll put this together and send it out to you.
So you do in fact want us to fill this out in Sundance, online?
Yes, yes.
You weren't asking us to revise the questions?
No, I don't, I don't.
Okay.
Want us to answer about you.
Okay.
Send, send us directions.
Yeah.
I will, I will.
Are you timely?
Yes.
Feel like I, alright, well, meeting adjourned.
Thank you all very much for your time on Sunday, I really appreciate.